All right, everyone. If you will, take your seats. The August 20th, 2014 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 under closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers, made possible this month through underwriting from DOT Vegas dot Vegas. Please note customers of CenturyLink can view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 on the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or a fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, the clerk's office at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered our chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the indication given this morning by Reverend Ian Riddell, the Unitarian Universalistic Congregation of Las Vegas, and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, council members. Please join me in a moment of prayer and reflection. Spirit of life, source of love and justice, always part of us as we are part of you, though we forget and believe ourselves separate and alone. We have come to this place today by many different paths and for many different lives. Be present in us as we unite in commitment to the work of building a community of trust and justice and hope. May we step into the work of the day ahead with open minds, that we may grow in our understanding of the needs and possibilities of our communities; with open hearts, that we may listen with love and wonder to the stories different from ours, and with open hands, ready to do the work of building a society accessible to all of its citizens, which cherishes and celebrates the richness of our diverse gifts and talents. Please join me now in a moment of silence, humble, in the presence of the work before us and the beckoning spirit within. We hold especially in our hearts today the people of Ferguson, Missouri. May they find peace and hope as they struggle for safety, trust, and justice for all of May we be reminded always by that deep love which lives and breathes in all of us and beckons our heart and our spirit that we are all inextricably tied each to each into a broad and rich community, and may each word spoken or action taken in this gathering be in service of the health and thriving of that community. In gratitude for the service of those gathered here and the possibilities of this day, I say, may it always be so. Amen.
Okay, thank you. For our first item, I'd like to invite Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance Steve Ford to join us. Where are you, Steve Ford? Here he comes. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stands for Achievement, Creativity, Teamwork, Integrity, and Ownership Now. They build our community to make life better for us all, and I'm proud to announce the Employee of the Month is Vangelina Salazar Seja. Vangelina, please join us up here. Where is she? Vangelina is part of this wonderful team. Congratulations, wonderful. Good morning. And has only been with the city since December, but she's already making a big impression. Vangelina works at the city's Development Services Center at 333 North Rancho Drive. She's always smiling, ha-ha, and has a great outlook, but it's her integrity that we really want to recognize today. We're so proud of you. In March, Vangelina was outside of the Development Services Center when she noticed what appeared to be a piece of trash blowing around the property. Upon further inspection, she realized it was actually a banking envelope and that there was $260 inside. Vangelina immediately contacted her supervisor and set the process in motion to locate the owner of the money. Wells Fargo was contacted, and they were able to find the owner, a local disabled man. This man was so thankful for the return of his property that he actually broke down and started to cry. What may seem like a small thing to some meant everything, obviously, to this resident, and that is the kind of integrity that we love to see in our employees. Thank you, Vangelina, for being a great example of the city's core values in representing the city and all of us so well with such caring and integrity. So on behalf of the entire City Council, it's a pleasure to name Vangelina the Employee of the Month. And along with this award, she has received $100 Visa Gift Card, compliments of the Clark County Credit Union, $100 gift card from Mundo Restaurant. In addition, a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of her choice by SuperPon. Finally, to our left, you will see the street sign with Vangelina's name on it that is posted in front of City Hall on Main Street. So everybody keep driving by it. So now it's time for Mr. Ford to say a few words. I know how proud you are of what she has added to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. First, good morning. I'd like to thank the mayor and council and the city manager for this opportunity and for the Employee of the Month program. Vangelina hasn't been with us for very long. We stole her away from one of the top-tier hotels here in the valley, and she's -- the couple of comments that has been mentioned is she's always -- her work ethic and her attitude have been fantastic. She's always working, she's always smiling, and she's actually been a really good ambassador for the city, for the customers over at the DSC. So I'd like to thank her for her work and know that she'll continue to thrive here at the city.
Thank you. That is so great. Before -- would you like to say a few words? But we want to present you with this certificate of appreciation. Actually, it's a little bit better than a certificate. It's recognizing you as the City of Las Vegas Employee of the Month, where you've exhibited outstanding performance through achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, ownership, and engagement now. The Department and the City of Las Vegas, thank you. We all thank you, and we are so proud. Congratulations. Would you wish to say? Oh, come right on up here.
I would like to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to work for such a great organization. I would also like to thank those who nominated me. I am very honored and pleased to be receiving this Employee of the Month award. I feel blessed to be surrounded by people who care. I love working and being part of a team because together we can accomplish goals. I am the happiest person in the world right now. Everything that I do is from my heart and will continue to always do so. Thank you again, everyone.
Congratulations. And this is for you. And then if you'll step over there to the left, we will join you, the council will join you, and Mr. Ford, come along, and we will have a picture taken. It's just wonderful. We're so thrilled.
Thank you.
Please come right on over here, and then we'll proceed with the next item. I've been looking at all morning. Hold on, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good morning, everyone. It's my honor to recognize and introduce to you the 2014 United States Youth Soccer National President's Club winner, and that team is our own Las Vegas Neon 97 Boys Soccer Team, which obviously are seated right here, so give them a nice round of applause. If I could have the manager, Jorge Lorza. Where's the manager, Jorge? Why don't you come on down here? Come on down here, come on. And the coach, Jose Perez. Where's Jose? Why don't you come on down here? And in fact, why don't we have the whole team come down here, huh? Come on down. Have the whole team come down here so you can take a look at these guys.
Congratulations. Good luck, good health to you. Thank you. We're proud of you. Congratulations. Proud of you. Great. Congratulations. Let me get those from side. Good luck, chips. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations. Good luck and good health. It isn't $1,000, but it's good to stay healthy.
All right, let me tell you a little bit about these young men here. The team took first-place honors in Greenville, South Carolina by winning the under-17 boys' category in the 2014 United States Youth Soccer National Presidents' Cup. This is the first time a Las Vegas team has won first place in this tournament. The Las Vegas Neon 97 were among 40 participating United States Youth Soccer Boys and Girls Teams that came from all over the country to compete for a national title. The team had to win at the local, state, regional, and national level to become a national champion. The Las Vegas Neon 97 team played hard and showed great skill and teamwork throughout the various tournaments to win the coveted 2014 United States Youth Soccer National Presidents' Cup. The Las Vegas Neon 97 defeated the S.A. Spirits Blue from Illinois 2 to 0 to win the national championship. The Las Vegas Neon 97 player, Gennaro Corono, opened the scoring in the 27th minute. Where's Gennaro? Scored the first goal. Where is he located?
College.
He's in college?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. He's in college already. Okay, and Brian Panamino secured the match with a goal in the 83rd minute. And where's he? All right, good job. Additionally, the Las Vegas Neon 97 goalkeeper, Nashish Yadev. Where's Nashish? Get this. He was awarded the 2014 United States Youth Soccer Goalkeeper of the Tournament Award. Great job. At this point, I'd like to ask the manager, Jorge Lorza, to say a few words. Why don't you come on down, come on over here?
Well, ladies and gentlemen, really, I guess I don't have too much to say because the important people here is who are behind me. First of all, the councilmen's people, and also all these players and the coach. This coach has been an amazing coach, built this team since those kids were around six, seven years old. He has done a very great job with them without charging any coin, any penny to the parents and the players. So I would like to introduce you the coach, Jose Arturo Perez.
Thank you very much. I don't have words to explain how I feel right now, but all the hard work does those guys, not me. I just want to let them know, maybe they have to speak, not me, because you guys do the hard work, all right? You guys play really hard. You guys do everything, all right? Thank you.
All right, well, I'm not going to let all you guys speak. Is there a captain, a team captain, or is there one player that -- why don't you come on over here? You can speak on behalf of the players.
Good morning, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank all the parents out here who've supported us all the way, especially my parents and all the other parents, of course, but my mother. I'd like to thank our coach, Jose. He's a phenomenal coach. He's the one that's actually, you know, always pushed us to go the extra mile and to always, you know, give everything that we can, and our manager has done a great job also. But it's all the players out here, they're like family to me especially. We put everything we can in every single game, and this is the reward we get. So I'd like to thank everybody out here. Thank you.
That's a -- you're a classy kid, thanking the parents. I mean, that's really, that's really a big deal. Nice round of applause for the parents out here that are taking care of them. And we're very proud of you, and because of your national championship, the mayor and the entire City Council have -- are here to recognize you, each of you, with a certificate of recognition. So I'm just going to call your name, and when I say your name, just raise your hand so we know who you are. Garrett Quackenbush? Garrett here? All right. Asari Robles?
College.
College, all right. Gennaro Corono? College. Carrados Skues? All right, there you go. Nashish Yadev? We met him. Good job. Mark Sotelo? All right. Kevin Guzman? Not here. Brian Ramos? Not here. Brian Panamino? All right. Jamie Gonzalez? All right. Jorge Lorza Lopez? All right, good job. Luis Cisneros? All right. Asidro Sida? All right. Alexis Barrios? Good job. Jose Galis Cervantes? Not here. And finally, Efren Pennel. Is that everybody? All right. Here's your certificates. Give these guys a nice round of applause, and thanks for coming down.
Why don't you tell them they'll be on Channel 2 if they want to see themselves?
Yeah, you're all going to be on television, Channel 2. I don't know what time. Yeah, you're on right now. Yeah, you read it every day, I guess. I don't pay attention. Yeah, you're all going to be on TV, so make sure you look that up.
Eight o'clock tonight.
Eight o'clock tonight, Channel 2. All right.
Sunday at what time?
7:00 a.m. on Sunday, you'll be asleep.
You won't be asleep.
7:00 p.m. on Saturday, you're on, okay? Forget that.
Okay. All right, well, whatever you can make it, tape it, you can DVD it. All right, good job. Thanks, folks. Thanks, manager.
Great. Great. Thank you. We're so proud. Okay. Okay. What we're going to do is take five minutes, as this is wheeled away, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll be back. They are desperate for coffee. So be patient, and congratulations again, knowing you will all get scholarships to college. I hope the ones that have gone off already have soccer scholarships, yes? Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.[1253.73]
Okay, everyone, if you'll take your seats, we'll start with Agenda Item Number Seven. Does that sound right to you?
Yes.
Okay. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We'll set the time at one minute while I repair my eyeglasses. We have a taker, good. Just please state your name for the record.
Mr. Larry Davis approaching, Ms. Mayor and the City Council. I've approached you about a matter a little over a year ago. And I just want to say that my issue is concerning the public transportation here, RTC. Again, I want to reiterate, I've approached you people about this matter before, and that's in regards to the transfers being distributed out of the boxes and aren't legible or valid enough to continue a ride. I've experienced this over and over again with RTC. And to think that I've addressed City Council about this issue last year was not contacted at all about this situation, it's an ongoing situation. So from this juncture, I just want to know, and let you know, rather, that I'm going to pursue this matter in civil court. I've experienced anguish and duress.
Thank you.
And I don't want to elaborate on the situation.
Okay.
But you're dastardly to think that this is going to be done and not be accorded to, you're mistaken.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you for coming forward.
And I just want to say that for the public.
That's the time limit, thank you.
RTCtransfers@gmail.com for anybody else that has experienced this situation.
Okay, hopefully you will be at the RTC, but anyway, please.
We'll see you in court.
Thank you, please, next, welcome, they're both on if they have a red line around them.
All right, Stanley Washington, Las Vegas, Hello, Your Honor and Council.
Good morning.
I have a special guest to introduce who's here in town on business officially to address the Nevada Gaming Commission tomorrow and to ask that they adopt the Nevada Green Zone Initiative and a resolution for that, as we will be joining with them and all the rest of the participating agencies. So we always want to start with this council here, there's two things that I want to go ahead and say before I let the general speak. Number one, Your Honor, it was you and Governor Sandoval who've been championing the Green Zone Initiative, as you know, for the second year, took place right here in this chamber. So as we're now going to go ahead and put legs to that initiative, we had a thousand captains get pink slips last month, 550 majors get pink slips this month, they're pulling them off the battlefield, giving them pink slips, turning them onto the streets, and the Green Zone Initiative is exactly why the governor brought that into place, that we're on point. So as this November, we're going to go ahead and have a big event, November 9th and 10th, we thought it would only be appropriate for you that you and the governors be the honorary co-chairs for that particular event. General Bray is coming in, he will be the chair, he will be seeking General John Campbell, who is the deputy chief of the entire US Army, the number two guy who's actually handing out the pink slips. He's torn that he has to do that, so we figure it's appropriate to bring him out to be the keynote speaker.
Thank you, we're welcome.
As we go ahead and do what the governor said, make Nevada the most veteran-friendly state in the nation.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
I want to introduce Brigadier General Gordon Bray, from South Carolina.
First of all, no promises on who we bring out, but as you all have seen, there's a...
And would you state your name for our record, please?
First of all, my name is Brigadier General Retired Arnold N. Gordon Bray.
Thank you.
And I am a South Carolinian, but I currently reside in North Carolina, so, Carolina. And I think standing in the rest of the veterans in Nevada and Las Vegas specifically for asking me to help in this effort. There's a tremendous number of talent, talented people who are going to be given pink slips, and I'm going to give you just a short excerpt while you leave. The pink slips are being given not because they're not talented, but some of them are not talented in their fields, but they're talented in civilian fields. I'm an infantry airborne ranger, and I spent most of my time doing that or doing strategic planning. And many of my colleagues would often go off and work with Google because they had an interest, I understand. And so that talent is perfectly suited for them to come back to civilian world, but not necessarily for fighting. So please understand, a lot of talent being available, and the Green Zone Initiative might help tremendously, thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you Brigadier General, we look forward to seeing you back here in November.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Washington.
In closing, we would be honored if you would tender that resolution, we did that with the homeless piece, if you remember now, we think it's appropriate that we get a resolution from the city, the gaming county, for the Green Zone, every, all in, Your Honor.
And if you'll speak to one of my assistants right there, Laura Calkman, she can help get that information, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else, please state your name for the record, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, City Council. My name's Fred Welsh, I'm with Tri Class Vegas and the Urban Mobility Initiative, and I want to speak in regards to, or comment in regards to Agenda Item 16. Basically, I feel that being a part of the downtown community, you have to do more than just complain, and this is a real opportunity to commend the council and the Department of Public Works for this kind of infrastructure upgrade. I think, as you know, I advocate for personal transportation and multimodal transportation, the role that it can play in sustainability efforts when it comes to the area of transportation. And we've actually had the privilege of taking part in some of your stakeholders committees for various projects that have been going on here in the city. So I just wanted to thank you for this kind of infrastructure upgrade, and these are, these kind of projects are incredibly important to make the city more mobile, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for coming and thank you for speaking. Anyone else, please state your name for the record.
Morning, Madam Mayor, Kurt Edmondson from Portland, Oregon, regarding Agenda Item Number 58, that's the application of the crazy horse license. So the city staff suggested this might be the best procedural way to get my comments on the record, and then if you need to...
If you can do it in a minute.
Yeah.
Or at the end, at the end of the council meeting, so go ahead, please, sir.
In short, I represent two clients who have a judgment against Mr. Gallum, Mike Gallum, who has an interest in the club, and the judgment is for $4 million, that was entered in 2013, and I provided information to the city staff that could aid in your decision, and also I have lots of experience with regard to this judgment, so I'm here to answer my questions.
What I would suggest, anyway, is that you just regroup with Mr. Jervik and Ms. Duddleston. But thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Eight. Business Items for Possible Action, any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor, Item Number 57, which is an abeyance item, discussion for possible action regarding a solicitation for ambulance services commencing December 2015, with the city of Las Vegas, staff has asked that item be stricken. And Item Number 58, just to put on notice that this item will be trailed till 1:00 this afternoon for discussion at that time, so that will be my motion.
Thank you very much, this motion, please vote, and please post. That motion carries, thank you very much. Agenda Item Nine, for possible action to prove the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of June 18, 2014, motion, please, Mayor Protem.
Move for approval.
Thank you, this motion, please vote, please post. That motion carries as well, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items 10 through 54 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items council wishes brought forward? Yep, Mayor...
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please, Councilman Barlow.
Item Number 23.
23? Any others?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Councilwoman?
Item Number 48.
Okay, thank you, anyone else?
Your Honor?
Please?
I don't wish to bring an item forward, but I would like to highlight it for everyone's attention, Item 29 and 30 are a Lola's, which is a much beloved restaurant featuring Louisiana food here downtown, is opening a second location in Summerlin. So we welcome them to Ward Two, and I'm personally looking forward to some gumbo.
Best grits in town. I know, okay, are there any, excuse me, yes, Councilman?
Yes, ma'am, Item 42, 40... I guess 42 and 43 are the same, but I'll go ahead and pull 42 and 43.
Okay, all right, any others there? Okay, just to give those back to you, Councilman, that's 23, 42, 43, and 48?
Yes.
Okay, so would you please then...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 10 through 54, except for 23, 42, 43, and 48.
Thanks, there's a motion, please vote and please post. And so if you will turn to, and that motion carries, if you'll turn to Agenda Item 23, which reads, "For possible action to approve a consent to assignment and management agreement and a stoppable certificate from CLP Las Vegas Golf LLC to CF Las Vegas ARCIS LLC regarding the Las Vegas Municipal Golf Course Management Agreement for property located 4300 West Washington Avenue," please, Councilman.
Yes, I didn't get a briefing on this, so I'm not up to speed on this particular item, so I would ask that we just obey this a couple weeks so that I can speak with staff to see what's happening with the transition.
Okay, Mr. Ford is fine, so there's a motion then to obey Agenda Item 23, made by Councilman Barlow. To obey this, for how many weeks?
To September 3rd.
September 3rd?
No, push it out to the second meeting.
September 17th?
September 17th, yeah.
Okay.
And just for the record, I won't be here on September 3rd, so I would like for my council items to be pushed to the second meeting if possible.
Okay, and you said that was the 17th? Okay, thank you, this motion? And please vote and please post. That motion carries, let's move on to Agenda Item 42. Possible action to approve an extension of a temporary tavern license for a change of ownership from Lador Inc. to FABES Fabs LLC DBA, Stateside Lounge at 931 North Las Vegas Boulevard, Luca Fabian Bartolino owner, this again is in Ward Five, and I see Ms. Duddleston there, would you care to make comment, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. On this item, we have had some reports of possible nightclub activity, we are having our officers regularly watch that, that's why this is recommended for a temporary license, and under the gaming approval, it's for 15 slot machines. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Councilman Barlow?
Yeah, that's exactly, did you cover this in briefings yesterday?
I did.
Okay, that's probably when I came in a little bit after the briefing then, because I was going to ask you about that as far as what was the rationale behind the extension, so we'll go ahead and move forward with the extension, this will be coming back.
Under a temporary license, we would not release that temporary license until we were sure that there was not nightclub activity, they are not authorized either through Land Juice or licensing for that activity, if there are concerns, we would bring that back to you, but this is just the extension of a temporary license.
Right, but how long does one have a temporary license, there has to be a sunset date, right?
A temporary license is available for six months with one six-month extension, so if at any time there were concerns during that time, either with the ownership or the activity, we would bring them back to you. If there are no concerns, at the end of those temporary license periods, the director can release that license to a permanent license.
So is this company under their first extension or their second? So is this, so is this company under their first extension or their second?
This is under their first. So they're currently on an administrative license, which can only be issued for 90 days. Then that item has to come before the city council for you to issue a temporary license for six months. And then the director can issue an additional temporary if all of the issues have not been solved at that time.
Okay. And so you'll keep us abreast as to whether or not you will approve it administratively or bring it back to council for further action?
Correct.
Thank you. I'll move for, follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda Item 42. Please vote and please post. That motion carries.
And on Item Number 43, Mayor, I'll move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There's another motion. This is on Agenda Item 43. To follow staff recommendation, please cast your vote and please post. That motion passes as well. Agenda Item 48, as requested by Councilwoman Tarkanian, for possible action to approve an extension of a temporary pistol permit license. Robert Yakulo DBA Citizen Arms at 800 North Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 170. Robert Yakulo owner. And this is in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. This is a current sporting goods store, and they are currently selling long guns. They are requesting a permit to sell pistols.
Councilwoman?
And was, were we still involved in investigating this group? The last I read that we, it hadn't been completed.
Correct. They are, they're requesting a temporary pending their investigation with Metro.
And as far as the selling of the guns and everything there, you're satisfied, your department satisfied with the safety involved?
Neither our staff nor Metro has reported any issues or complaints or problems at this location under their current sales of long guns.
How many places do we have that sell guns around in the city?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. I can certainly get that information for you. I can get it by a map if you would like, or by a list. But we certainly have that information, and I can provide it to you.
So they're selling long guns for shooting because it's a sporting goods store? I just wonder why would pistols be involved in a sporting goods store?
Most of our sporting goods stores, as you look around, the majority of them probably do have pistols. So if you go to Bass Pro Shops or something like that, they have long guns and they sell pistols. So it, we are seeing, I believe in the last two to three years, we've seen some increases in the applications for pistol permits. And like I said, we'd be glad to provide that information to you if you'd like.
And I knew that there were more, because people are more concerned about security, more applications for permits. I just am very unfamiliar with this, and I wonder if maybe we could just obey this?
Certainly.
So that I could, the individuals could talk with me and maybe explain, or I could go to the store? Because I'm wondering where you buy pistols? I thought to you there were gun shops that sold that, I just didn't understand going through a sporting store, that was all. And I didn't know if that's just an adjacent. But if they could do that, I would appreciate obeying it if we could. And we could obey it until the same one as Councilman Barlow's.
September 3rd or September 17th?
Right.
September 17th.
And that's your motion?
That's my motion, obey until November 17th.
There's a motion to obey this Agenda Item 48 until September 17th. Please cast your vote. And then please post.
That's why I'm asking these questions.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 55. Administrative report from celebrity Myron Martin, recent honoree, National Nevada Broadcaster Association. We're so proud of him. And the CEO of the Smith Center on the accomplishments and major milestones that have been bestowed on this wonderful, wonderful edifice. Thank you. Mr. Martin, morning.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Myron Martin, President and CEO of the Smith Center at 361 Symphony Park Avenue. And I'm here today just to share some good news and give you all a little bit of an update. The Smith Center's been open for just over two years now. And believe it or not, we've already greeted our 1,000,000th patron coming through our doors.
Wow.
Recently, we were named in the Polestar Magazine as one of the top 10 theaters in the world, which is great news for our city. And so far, in the two years we've been open, we've already greeted 125,000 students coming through our doors for workshops, master classes, schooltime performances, and many other things, including our relationship with the Kennedy Center, bringing their programs, the Wolf Trap Institute, the Disney Musicals and Schools. We're the second city in the country to be awarded the Disney Musicals and Schools program, which we're doing out in elementary schools. And we started the Nevada High School Musical Theater Awards two years ago. And I'm proud to say that for two years, we've sent two students on to New York City, where they spent a week in a Broadway theater, and their finale was actually performing on a Broadway stage, something brand new for kids in our community that we're very proud of. Camp Broadway, second year of bringing this summer camp for our kids. And I brought a couple of very quick emails that we got from parents. One says, "Our son participated in Camp Broadway last week. I can honestly say it changed his life. He's a unique and wonderful kid, but he's struggled to find his niche. He loves to sing, so when somebody told us about Camp Broadway, we decided to give it a try, and wow, my kid is back." And there's a whole stack of emails like this from our camp that makes us very, very proud. I'm also proud to tell you that, because you all remember, when we opened, the Smith Center had a bridge loan with Bank of Nevada, and that was to bridge the pledges receivable of our donors, donors who had agreed to give us money over a three- to five-year period. And we went to the bank and asked for a bridge loan so that we could complete our project on time and on budget. We got that, and I'm especially proud today to tell you that that bridge loan has been satisfied, it's paid, and the Smith Center no longer has debt.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the Smith Center's been, to have a million patrons come through our door, it has been something for everybody. You all remember the days when we were dreaming of what a world-class performing arts center might do for our city. And back then, I called it the living room for Las Vegas. That's happened. It's been more than just performances. It's been commencement exercises. Just yesterday, on our stage, we graduated 480 Clark County school students who had just passed their proficiency exams and were able to go through commencement there at the Smith Center. On Monday and Tuesday, we hosted the back-to-school get-togethers for this Clark County School District. Administrators on one day and teacher leaders on the second day, part of our commitment to education in the city. I think being the living room, maybe our proudest moment was when we hosted the memorial service for our fallen officer, Alan Beck. And what, what you may not know, and certainly people in your audience may not realize, is that this was something that looked impossible. On the day of that memorial service, we had two performances of The Book of Mormon. People worked throughout the night, the night before, to make this possible. And it was an army of volunteers who cared about this being the living room for Las Vegas, to make sure that that memorial service could take place in our beautiful building. And it did, thanks to those volunteers. I think it, for me, may be our proudest moment. So Mayor, we put together a little video. It's a short video that talks about some of the things that I've just mentioned, but more importantly, the creative class and how it helps us make this a better city. So if, if we could, I'd love for you to see the video, and after, I'll be here for questions.
Yeah, that was a beautiful ceremony. It really was. Thank you.
What in our lives is truly valuable? Do we stop each day to recognize that we have the power to elevate our world? Do we take for granted inspiration? Creativity is perhaps man's most powerful tool. It lives within us all. As defined, creativity is a phenomenon whereby something new and valuable is created. Creative acts have been a large part of our culture for centuries. Native American tribes have used the act of creative storytelling for what's called wisdom communication, providing its people insight to the great mysteries of life. Throughout history, we've turned to creative acts to make us better. Because being involved with creative acts provides us with a new perspective. It gives us depth. Finding a place where you can experience creative acts is a true gift. Imagine spending time in such a place, one of great beauty and immense creativity. Imagine experiencing unforgettable moments there. Imagine feeling inspired, awakened, and amazed. Imagine. On March 10, 2012, the world got its first glimpse of a true landmark endeavor. March 10 was the night the Smith Center opened its doors. And from that moment on, Las Vegas was changed forever. Over 1 million people have now experienced dazzling performances at the Smith Center. And the millions of people who next walk through those doors will witness an array of creative acts, from music, to theater, to dance. Children from all over our valley are now getting new opportunities to engage through the arts. Over 100,000 of our kids so far have been given their first exposure, receiving encouragement through creative workshops, master classes, and performances held at the Smith Center. And the best part is that this wonderful place belongs to you. It is truly yours. This place was built for everyone, and its ongoing mission is to serve and provide each one of us with the grand gift of the performing arts. It's a life-changing experience not duplicated on television, radio, or film. This is a place that embraces the people of Las Vegas. Come and witness the compelling, moving, and inspiring power of live performance for yourself. Whether it's your first time or your 100th time, pick a show and come. You'll be glad you did. Experience the magic and let your life be changed in brilliant, new ways.
Beautiful. Absolutely beautiful. We are so proud, and you certainly did. This Smith Center has put us on the cultural map in the world, and we are just so proud. And I must reiterate that this wonderful gentleman, who's been leading and passionate about culture and arts in our city, was given the Nevada Broadcaster's Award, Community Achievement Award. And it wasn't big enough, is all I can tell you. We are so very, very proud, and we thank you. This is a beautiful movie, too.
Thank you.
We do have Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Thank you, Myron. That was very good. You know, my wife and I have been season ticket holders for the Broadway show since you opened, and every single show is just, is just outstanding. And I run into you there quite a bit. Do you live there? Since I see you so much. I'll tell you, my, my three favorite shows, though, were Led Zeppelin, Pink Floyd, and Jetta L'Atoll. So you need to bring a few more of those down.
There's something for everyone at the Smith Center.
But I do have two questions. The first one is, is the Smith Center done as far as construction and build-out? Or are there future phases that you have planned? And the second one, when I go there, I run into a bunch of people that I know, but I, I hear people talking, and they're, some of them are from out of state. So I'm wondering, do you keep track of how many people actually are coming in from some, another state to attend the Smith Center? And kind of talk about those, too.
So, so first of all, we are almost complete. As you all know, the Las Vegas Metro Chamber of Commerce is moving on to the Smith Center campus. They're working hard to finish their tenant improvements, and they will be in their new offices this fall. The Children's Museum, of course, is doing great things. And then we're adding a very small, little coffee shop, which will complete the campus. And that'll happen very soon. The, the second question about the percentage of people who live here. You know, this, this was built for those of us who live here and for our children's children. The truth is, when the big blockbuster shows like Book of Mormon or Wicked come to town for four to six weeks, we do see out-of-town zip codes in our ticketing service. But even with that, we're seeing more than 90% of our total participation is with locals.
That's great.
So we're proud of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please, Councilwoman?
Myron, I just wanted to say, I too have been a season ticket holder, several tickets, and had my grandchildren go. And I can't tell you how it enlightens them and how happy they are. I'm very, very proud of what you've done. I remember when we had that thirst, that deep thirst here for something like the Performing Arts Center, and you achieved it. And it makes me feel good when I can tell my friends from Washington, D.C. or New York that we're one of the top 10 performing arts centers. And the comments that the actors and the singers make about how great our place is. And you've just done such a magnificent job. So I thank you for all of us and for all the little kids, too.
Well, you, you all remember when Don Snyder and I first started appearing before you all. I remember Don saying that we're going to make you proud, and I think that we've done that.
You have.
We are very proud. So thank you. And by the way, on the, on the Broadway front, the first trucks just pulled in today for Kinky Boots, the show that won the Tony Award last year. And we are launching the national tour. It all starts right here in Las Vegas. That makes us proud, too.
Well, and to a special shout-out of thanks to all the donors who've contributed, the major donors, but right down to the very last dollar. We know how important it's been, and it continues to be to support it and keep the shows coming and the performers, everybody. So congratulations. Thank you for this report. Thank you for your award. We're just so thrilled. Beautiful.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Coffin?
This side has something to say, too. I just wanted to just add, thank you. The, Myron, I have really enjoyed this. Councilman Ross, when I first came in as a newly-elected, newly-mented council member three years and one month ago, landed on me and said, "You have got to get tickets to the Smith Center." And I didn't know what was going on. Just to make Ross happy, you know, I went ahead and signed up. And it's worked out wonderful. We have our, had our seats for the previous three seasons, started our fourth last Friday with Ghost, which, by the way, I think was better than the review it got in the Review Journal. Definitely. Maybe they read the review and decided I had to do something. But in any event, I have really enjoyed this very much. It's a real thing that Mary and I look forward to, and we book our calendars around all of this. The people are nice, particularly you have, you have part-timers. You have people that do this for the love of it, and they are so welcoming, so helpful, that it makes an experience good for everyone. Doesn't matter who you are. And, and I do like to see the young people there, because they're the ones who envision a career, or they envision playing a role somewhere in that kind of business later on down the line. Can I ask a favor of you, though? There's one thing. I'm picky. I don't know all the plays very well, I have to say. When they come here, sometimes it's a mystery to me. I have to ask Mary, "What's it about?" Maybe she didn't Google it. We sure could use a playbill in the, you know, for patrons, something that just describes the plot. I, I found that the wonderful program we have gives us really in-depth, it's a real keeper, because you've got in-depth on the, all the cast and crew. And it's, it's fantastic for a history of the play. But I still need something on the plot, and that doesn't appear in the program. So I thought that maybe next season, if it doesn't fit, in this season, to have a playbill for us, so that we can actually read a page on the plot or something like that.
Maybe we should post that for our patrons in advance. Maybe we put that on our website, so you can learn about the show before you come. That's a good idea.
Or, or hand it to me, because I don't have time. I mean, I may be like one of the, I may be the only person who doesn't have time. But it's just like, sure nice to have. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And thank you for giving us this pleasure this morning. Appreciate it. And we're now on to wonderfully exciting Agenda Item Number 56, and a report by Tom Perigo, City of Las Vegas Chief Sustainability Officer, on the city's sustainability initiative.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Tom Perigo, Chief Sustainability Officer. So this is the second in a four-part series, talking about what we've done with our sustainability initiative. Today's presentation is a little bit special, though. Last week, we talked about waste and recycling. We talked how the Last week, we talked about waste and recycling, and we talked how the city is saving over $300,000 by recycling over 50% of all of our waste stream. But today is something special. I was fortunate to accompany the mayor to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting in Dallas earlier this summer, where we received some very special recognition. And here to talk more about that, we have some special guests for this presentation, but here to talk about that more is the CEO and Executive Director of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Mr. Tom Cochran.
I want you to know that Mr. Cochran flew in yesterday just specially. He is the CEO, President of this august body of mayors, there are over 1,400 of them of cities of 30,000 or more, and so what you're going to be hearing about how this wonderful city has been recognized by a wonderful friend.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilpeople. It's good to be here representing the nation's mayors and our President Kevin Johnson from Sacramento, California. I'm very pleased to have with me also Amelia McClear, who is our partner with these awards. Amelia is from a little organization called Walmart, and we have a relationship with them going back eight years. The United States Conference of Mayors has within its organization a climate protection center. 1,060 mayors are involved in that center with pledges for dealing with the environment. These awards, this award that Las Vegas gets says that you're the greenest city in America in what you're doing. It's the number-one award. I don't go out and give, I don't come out, but I come out for the big ones. And so I'm here today to say that we're so pleased to recognize the work that you're doing. I'm sitting here, also, you know, I've been here before to talk about other initiatives when we had our annual meeting with the Smith Center, just what you're doing in downtown Las Vegas is incredible. But today, we honor you with Walmart to recognize the, for winning the number-one city, large city category, beating out, you know, New York, Chicago, et cetera, for this award, the Net Zero Initiative Award. You're a partner in this locally, it's Green Chips. We'll hear from them. It's so great to be here and so good to bring good news. And so with that, I would like to recognize Amelia McClear from Walmart, who will offer remarks also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi there. Hi, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm Amelia McClear, Public Affairs Director with Walmart. And thank you to Tom at Perigo as well, and to Mr. Cochran for flying out here from D.C. to join us today for this great presentation. And I also want to take a point of personal privilege and say, you know, great job to the soccer team and, you know, great job to the baseball team that you guys have as well. It's been awesome, so we're really excited to watch them continue to move forward. Walmart is proud to sponsor the Climate Protection Awards at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and it is even more exciting to be here in Las Vegas to honor Mayor Goodman and the City Council and the team here that helped Las Vegas come out on top and be recognized as the largest city winner for the Climate Protection Awards. You know, Las Vegas is doing really great things to help, you know, both the environment and to help your residents save money, and that's the core of our mission as well, environmental sustainability as an essential part of who we are as a company and how we operate as a responsible business. So do we want to play our video first? Okay, perfect. Well, I will pause here, and then we can play a video to show the great things you guys are doing.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Perigo, the award's available. There are over 40 million going to be coming in this year, and they do look at us as a place to have a good time, hold conventions, but the reality is they don't know how concerned we are about sustaining our environment and protecting everything of this generation for future generations to come. So here at the city, we've really been focusing on sustainability and staying green and water issues.
Well, what we've done is we've taken over 140 of our leaders in our organization and trained them that in their decision-making process, that they need to weave sustainability into those decision-making processes.
So here we are at the wastewater treatment plant. There's a lot of really great sustainability stuff going on here. Number one, this facility uses about a third of the power we use at the city. We've installed 3.3 megawatts of solar power, solar panels, and we use digister gas, so combined, about 40% of the power we use here comes from renewable resources. The other great thing that's going on here is this city is like a big basin. All of the water that we use indoors, it comes through our wastewater treatment plant, is treated and returned to the Colorado River. About a third of the power that we use at the city is streetlights. We have just over 50,000 streetlights across our entire city. We've replaced 42,000 of those with LED, and that has cut our energy consumption by 40%. The remaining 10,000 are decorative lights, and so we're in the process of replacing those as well. Now, buildings, that's the last third of the power that we use, and we have built all of our new buildings to a LEED-certified standard, retrofitted our major buildings to a green standard, and we've installed solar, about five megawatts of solar-covered parking across 34 of those city buildings.
We have already invested over $67 million in energy conservation projects.
So when you add it all up, we used to spend about $15 million a year on energy. This year, our energy bill is going to be just over $9 million. And what it really means, the bottom line is, we have reduced our total greenhouse gas emissions by 35% since we started making these investments. We've reduced our total water consumption by over 140 million gallons annually, and we did that by installing artificial turf, which has many advantages in terms of maintenance and playtime, and obviously reduce water consumption. We've also reduced a lot of our landscape medians and our roadways with decorative art that is actually fabricated by our own employees. One of the programs that's been very successful for us in Las Vegas is our recycling program. We've implemented recycling across all 140 of our city facilities, including all of our parks and recreation centers, and that has saved us about 50% on our trash bill from $800,000 down to around $400,000. And our recycling rate is now over 55%.
We are so excited here in Las Vegas to have been selected for this very great honor, and we want to thank you all at the U.S. Conference of Mayors. We want to thank the committee that made this possible, and of course, we want to thank Walmart for all of this because it is a great day for us all as we go forward into the future, looking to save our environment. Thank you, U.S. Conference of Mayors from the City of Las Vegas.
So just to wrap up, so we, as part of our commitment with the Climate Protection Awards with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, we want to put our money where our mouth is, which is why we're making a contribution to Green Chips on behalf of the City of Las Vegas to help install solar panels on Opportunity Village. And so along with the thousands of Walmart associates who are proud to live and work here in Las Vegas, I'd like to present the folks at Green Chips with a check in amount And then if you'd like to say a few words here as well. Oh, that's true.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Carrie Harnett, and I'm with Opportunity Village, and we're just tickled pink. There's no other word. Or tickled green perhaps is better. This is wonderful. We are pretty well self-sustaining financially, and anytime we can reduce power costs through solar, that means the money we would normally spend on bills goes directly to programs and services for the 1,900 and-plus people that we serve every day. So we can't thank you enough, and Mayor Goodman, thank you so much. We have a little gift for you from the artists in our fine art studio.
We'll get a lock on how nice. We're so proud of this. It's so wonderful.
Thank you.
We know you're going to take good care of it.
Good morning. I'm Lauren Boytelle, Executive Director of Green Chips for the Record. Just wanted to say Green Chips is thrilled to accept this check from you guys, the City of Las Vegas, for your sustainability efforts and to pay it forward to help Opportunity Village enhance their initiatives. Green Chips has over five years of implementing sustainable practices at local organizations that, as Carrie mentioned, decrease their operating costs so that they can better pay or fund for these important community services. In the past, we've helped Shade Tree, Rescue Mission, and Salvation Army, to name a few, and we're very much looking forward to collaborating with Opportunity Village for this new project in 2014, and just to increase the overall sustainability of Southern Nevada through these very meaningful public-private partnerships. So thank you again.
So if I might indulge the council, I'd love it if you would come down for a photo op with these folks for the handing over the check. And I have to mention that a lot of this is because of our staff, Marco Velada and Nicole Malitsky, who are here today for this as well.
Yeah, in front of the seal, congratulations. Yeah, the award if we could. Yeah, let's take our beautiful, we've got it. All the Toms. Come on in. Water's fine.
I just want to hold the award.
Very. Thank you. We're going to try for a repeat. I want you to know that. We don't give up, do we, Tom?
Nope. We've just begun.
We're the greenest large city in the United States.
Yes, that's true.
That is just amazing.
And therefore, it swallows up even the smallest cities because if we're the largest one, it's the number one in the country. So it's awesome. Thank you. This is such a joy.
Congratulations.
We're so proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Tom, this is wonderful. Now, I'm going to lend this to you. Oh, no. You're in another building. Water, I was going to say, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Are you going to be here for a little while in this building? So exciting. We're just so thrilled that we have a new campus you're going to be following. And that Small City Award did go to Gresham, Oregon, Mayor Shane Bemis, and so we are just particularly excited. Wow, should we end the agenda? Wow, wasn't that great? End on a high. All right, Agenda Item 57 has been stricken, so 58 has been trailed to 1:00 P.M. So we will move on to Agenda Item 59. Correct? Okay. These are resolutions. R30-2014, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Adopting the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan, which focuses on neighborhood generally located within a half-mile radius of the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Sunrise Avenue. This is Word 3 with Councilman Coffin. Good morning. For those of you, the reason I'm making the face is this wonderful Director of Planning who's been with us for so long is going to be moving on. Hopefully, one day, he'll come back to us. Anyway, he broke our hearts, but he's smiling, so please go ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you, and I appreciate that. Flynn-Fag Department of Planning, if you wouldn't mind, I would request to trail this item until after Item Number 106, which is a director's business item which is associated with it. I will have a PowerPoint presentation at that point in time, and we'll give a brief presentation on the Walkable Community Plan, and then would like to have the resolution considered following that presentation.
Okay, there's a motion to trail it. Do we need a motion to trail it? We do not. Yes or no? Nope? Okay, this will be trailed to Agenda Item 106. Thank you, Mr. Fag, and we will move on to recommending. And this is Agenda Item 60, Recommending Committee Bill Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill 2014-50. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilwoman, Bill Number 2014-50, in order to extend the vote to the city to particularly start planning to be annexed to make it so that it fulfills the law's obligations of benefit to the city and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much.
Full for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. Agenda Item 61. Items 61 through 67, Bills 2014-39, 2014-47, 2014-49, 2014-51, through 2014-54, will be heard at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I may, question on a couple of these items, 61 and 62.
Okay.
They're to be heard at a later meeting. Will this come up on September 3rd, Bev?
Yes, Councilman, that's when they're up for adoption.
Okay.
That's when you're out of town, correct?
Right. If I may, and I spoke to the sponsor of the bill and asked if this can be pushed to the 17th, which will give me an opportunity to speak on the item on the 17th, if that's okay?
Or could you call in?
I'm out of the country, actually.
Oh, okay.
What we can do is, they will show up on the agenda as eligible for adoption because they've been published, but we can put a note on there that they will be held over to the 9/17 agenda for adoption so that the public will have adequate notice, and we can put a note on, at the 9/3 meeting, that it is for action to be held to the 9/17. We can do both.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Do we need to make a motion on this?
Before consideration of that, I want to make sure with the clerk that we don't have a publication issue, that we will be eligible on the 17th, we're not past some publication deadline?
Yes, that's the thing.
Well, let me...
These bills were not published till after the recommending on Monday.
So they would be eligible on the 17th?
We have plenty of time, yes.
Then is that your discretion?
So I just was informed also... So, I just was informed also by the sponsor of the bill that she won't be here on the 17th, so could we push it to the first meeting in October?
Yes, that should still fall within the 60 days for adoption.
Then, my recommendation, Mayor, if you don't mind, would be for 61 and 62 to be the first meeting, the first City Council meeting in October, if you don't mind.
Which will be October the 1st.
October the 1st.
Okay, so a motion to obey Agenda Items 61 and 62 to the first meeting in October?
There's no motion on this. It'll simply be administrative, what we'll handle on the agenda side will be the note on the items for the next agendas, that they're being held to October 1st for the adoption, so the public will have noticed that they're not going to be heard before then.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll take care of that within our agenda process.
Administratively. Okay, thank you. All right.
Can I ask another question?
No, no need for a motion, Councilman.
Councilman Barlow, and that is going to be...
61 and 62.
The 2014-39, which is the short-term rental, and you want 60 through...
62, 2014-47.
62 is the animal husbandry, or are you referring to the 2014-52, which is the annually gatherings' public nuisance ordinance?
Yeah, not 62.
So it's 61 and 65?
I'm sorry, it was 61 and 65.
Okay, I wanted to make that a clarification on the record.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item 68. Item 68 through 70, Bills 2014-55 through 2014-57, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, September 2nd, due to the Labor Day holiday. New bills, 2014-55 through 2014-57, are assigned to council members. Well, Barlow will not be in town, so I will fill in for him, Camp Anthony and Coffin, and myself. And Attorney, please read the bills.
I'll be happy to.
She's only highlighted it 45 times, Rain, every time I look over at her.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Bill Number 2014-55, in order to amend Ordinance Number 5697, as previously amended by Ordinance Number 5778, creating the Civil and Civilty Special Improvement District Number 607, providence for identifying action previously taken by city officers towards such amendment and providing for other related matters. Bill Number 2014-56, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly start with the laws being annexed to the exhibits of such laws obligations of benefit to the city and provide for other related matters. And finally, Bill Number 2014-57, in order to adopt exhibits containing standards pertaining to the RSL zoning district that were intended to have been adopted by Ordinance Number 6323, and providing for other related matters.
Thank you very much. Okay. That will take us through. Okay, Councilman Barlow, please go ahead.
Mayor and Council, I would like for my two interns to introduce themselves and share with us what school they are attending, and maybe a couple sentences on what they learned during our Government Day today. So to my immediate right, good free.
My name is Dominique Jordan, I go to West Corrigan Technical Academy, and I learned a lot on how they vote, because I watch it a lot on TV.
Okay, thank you. And to my immediate left?
Hi, my name is Jasmine Jordan, and I'm going into my senior year here at UNLV, and I major in Business Marketing and minor in Public Administration, Leadership, and Civic Engagement, and today I learned how important it is for us to be informed citizens and the valuable role we play in developing this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good deal. And I want to thank them both for being a part of the City Council today and participating in our legislative process. Thank you.
It's just wonderful. We just have such bright, beautiful people here in town, and they are both of that. So, we will be recessing, but at this point, I'd like to ask Flynn Fag, please come back up to the microphone. He's very shy. But anyway, you know, we could fill this chamber 50 times over in the gratitude that we feel for your years of service, and the professional demeanor you've always had, and how wonderful you've done a job. We really are gonna miss you, and I know everyone, all of this council and those with whom you've worked before, certainly appreciate everything, and I'm gonna start with Councilman Coffin down at the end there, because I know he said to me this morning, "What are we doing?" So, could you open the doors and let the roses, these, what do you call it? The internet?
I don't know.
It's all right.
But, you know, the idea of roses, we'll throw rose petals at him as he walks out the door, but we've still got another four or five hours with you, starting around 1:00, so, you know, I don't think we're really done with you, because I haven't seen you blush in a long time, so we have to make sure that happens. But as long as the mayor's called you forward, I have to say that the joy I have had over the three years and one month here, a lot of it's attributable to you, because Flynn, you're a, you are very precise, you're very clear, a clear-thinking person, a clear-speaking person, there's precision in everything you do, and really, and when it comes to zoning, as much as I never knew before I came into this office, I know a lot more, and it has to do with the way you explain things, the way you simplify, the way you are good for our public as well, because you simplify it so that we understand it, and some of the members, my colleagues, are more experienced than I, but I'm learning. But you take the newcomer, the green person who has a problem with their backyard, that thing that was built there, or the fence is too high by three inches, and you try to make things better for them. You've found a way to make a lot of people happy with all these administrative decisions, the ones that aren't making headlines, the ones that are not the marijuana issue, they're not some sexually-oriented business issue. It has to do with mom and pop and their backyard, and the dog, and all the things that come into planning, and you dealt with the rich and powerful, and you dealt with mom and pop in an equal, equally fair manner, and so I really do appreciate what you've done for the people, in my word, and particularly for me, and so I hope, you know, you'll come back and visit us. You're bound to, because it's hotter in Palm Springs than it is here, so good luck to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to admit, I, like many others, when I heard the news that you were transitioning, you know, my heart sunk, because I says, "Well, I haven't pulled out all of the walkable community information that Flynn has been turning me on to and educating me on in how to, you know, systematically and thoroughly roll this out into the community," and so, Flynn, you most definitely have been a great, great professional in this organization, and you've really touched so many lives in so many ways that I don't believe you even recognize, and I know you're going to continue that, because that's just your personality, and it's not often that Flynn breaks, and I had an opportunity to see Flynn break for the first time during recommending, when he was just flustered with horse properties, and he screamed during the recommending meeting yesterday, that there's no such thing as a horse property, so let's just get this straight right now, and so... Flynn, you gotta know Flynn to understand that he is always even kill, but yesterday, he was fit to be tired, when he had the opportunity to finally say, "There's no such thing as horse properties." And so, I thought that was the most funniest point and experience that I've ever shared with you, Flynn, because as the councilman shared, you're always straight down the middle, you know your material and the way you articulate it. I've never been around anyone that can articulate a message so clear and so precise, and at a level that everyone understands, and you most definitely have a special gift, and I know you're going to continue to take that gift into any community you go in and truly make a difference and impact communities throughout your career. So much success to you. Sad to see you leave, but I know it's more than likely in your best interest that you've chose to move on to Palm Springs, as I understand it, and I know our paths will eventually cross again in the future, so much success, man, I look forward to remaining in contact with you, and thank you for everything that you've shared with my staff and I, as far as how planning works and answering all of the technical questions that we had over the years, so congratulations and Godspeed.
Thank you. Councilman?
I echo what my colleagues have already stated. You know, Flynn, your knowledge is so deep, and your integrity is so unending. I worked with many professionals in my life, and I don't know if I've worked with many that have had those attributes that you have, and you know, you would always guide us in a manner that was quiet, very substantial, and always would get it done. Whenever we had a question, you would get it done, and you would be always objective. You'd never look down on us if we asked a lot of maybe minor questions, you accepted them as if they were the most profound questions in the world. And I, the gentle manner in which you've guided us throughout all this time, your great professional courage, and you've been a great professional colleague, you've been a great friend, and I tell you, when I heard the news, I said, "I can't take any more blows, no more." I told you my heart was broken, it was, because you've been such a big help in these very, very controversial issues, and I will miss you very much, and at my age, I'm not jealous of many things, but I'm jealous of Palm Springs right now. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Flynn, it's been great working with you. You've made Las Vegas a better place to live, and I'm sure you're gonna do the same thing in Palm Springs, so congratulations.
Councilman Wild?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Fag, I will miss you the most. You've been instrumental, certainly for me. One thing I've recognized, however, is Betsy has assembled such a great team over time, you all have targets on your backs, and I hate to see an exodus from her staff, but I know it's for the best for you, and I know you're excited about it, and I liked your comments in the paper about the opportunities that are ahead of you. You've been phenomenal to work with, and you've certainly educated me and made me a better City Council member, and certainly when it comes to planning and development, and trying to wrap my hands around all that growth out in Centennial Hills, it's not going anywhere, it's gonna continue to do that, so I'm sure you'll be watching keenly what's happening in the City of Las Vegas, but we wish you the best. I'm still mad at you, though, so I'll try to keep going.
Councilman Beers?
How did I get to go last on this? I mean, like, what's left of it? Are you sure? Because it's really hot there. Not many... Not many places we can say that about.
He hasn't sold his house yet.
I very much appreciate the last two and a half years of education at your feet, and I've learned an immense amount. This was the area of governance I knew the least about when I was elected, and you've been a wonderful teacher, so thank you very much, and good luck on your travels.
We still have some sign regulations coming forward for you.
Cool.
And in closing, I would like to ask all of us up here on the dais to stand up to thank you for your patience that you have had, unbelievable patience, but to wish you only the best, knowing that you will come back. We do hope you don't sell your house, because then you may not be going, but the reality is, we thank you, you have made every day very, very special for each of us, and we wish you only good luck. Are you gonna keep your cellphone so we can call?
I think all of you have it, so you know where to reach me.
You're not gonna change it, though?
I'm not gonna change it yet.
Yet? Okay. Remember, we're here, we'll call for advice.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you and for all of you, and again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to serve here in the City of Las Vegas, so thank you.
Nice.
Good job. Mayor?
And we will then go into lunch recess.
Before we go into lunch recess, may I take the liberty of just congratulating a young man who doesn't look old enough to have his first grandchild?
Yeah.
So I would like to congratulate Councilman Bob Beers on his first grandchild, and I don't know the name, but maybe he, if he doesn't mind sharing the name, but I found out about it on Facebook, so... And I believe he called himself Gampa, and so therefore, I would like to congratulate Gampa on becoming a Gampa for the first time.
A little boy or a little girl?
Little boy, it looks like, little boy.
That darn little keypad on your phone there is how that Gampa thing came about. I'm checking now, and still no word on the name, they're thinking about it. There are a couple of grandmas and great-grandmas in contention, and it is a girl, although it looks like a boy.
Well, it is a girl.
The boys in the Beers family, the boys in the Beers family don't have near that much hair.
Well, he didn't share the sex, though.
All right, how many pounds? How many inches, how many pounds?
It's a girl. Uh, I still don't have the stats. So I'm sure somebody weighed her...
She's gonna be five years old before you give us a report.
I'm sure somebody weighed her and measured her, but I have that information that has not been passed on to me.
Okay, we expect you to tweet that out as soon as you have it.
As soon as I know.
And congratulations, and in celebration of your new and first grandbaby, we are gonna take a recess for lunch.
Your Honor.
And we will end the recess at 1:00, is that when we reconvene? Yes.
Your Honor, during that recess, of course, there'll be a time, there's a very cold bottle of a celebratory beverage waiting for all of us, so at some time, maybe before the afternoon session starts, in order that we may confront that session a little better, we should toast to Councilman Beers, so that'll be ready any time.
Lucky days, that's very nice. Thank you. All right, everyone, we'll see you at 1:00. All right, everyone, we'll see you at 1:00. Okay, we're back. I hope everybody had a delicious lunch. And for those who didn't, the diet is always good. So, back from our recess, we're starting with number 71. Is that correct? Agenda item 71 for possible action. Any item from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward at this time. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Three items. Item number 76, which is SUP 54331, applicant mall entertainment. Owner Simon Chelsea Las Vegas Development at 885 South Grand Central Parkway, Suite 55. Staff has asked that item be tabled. Item number 84, ROC 53918, applicant MLK Food Mart. Owner Lucky Champ at 1420 West Bonanza. The applicant has asked that be withdrawn without prejudice. And item number 98, VAR 54353, applicant owner Sharon Williams. .15 acres at 4420 Mark Avenue. That has asked that be obeyed till October 3, 2014, and that's my motion.
And the number on that last one, please?
98.
98.
76, 84, and 98.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. Okay, just for your edification, I have cards, speaker cards here on agenda item 58, 7 and 58, and can't be 7. 58 from Jake Curtis Edmondson and 78 and 79, Fatah Kaftan, it looks like. So we'll, we get to those. All right, agenda items 72 through 80 may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. So what we are doing is going 72 through 80. Minus where any of those?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would like to pull forward items number 78 and 79 pertaining to Springs.
Okay. Anyone else on any items? Okay. Yeah, but I have to read them. One motion, one vote, and I will read them, but we are pulling forward 78, 79.
Mayor, and 76 was already taken care of under the previous item.
And 76, what happened to 76?
Was asked to be tabled.
Tabled. Okay. But shall I read it as well? And skip the two until we get to them? Okay, so we'll do 72, 3, 4, and 5. RQR 53826, applicant Mesquite Gaming LLC. Owner Rebel Oil Company, Inc. A required review of an approved variance V-0043-96 for a 55-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 921 North Buffalo. C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 2. This is in Councilman Beers' ward. Item 73, SUP 54332 and SDR 54330, applicant LVCSD Saddle LLC. Owner Trinity Peak, Roman numeral 3, LLC. A request for a special use permit for public school primary use. Site development plan for two-story, 54,078-square-foot public school primary building and a portion of 8.39 acres northeast corner at Trinity Peak Avenue and Fire Mesa Street. C-PB Planned Business Park Zone. This is Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian, and that was 73 and 74. Then agenda item 75, SUP 54292, applicant Juan M. Barrera. Owner Rainbow Commercial LLC. A request for a special use per, for proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within an existing 2,000-square-foot restaurant. 2,300 North Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 108. C1 Limited Commercial Zone. This is in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. Number 76 has been tabled. Number 77, MSP 54265, applicant Abundant Grace Church. Owner Patricia Eileen Iwamoto and Yee Steve Vignetman. A request for a major amendment of an approved master sign plan, MSP 4388, to add one freestanding sign and one wall sign in existing church house of worship on 1.84 acres at 2690 North Decatur Boulevard. CM Commercial Industrial Zone, Ward 5. That's Councilman Barlow. And agenda item 80, DIR 54920, applicant Drop Gaming LLC. Owner Barden Nevada Gaming LLC. A request to allow the operation of a proposed 78.5-square-foot water feature at 301 East Carson. C2 General Commercial Zone. This is in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. The Planning Commission recommends approval on items 73 through 77. And all items are recommended for approval by staff. Item 80 is a non-public hearing and items 72 through 79 are public hearings, which I declare open. So is there anyone? We have tabled 76, so there's no point in talking about that. And 78, 79, we will take as, hold forward. So anyone who has comments on 72, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 80? Please come forward, state your name and any comments. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on those. Anyone, anyone from council on that? Any comments on any of this? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve items 72, 73, 74, 75, 77, and 80.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. And please post. And that motion carries. We'll now go on to agenda item 78. That Councilwoman has asked for. And this is ROC, this is agenda item 78. ROC 54893, review of condition, public hearing. Applicant owner Las Vegas Valley Water District for possible action and request for a review of condition. To amend condition number 2 of special use permit, SUP 24204, from the hours of operation shall be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily, end quote, "to," quote, "the hours of operation shall be from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m." 1:00 a.m. the following, I gather, day, daily, end quote, at 3:17, South Valley View Boulevard, 8 p.m. C-V, which is Civic Zone. This is in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. PRJ 54004. Staff recommends approval on this. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Bronson Mack, 1001 South Valley View, here on behalf of the applicant. The amendment that we are requesting before you is to extend the hours of operation by two hours, specifically for catered events that occur indoors at the Springs Preserve. These would be weddings or corporate functions, bar mitzvahs, parties. As currently stated, these events and activities are concluding by 10:00 or 10:30 so that we can clear the property by 11:00 p.m. And based on the sheer volume of interest that we have in third-party rentals, wanting to hold corporate events or weddings at the Springs Preserve, we are asking for this amendment. And again, it would only apply to indoor events. That's ultimately to minimize any disruption or disturbance to any of our neighbors. Our outdoor events would still conclude by about 10:00, 10:30 so that, again, we can clear the property by 11:00. So with that, we would ask that the condition, if approved, that this item be conditioned to only pertain to the indoor events, catered events. As well, based on some of the conversation that we've had with the neighbors, we would ask that this item be conditioned to come back before council after one year for review. With that, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. What I'm going to do is ask, is there any public comment on this? And please state your name for the record and then Councilwoman can ask you to move forward on this. Good afternoon.
For the record, Fenton Gaffney, 308 Canyon Drive. My property backs up directly on the Springs Preserve. That's my backyard, which I'm lucky to have.
Lucky.
Absolutely, Mayor. The history of the Springs Preserve, you're all aware of. I'm not going to give you the history. I'm going to give you my history of the Springs Preserve, that everything, every time they've come to you and asked for a change, every time they've asked for something different, they've gone outside the boundaries and done everything that they said they wouldn't do. In particular, and Councilwoman might remember, when they looked for their liquor license many years ago, Dick Wimmer, who ran the water district at the time, along with Tom Minwigan, said that the access road on the east side of the property would only be used for security and for water district personnel legitimate business functions. While every day, there's a train runs by the backyard of my house every three hours with the public in it. The people pay so they can tour the property of the Springs Preserve. They also rent bicycles so people can cycle by and look into my backyard. I've had Metro out twice for trespassers on my property. I've had Metro out because I've had property stolen from my property and they all gained access from the Springs Preserve because that back road is open to them. I've, on record, of calling Metro a minimum of eight to 10 times after the 10 o'clock curfew to complain about the noise levels. I can't sit in my family room and listen to TV after 10 o'clock at night when the Springs Preserve are having their outdoor functions. And what concerns me is that the application says indoor only. And if we were to believe them and that's all they would do, I can't object to it. But as I say, the history is, they do what they want once they get the application. And I've suffered and my neighbors have suffered. And it's a constant hassle. And having to call Metro at 10:30 at night because my young son can't go to bed with noise, I'm afraid if this extends to 1:00, I'm going to have a similar problem. I'd also like to put on record that I did fax in the cards objecting to this, but I didn't see them on the agenda today in the minutes. But I do have a copy of the, not that card, Mayor, the one opposing it. The mailers that were sent out.
Yes, yes.
But they're not part of the, of the items that are shown in the city council supporting documents to show that we've objected to it. But I do have copies here on the original fax transmitted to show that I sent them in at 10:30 on Monday morning to try and get them as part of this.
Do you need those, our city clerk? She'll make copies. Councilman Coffin, please.
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't get your name.
Gaffney.
First name is Fenton, last name Gaffney.
Okay, Mr. Gaffney. Where do you live? If we could please have that map put up again that shows the overall area plan, including residential. Where do you live?
Does it work by point on this?
The map, oh, I see. It's not on the flat part. Just tell me where you live.
I live at 308 Canyon Drive, which is in...
That's facing north? North at the top? Okay. Where do you live?
I'm trying to get my bearings, Councilman. Sorry. 308 Connor Drive. This is my property right here.
And I am familiar with the train. It's, I think it's battery-powered and it has rubber tires.
Correct.
So what I need to know is what noise does it make?
A lot.
The issue with the train, and it's not just the train, Councilman, because you also have the hayride that they do at Halloween and you have the other events that they hold at the Day of the Dead. There's people in that. It has exposed my backyard to the public, which was never exposed.
Is that above your fence line?
It's above my fence line. Now, I've walked that road. You can't see into my property if you walk it. But if you take the train and you take a bicycle, you can see in.
There's a flood channel right there.
There is a flood control channel, correct. Runs right behind my property.
Fenton, is there a stop on the train there?
Is there a stop?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so it goes by?
It goes by...
Some speed of...
Well, pretty, pretty slow.
So it's the noise from the people that are in the...
Correct.
And every three hours? And then the noise you're complaining about for evenings happens over here?
Well, the noise, the noise, Councilman, for the evenings is when they have outdoor events either in the amphitheater or the small amphitheater on the south side of the property where they've got, they sometimes hold concerts or outdoor weddings and social events. The noise from, not the people, it's the music.
Okay.
And so we're on record of calling Metro at least eight to 10 times to have them come out, to have the music turned down.
Okay, I'm just, now, the reason I'm asking is because I represent the city on the Water Authority Board.
Yes.
But this is a water district application and I want you to know that there is a difference because the authority is a, we are members of the authority. But only the county commissioners are the water district. They control the district, which means water for Las Vegas and the unincorporated area. Just so you know. So we don't have any leverage in terms of the district's actions. And so I suggest, and I don't know what a Councilwoman is going to propose, but certainly there is direct leverage to be applied through the county commissioner for the area, too. Because they are the ones that control the daily activities of the district.
Correct. But the application that's in front of the council today is for them to extend to 1:00 and you can approve that without going through the county commission.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure that you knew. There was somebody else to also go through to...
Well aware.
You know, register loud and long every two weeks over there at the county commission. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to ask, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Would you please come forward as well and state your name and your comments? And Mr. Gaffney, if you'll have a seat, I guess not on the ribbon, but in case Councilwoman would like to ask you some other questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Please, ma'am, and if you'll state your name, please.
I am Belen Capado, 405 Lacy Lane. I am directly near the Springs Preserve. And I am here to voice opposition. Opposition to this measure, to this proposed change and for my neighbors who couldn't come. The reason for that is historically, in the beginning, my neighbor Carol, who sent an email to Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian, has been there for many, many, many years, even before that. And she remembers that in the very beginning, when this idea came about, the neighbors were happy because, well, we got, we were going to get rid of all the tumbleweed and all the tamarisk trees and all that stuff. Anyway, we were told then that it was going to be only daylight hours of operation. There was going to be no food, none of the things that are happening now. And incrementally, through the years, things have changed, of course. And we realize, we understand that Springs Preserve wants to be a valuable and is a valuable resource in our community. So then there was the approval for a sandwich shop, which we did not oppose because we figured, okay, sure, Springs Preserve was for education, instruction, demonstrations of how to garden, and exhibits. of how to garden, and exhibits, and for learning. And so, we thought, well, people there are going to be there, they need food. Okay, so we had a sandwich shop, and then it became the Wolfgang Puck Restaurant. And then, they had, they had entertainment, because I remember attending one function there at the cafe, and they had a band. And so, of course, the band had drums and all of the other stuff, but it was inside the cafe. Then later on, it was moved to the outside, and this is where we are now. And the hours of operation were changed to 10:30, because they wanted to stop at 10:30 and then get everything done, and then it was done by 11:00. But where we are now is, one of my neighbors, who's directly near that, has told me that, as she couldn't come today, that when they do the drums, I know, you know, when you have, I guess it differs. If you like bassoon, and they were playing a concerto there, I guess that's music. But if you don't like rock and whatever else, then to some people, it becomes noise. And hers, her complaint is that when they do the drums and other accoutrements of music, her foundations shake, that's what she says. And so, the others, my neighbors say, well, we just go inside and then close our windows and close our doors. So, but the other thing is that, what we're concerned about is, would this be, we're concerned about the slippery slope, which is, okay, now, because of historical incremental approvals, well, now they want it at 1:00, and it's going to be inside and closed. Well, historically, that hasn't happened, because it has moved onto being outside. The other thing is, because of the noise, you know, most people have sleeping hours of 9:00, 10:00, and then when we pass that, because they stop at 11:00, we really can't just lie down, okay, I'm asleep. And by all medical research, everybody needs seven to eight hours of sleep. If they change it to 1:00, would it be 1:30, then they're done? And what do we do? I mean, as guardians of the public welfare, and we are elected representatives, you find a balance between what is good for Springs Preserve and what is good for the citizens.
Thank you.
And then, and I know you do a good job of that, great. But the other thing that we were talking about is this. If you pass this, would you create a precedent-setting regulation? Where? Because the conditions of this is, it's inside a closed facility, and it's going to be catered. So, like rhetorically, if I would have a party, and that could be a precedent, and I be inside my house and have a catered affair, so then I can stop at 1:00 in the morning, would that be a thing later that, that you might have to address, because it's very possible?
Thank you.
And the other thing is that, for the music, you know, when you have the drums, it's almost like, for me at least, I'm lying down and I hear the boom, 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 in my head, and it keeps repeating. So, it, it has an adverse effect when you, when you change the venue, and if they will later request that to the health and welfare of people.
Okay.
And so, thank you so much.
I think we understand. We appreciate your coming down and making your comments. Thank you. Anyone else, please, on this agenda item? Okay, I have asked Mr. Gaffney to stay, and just in case councilwoman has some comments from the two of you that she'd like to hear responsively. Other than that, I'm closing the public hearing on this particular item. We'll go back and open it up on the next one. Councilwoman.
As a member of the Springs Preserve Board, I really, really respect all the people who work there, and I like having the Springs Preserve there. And I contribute, I think, to trying to help make it a better place. But I will tell you what these residents are telling us today is accurate. We had the meeting in the Water City's room, big room, and we were promised at that time that the noise would not affect the people who lived in Rancho Nevada, or who live, if you put that map out there, I could show you a little bit maybe, but who live very close to the Springs Preserve. And it, from the very beginning, it started, and then it got worse, and it got worse. In fact, with the hayrides, I had so many complaints from the residents that I went to the Springs Preserve personnel and asked them, can you change where you're having that hayride, because it's too close to the residences? And you know what it is? It isn't just the noise of the tires, it's the people talking, or somebody having a radio on, or something like that. And this is a working neighborhood, this is a neighborhood where we have also several senior citizens, and it's, it's disturbing to them. And then, I, if you look at that map, you can see right along the road, all those houses. Well, it's not just that rim of houses. That gets it the worst, and then the next, along Canyon, you'll see, they get it. And I live right in the middle, which is almost the edge of your map, and I hear it. Now, I'm not disturbed so much by it, because it isn't as loud where I am, but it's there. And I know, sometimes I hear it pretty loudly, it doesn't bother me that much, but I know that if I'm hearing it that loudly, that far away, that the others are hearing it much more loudly. So I, I have a concern. I don't know if it's a lack of communication, maybe the people who manage the Springs Preserve think this is being done appropriately, but it's not. And when they told me, and I remember, I questioned, when we were at the Water District at that meeting, I questioned, well, what about anything outside? And they said how it was dipped in, and the noise wouldn't carry. It just carries beautifully. I don't know if it's the air over there or what, but it just carries beautifully, so it does go far. So I also am concerned about that. And I wonder if maybe we could see for a year, if we could communicate well and let you know directly. Now, for example, in our planning backup, it says that there weren't any police calls or anything that, you know, showed a problem, but yet, many people, some here have told you they called the police, and other people I know have called the police. This has been something that's been building, and building, and building. So I am not for increasing the hours until the Springs Preserve can show us that it keeps its word on what it promised us when we first gave permission and approval for it. And that, that's how I feel. If you have anything to say about that, that might change that, I'd be glad to listen.
Well, again, Bronson Mack, 1001 South Valley View, I will just say for the record that the Springs Preserve policy is to keep noise levels down to 90 decibels. I believe the city ordinance is 110 decibels. When we have events, we do take decibel readings 30 feet from the source of the, of the noise, so from the speakers, if it's coming out of a speaker. And then, we further take decibel readings at the property line at various locations throughout the property. Those are all recorded, and those are taken hourly. And part of that is our effort to try and make sure that we aren't causing any noise disruptions for the neighbors.
Well, do you think maybe you could meet with some of these neighbors and explain? Because, number one, 90 decibels, 110 decibels, 60 decibels is conversational speech. So, I mean, that's, that's pretty loud. Well, then, you can say it's over here, maybe it's amplified by the way it comes through that little dip, I have no idea. But I will tell you, I've heard it myself, I've heard it many times, and over the years, since the Springs Preserve has been initiated, I've had calls on it.
Sure.
And we've sort of tried to tamper it down so you could keep what you had, but now wanting to increase, and it's just too much. And I'd just like to see if maybe you could all work together, and maybe then, maybe after six months, a year, we could see if things have been done in a way that matches what we were told they would be done, if then we could look at a possible half-hour increase, or something like that, and work our way through. Yes, please, is that all right?
Mr. Gaffney.
Mr. Gaffney.
Just a quick comment. You mentioned about, there was nothing on the city that said that there had been any calls to Metro. That's from the current licensee who took over in March of this year, who took over. It doesn't span the history of the Springs Preserve since it opened. It's only since the current operator has been running the restaurant.
So that's why the difference...
And that's why there's no, so if you go back to the history, and you know it just as well as I do, it's there, the records are there, and as, as my neighbor said, the Springs Preserve has a history of doing whatever they want, wants to get approval, and we're the ones that suffer. And you live in the neighborhood, you know the neighborhood, it's just not fair. It was there as an educational tool for the people, for the visitors, it was supposed to be open, normal business hours, it was supposed to educate the school kids, and now, all of a sudden, it's become an entertainment venue where you can get married. Bishop Gorman had their, their high school prom there one year. It's like, really? That wasn't the original intent when Patton Mulroy put this thing together many years ago. It was an educational establishment for the people, for the visitors, to teach them how, where the city of Las Vegas originated, and it's turned into an entertainment venue at night for alcohol and parties and loud noises, and we're affected.
If I might interject here, being on the original advisory board, and your comments to the fact that it's changed and grown, yes, it has.
Yeah.
But they really had no idea at the beginning, beyond the educational look at it and what it was preserving of our history and different types of plants and everything else. The reality is that the Springs Preserve, I'm sure, is always looking for ways to fund itself.
Oh.
And we all know that.
Yes.
It's a very valuable resource.
Yes.
So to find the proper compromise that does not affect the residents negatively, and yet bring in the funding wherever they can do it, there has to be some kind of balance. And I certainly know, because in my neighborhood, we get the thumping from blocks away when there's music, and it's, it's like any young person who's got their windows down with the car radio blaring, you can have everything closed, and your car is moving to the beats of whatever they're playing. So, it, but it is a balance, and I, because we value the Springs Preserve, which I know you do, too.
Absolutely.
They have to be able to come up with ways to fund it, and we can't lose the resource. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
And Mayor...
But I understand.
And I agree with what you're saying, and I will tell you, they've done a magnificent job in the educational part of it.
Yes, they have.
The, the bus train that they have, the fact that we brought over some of the old-time might, you know, cottages, the fact that we're soon going to have a street there that's going to bring back all the historical aspects of what it was like to live at the time of when this city started, it's just magnificent. And they're going to have a butterfly habitat there soon. It's, it is magnificent. But what has happened is, you work over here in the Springs Preserve, and you need money to keep it going, and so you're always looking for that. You live over here in a neighborhood, and you're saying, my gosh, you promised me it wasn't going to be too noisy, and it's really noisy. And I'm just wondering if, I know that I've taken some of your complaints, and I've spoken to personnel over there, and they've tried, but maybe if we had a group from your Rancho Nevada area that lives near the Springs, could work with those people who are trying to raise more money, we could see a way that we could handle it. For example, maybe we could say, instead of 11:00, let's go to 11:30 and see if you can wrap up in half an hour. Those people who are putting on whatever they're putting on, instead of taking an hour, say they have to wrap up in half an hour and have more people there working on it. Whatever it is, we, I think you certainly have the respect from the residents for the Springs Preserve, but sometimes, they feel you don't have the respect for them. And they were guaranteed with promises from the city when this was done, and I feel I have to stand behind that.
Thank you.
So that would, that would be what I would recommend, is going back, working together, and seeing if there's some way you could work this out.
Yeah. Can you hold a meeting or be present?
Oh, I would be present. I'm, I'm always present. Yeah, I'll be there, yes.
We would have no problem putting together meetings and discussions with the neighbors. In fact, I, through my tenure with the Water District, about, actually built some pretty good relationships with some of the neighbors that are there now. We would have no problem doing that. I would then just ask for guidance from city council on whether or not this item should ultimately be held, or should we withdraw without prejudice and just bring it back at a later date after we have some time to sort of work some things out? That way, we're not necessarily pressed for time and trying to get back before you.
I think that's an excellent idea, to bring it back without prejudice, and then, in the meantime, perhaps you could work with this gentleman and set together some meetings and bring some other people in that, that have had concerns. Because I know almost everyone along that rim, everyone on Lacy practically has complained. And you know, if it's hitting me, it's hitting almost Our Lady of Las Vegas, which is right on Alta, so. So, okay, then, let's see if we could set that up. And I move that...
Agenda items 78 and 79, because they're together.
Yes. Yes. What was it you said again?
Withdraw without prejudice.
We requested this be withdrawn without prejudice, both agenda items 78 and 79.
So I would move that we withdraw without prejudice, items numbers 78 and 79, on the condition that the two parties meet and come back to us with perhaps some suggestions so that we can make both of us happy.
And councilwoman, when you say both parties, you're talking about the residents, not just us?
Oh, absolutely. I'm, I know, I know you only represent, I mean, I know how many are there, because I've heard the complaints.
Right.
And even if you go into our backup, you'll see the only one that supported it without any comments was someone in Hyacinth, and that is what we call our flower streets, and you know, that's more towards Mesquite, that's pretty far away from where you're having the music.
Yes, it is.
And then, we have all the others are ones that are near the edge of the city. I mean, the roadway that divides the two.
And if I might add one other thing, councilwoman, if you don't mind? Listening to what you've said, it seems that the problems in the past have been from the outdoor events, and encroachment on ideas that they said the Springs Preserve wouldn't do something and began. So perhaps in your discussion, if in fact, this is only about indoor events, that there be something written in to whatever this permission's going to end up being, that in fact, if in fact, it does go outdoors, that you review that, and that there's penalty on that, that they have to stop till further coming before council or something.
And maybe that's what we could do when they come back, because what the citizens have said is, when we have granted, it's always gone beyond what we've granted. And I, I'm not pointing the blame, I understand the Springs Preserve, they're anxious to keep that beautiful thing going, but on the other hand, it goes beyond what was granted. And so, we could do that when you come back and then work together.
And there are personnel changes at the Springs Preserve, so when you get new groups coming in and new leadership beyond the board, they have new ideas and they don't realize what the history is and not to do something.
Mayor, with your permission...
Councilman?
I just was thinking, in fact, Brian brought it up to me, that they'll have to pay another fee if they bring this back.
How much is the fee?
Would it be better to just table this, councilwoman?
What's the fee?
Mr. Fag?
Madam Mayor, through you, if we table the item, we have six months to bring it back, otherwise, they would have to file a new application. I'm not sure how long it's going to take them to meet with neighbors to resolve the concerns.
Yeah, I'm just taking that recommendation, if they're trying to stretch their dollars like everybody else is, so, thank you, Mayor.
What if, what if we gave it, what if we table it for the six months, and then, say, five and a half months, come back and see if we've made a resolution? But in the meantime, I think you should have not just one or two meetings. You have a lot of people who live near there, and I think you should have enough meetings so we can work this out. And once in a while, the inside entertainment does spill over. I will say that the noise does come over. It's not just outside, because I've sort of checked as these things have occurred. But I then would withdraw my motion and make the motion to table it for, can you work fast, five months?
I think Brian wants to say so.
I was going to say, if it's a date certain, it's, it's abeyance, if it's a date sometime in the future, it's tabling. So if you're going to do a date certain, it needs to just be obeyed.
Well, wouldn't we have to do it before six months?
Yes, that's correct.
So what would be a date certain on that? Can someone give me help on that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. An abeyance can be at any time, a tabling would only be six months, so...
Oh, okay.
Mayor, can I suggest to councilwoman this? I think Mr. Mack knows what work he's got to do, councilwoman, and I think there has been a lack of communication from Water District to your office. I would suggest that just table it, just table it now as the motion only. You know what homework you've got to do to work with these, with these neighbors, and then you're going to have to satisfy councilwoman Tarkanian.
Sure.
She will indicate to you when you can bring this back.
Sure.
And you just have to do it within six months.
That's fair.
Does that work, councilwoman?
It works. Now, how do I word that resolution? How do I word that? Motion.
You just move the table.
Which I think I did originally.
You withdrew it, so you start again.
Now, I have to start again, all right.
Could I ask, when the Springs Preserve does get to this point where they want to meet with the neighbors, that they bring their head of security with them? Because my first phone call is always to try and track down head of security, and you can't get their phone number, it's private, it don't, so that's why I call Metro. It's private, it don't, so that's why I call Metro. Their security personnel, maybe there's been a change, I don't know, but their security personnel are not available to the local residents to talk to, to say, hey, shut it down, or I'm calling Metro in 20 minutes or 30 minutes. They're not there, or else they don't return phone calls when you leave messages.
I think that before you two leave, maybe you could let him know who you would like to have at that meeting? Would that be okay with you?
That's not a problem whatsoever.
Security is one, and you may think of some others.
Of course.
But then to start the meetings, and I know we've got two fine groups here, and I know we can work this out, but right now, I have to side with the fact that every time we have given something to the Springs, it's gone beyond. And even the fact, you know, I'm on the Springs Preserve Committee, and I didn't even realize you were going to change the hours. I mean, nobody came to me, nobody told me. It's just sometimes you have to communicate, because then maybe I could have talked some with you before and everything. So now I make my motion again, and my motion is to table it. Now, do they have to pay that money?
No, not until after six months.
Not until after six months. Okay, so I moved to table it. You've saved some money for the Springs Preserve, and that's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. Motion is to table on 78 and 79.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we did through 80 before that motion, so now we're into 81 and 82. Agenda item 81, GPA 53013, request for general plan amendment from R Rural Density Residential to SC Service Commercial. 82, ZON 53014, request for rezoning from RE Residential Estates to C1 Limited Commercial. Applicant owner, RIV Living Trust, on .43 acres on the north side of Lake Mead Boulevard, approximately 300 feet west of Decatur Boulevard. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on both items. These items are in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow, are public hearing items which I declare open as the applicant or representative present.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the Council, John Vorn, San 62 Swan Circle Henderson, representing the application. This property owned by RIV Living Trust, the Ivy family has owned this property for over the past 30 years. To the east of this property is a C1 Zone dog grooming and boarding business. To the east of that, at the intersection of Lake Mead and Decatur, is a C1 Zone auto repair shop. To the south across Lake Mead is an existing C1 Zone shopping center. There's a food for less in there and a rather large fabric store. To the west and north of this property are single-family residences located in Curtis Park Manor within unincorporated county. This parcel is literally the last residentially zoned parcel fronting on Lake Mead, with Lake Mead as its only access. The last single-family home with Lake Mead access was built about 25 years ago. Most of the residences to the west along Lake Mead within Curtis Park were built 30 to 60 years ago. That's when Lake Mead was little more than a two-lane country road. Lake Mead, of course, since that time has become a 100-foot-wide major thoroughfare, carrying an average of 20,000 vehicles per day. In my opinion, as a planner in the valley for the past 45 years, to construct a new residence on this property would constitute poor planning practice. This is also evidenced by the fact that no entity within the valley has permitted new residential, single-family homes to front on a major street for many years. Where a single-family has been constructed on major streets in the past, such as Eastern or Jones, the long-term result has been less than desirable. This has also been a problem property for the owner, with trespass by vagrants, trash, and illegal dumping occurring on a regular basis. The owners eventually had to construct a chain-link fence around the property to try to protect the property, but illegal dumping still occurs, and periodic cleanup of the property still has to be accomplished at a cost of many thousands of dollars over the years. We have no specific plans at this time, but a prototype plan was prepared. With the code required parking, setbacks, landscaping, including intense landscape buffers to the north and west adjacent to the residential, it appears that only about a 2,000-square-foot building could be constructed. If approved, the owner will be working with the neighbors on the development or the design of the particular building in the property, including in the intense landscaping and other buffers, and the architectural appearance of the building. This can also be made to be a residentially appearing building, rather than appearing like many of the commercial buildings in the area. We would then come back with an SDR as a public hearing. We respectfully request that the Council follow the recommendations of your staff and the Planning Commission in approving this request, and we will be glad to answer any questions the Council may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fag, any comments to make on this request, please?
Madam Mayor, this was a particularly difficult decision for us as staff in terms of the application. The question is, really, you have commercial that abuts residential neighborhoods, and where do you draw that line in between the commercial and the residential? As you look at the map, you can see that across the street there is C1 Commercial Zone property on the south side of Lake Mead. You have a parcel here which has remained undeveloped for a rather lengthy period of time. Is it appropriate to develop single-family residential, and why hasn't that developed a single-family residential? So looking at just this particular property, looking at where the line should be drawn between commercial and residential, staff had recommended approval of this item. However, we did have much opposition at the Planning Commission meeting from residents who live to the west of this parcel, who objected to the commercial general plan amendment and rezoning of the property. So I just wanted you to be aware of that as well.
And there were no restrictions added to the property because of the residential abutting it on the north and the west?
No, there were not any restrictions added.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on either, we'll start with 81. Please come forward and state your name.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is William Dome, and I live at 4924 West Lake Mead, which is right next door to this property, right next door to the vacant lot, just west of it. Okay. And one of the comments I'd like to make is that, he mentioned that Rhonda, actually Rhonda Ivy is the person that owns this property. She also owns the property adjacent to this, which is the Dog Hotel. So she owns both properties in a line conjunction with each other. So one of the problems that we have as neighbors is that we feel that eventually, if this gets rezoned as C1, that eventually there's going to be a big building into this property, which was proposed several years ago. And that would put an alleyway next to my property if a big building went in there.
Could we have the plot plan again, so we can see the other property, please? The one that showed that one. Now, you're immediately to the west facing West Lake Mead?
Just west of the black line, that one, that arrow.
And then the property that the owner also owns is immediately to the east of hers?
Immediately to the east of that property. And it is already zoned as C1.
Okay.
So there'll be two properties there that she owns as C1. And that's of concern to us. And I want to thank some of my neighbors for being here. It's hard to get people to come to meetings. So I thank them very much. It's hard because people are working, and so on, or we'd have had more people here, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Also, we had a neighborhood meeting, and Councilman Barlow's associate was there. And at that time, we mentioned, because it got brought up, that they don't believe that this property will stay residential. And the event that it doesn't stay residential, we would ask that then maybe the property could be rezoned as either professional or as office, and the office was brought up, and that that would create a better buffer between the existing C1 property and my property line. I'm really concerned that if a commercial building goes in there, and in fact, the building comes up against my property line, and that'll hurt my property value and probably the neighbors as well. And one thing I might mention, across the street in the pink area there, where Smiths, Food King, and all those properties are there, there are seven spaces available for rent over there. And if you look up and down Decatur Boulevard, from Lake Mead to Smoke Ranch Road, there are at least eight places, eight buildings that are available there also for rent. So in the event that this turns to C1, it still doesn't mean anybody's going to build in this area. And, because I know that's part of the, I think Councilman Barlow is concerned about building something in this property, and we would still like to see this stay residential.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming and commenting.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item or these items?
Yes.
Please state your name.
My name is Anthony Hodges. Planting and staff have both agreed on the item for approval. When those two agree on something, then maybe the council probably had to make a pretty good decision on, I mean, they had the last word, but it sounded like staff and planning kind of put a little hurting on them, you know, put a little squeeze play. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. And I really want to thank the residents, as well as the applicant before us, representing his client, as the neighborhood meetings took place and a lot of conversations. And I visited this corner several times prior to today, just to have an opportunity to sit back and actually assess and determine how in fact this will basically best serve the community overall. Looking at these corners, Mayor, the resident that spoke prior was accurate in regards to the commercial that's on the south side, and then of course, the corner of the commercial that sits right at the northwest corner, the automotive repair. And this is one of those pivotal decisions as far as, at what point do we stop the bleeding for residents intersecting with commercial and potential commercial development moving forward from a land use from a planning standpoint? And I understand your position as a planner, as far as looking at it, but also, you have to understand it from the council position, who plans communities every day as well, from at the ground level, making sure that the residents in the area share in the expansion and some of the growth and some of the nuances that occur, such as this application being forced here today. You have residents to the north, you have residents to the west. This has been an undeveloped parcel for quite some time. And being that you have no plan coming forward at this particular time, it makes it very difficult for me to follow staff's recommendation or planning commission's recommendation, because you have no plan. And so for me, I then have to pause and ask the question, are you looking to rezone this residential parcel to put up a sign to basically put it for sale? Right? And so for that, I have to take all of that into consideration and make the suggestion that we have a few options here that I am going to propose. Number one, so that we're very clear, I cannot support C1 at this parcel today. Number one being that the residents don't support it. I evaluated it. I don't support it, and I heavily don't support it because you have no plan. You want to rezone with no plan, and that is a big question mark for all council members, specifically inside of neighborhoods that have been existing for quite some time, to ask for a parcel to be rezoned with no plan. So that leaves a big question mark for everyone. And for the residents that are immediately adjacent to the parcel, I believe, because they've shared with me before, they would rather have nothing and continue to clean it versus rezoning it, and really having no say in regards to what type of C1 they will be up against in the future because of the sale, and the potential sale. So for that, I can't support a C1. However, what I can support, moving forward, and of course, with the neighbors' input, as well as your input, is something closer to an office or possibly civic. I'm not sure how that will work out. I would have to speak to my planning director in regards to that, but as of C1, that is not plausible today. So as options, what we can do is, we can either move forward with the recommendation of denial of your request, because that will be my recommendation today, or we can table the item and work with the neighbors and work with planning to see if, in fact, there's another plausible zoning, a step down of zoning from C1, or time given to yourself to come back with a more plausible development plan as far as something that the community can live with moving forward. But as of right now, that's where I'm at, and I'll give you an opportunity to speak on my thoughts at this point, should you choose.
Thank you. Certainly, we would prefer a C1 zoning, however, as the councilman pointed out, that is not going to occur. We would accept, in that case, a reduction to O office zoning, if the council can do so today. If not, I guess the second choice then would be to table it and work with the neighbors on an O zoning.
Okay.
But if it can be reduced today, we would certainly prefer that.
Okay, so I'm not sure, I would have to ask my director of planning in that regards as far as his input in relation to having the ability to go from C1 to a softer approach to an office possibly, plausibly.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, through you to respond to the councilman's question. The O general plan designation and the O zoning district would be the next less intense commercial category that would be appropriate for the site. The code does allow you to amend an application to a lesser designation, rather than having to file a new application. So if that's what council wanted to do today, what you would do is recommend approval of item number 81, noting that you're changing the zoning from R Rural Density Residential to O Office. And likewise, with item number 82, you would amend that from RE Residential Estates to O Office as well.
Right. Okay, and so that's where I'm going with this, because I understand also your argument in regards to Lake Mead. I travel it every day, and mind you, that is my neighborhood as well. You may not know that. That is my neighborhood. And so I travel it each and every day. I know the impact of the traffic. I know that the chances of a residential home going on that particular site is slim and none, right? And so what I'm trying to do is create a delicate balance here to where the neighbors will have some sense of protection from an office standpoint, being that offices traditionally are operated within eight-to-five type business hours, right? Versus a 24-hour concept of anything coming in under C1 would have that option. So if in fact that's something that you can live with, and I'll ask also for, if there's any neighbors that would oppose to that, please come forward and share your thoughts on that as well. But that's actually where I'm leaning toward, being that I know that the chances of residential is slim to none.
We would certainly accept a reduction to O in that case.
Okay. And I see the gentleman coming, Mr., was it Williams?
Dome.
Dome, Mr. Dome.
I'm William Dome.
Yes, sir.
And I live next door to the property. Okay. Also, I forgot to mention before, we put in a petition of 250 names from residents in Curtis Park area, which is right adjacent to this, which Councilman Barlow is aware of, that asked that it remain residential. I have talked to them. If it can't remain residential, we would rather have it as office or professional or something to that extent.
Absolutely.
Which would be a better buffer and less increase to us. So I thank you.
I thank you. And in addition to that, when you or future owner of the property come forward, we'll still have an opportunity to work with the neighbors in regards to the buffer and the landscaping, to make sure that the crust of that property to the north as well as to the west is protected specifically from those adjacent property owners moving forward. So, Mayor and Council, I'm ready for a motion if there's no further comment.
It's appropriate, please go ahead.
Okay, so on item 81, I would ask that we move to change the zoning from R1 to, is it PR Flynn?
On item number 81, it would be to O Office.
O Office?
Yes.
Okay, so my motion would be to change the zoning from R to O Office at this specific site. specific site, item number 81.
Okay, there's a motion on agenda item 81 to reword and make it O office. Please vote on the motion, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Barlow.
And on item number 82, I would ask that we move to change the zoning from R to O as well on the zoning matter before us. And want to thank you also for your due diligence and working with the residents, and thanking the residents for communicating with my office as well. That'd be my motion at this time.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Agenda item 83 has been abayed till the 3rd of September. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. I show a debate to, no? I may be marked and something wrong then. 84. Okay, sorry. Agenda item 83, VAR 53482, public hearing, applicant owner BMLJHL 2011 Trust for the possible action and appeal from the denial by the planning commission on a request for variance to allow an accessory structure, Class 2, to be located two feet from the rear property line where 10 feet is minimum required, and to allow two feet from the principal dwelling where six feet is the minimum required on .52 acres at 2010 Home View. This is R-PD2 residential plan development, two units per acre. This is in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Please note that this item should reflect, this is an appeal from the approval by planning commission. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission with a 5-1 vote recommends approval, subject to condition. It's a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? Because I'm going to ask Mr. Fag to respond if there is no one. Yes, please. You might turn on your mic.
It was my understanding that the applicant wanted to hold this until September, and it was my understanding from information given to me that it was going to be held. I did not realize it had not formally come in. So I believe that, I told people who were involved, it would be held till September. So I'm...
That's what I have, an abeyance till September 3rd was my understanding.
Yeah, that's what I have too. We were told that.
So you're going to move for that then?
Yes, I'll move that this be held in abeyance until a September meeting. Is September 3rd all right? Until September 3rd.
Yeah, that's what I had.
Somehow we got a little mix up there.
And it never got through. Okay. So there is a motion to abay this till September 3rd. If you'll all vote on it when you are able to do so. Now, please vote. While this is being posted, I'm going to ask Mr. Fag, who's been involved in this since you are probably not going to be here at the September meeting. Could you make your comments on the denial, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. This was a request for a variance for what is essentially a play structure located in the rear yard of a residential property. Staff had recommended denial of this because it encroaches into a required setback. However, the planning commission had recommended approval of that request, and consequently, the appellant filed an appeal after the planning commission decision. In conversations with the councilwoman and others, there might be a solution to this, and hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to work that out so that the appeal won't be necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fag. And would you introduce yourself just by name only, if you would, or who you represent, and make your comments, please?
My name is Roy Zalman. I represent the landlord at 7518 Yonikort, which is the adjacent property to the one discussed.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll be happy to present.
So I gather you're going to try, you're going to be working with councilwoman to hopefully resolve the issue?
Yes, I would like to have a conversation to find a mutual solution.
And with the individual who has the playhouse. I did talk with him, and he would be glad to meet and see if we can work something out.
I'm happy to.
The area you suggested may have a septic tank, however, not, may not be able to be moved there, but we can. I did tell him that they were willing to pay for the expense of moving it. So, and I thought that we would work on a win-win situation then.
Okay.
And if I may, what I understood, they would share the costs, not absorb them all, but they would share in the cost.
Yes.
In the cost of the landscaping, but you did agree to fully cover the cost of moving it. That's what you told me that day.
I offered to send employees that would help with that, yes.
Yeah. You said that you could pay the cost of moving the playhouse, and then you said you would share the cost of adding additional trees.
Okay, so with landscaping, we would share the cost with them.
Yes.
I think it's the right thing to do, to share equally. Regarding labor, we did offer to have, you know, labor work and help in that, so...
Right. I think it would only involve labor in moving it. But I do want to make it clear, because that's what I also told the person who has the playhouse, that you had offered to pay for the moving of it and to share the cost of putting in additional trees.
What we offered is to share, to share the cost with them, because we didn't feel that we should pay for 100% of the cost, where they also are responsible for the situation. So we wanted to share equally the cost. For any other solution, they have to speak with the owners of the company if they want to, you know, pay it additional.
Okay, but I want to pin this down now.
Yes.
Because when you met with me and a member of my staff, at that time, you said that your company would have the resources to move the playhouse, and you would do that at your cost. You told us that. And then you said you'd help with the trees.
Yes.
And we didn't know how much you would help, but we did know you said the first about the playhouse. Now, if that's not true, you have to tell me, because that's what I'm telling the person who has the playhouse.
Well, what I said initially is that we would share the cost, and what I thought is that we would share equally. So definitely, I can tell you, we'll pay for half of the landscaping. I need to, if you're asking me right now if you'll pay 100% of the landscaping, I would need to check and...
No, I'm not saying 100% for the landscaping. It was the moving of the playhouse where it is now. It has no underpinnings evidently. And that was what you said that your group could do. You would move it.
Yes.
At your cost.
We would, yes.
At your cost.
Yeah.
Okay. And the landscaping that might be additional would be shared?
Yes.
Okay, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. I want to make sure, because I don't want to handle any incorrect information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So then we will obey it until that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And one thing other, let's make sure that you contact my office, and we have an arrangement to meet with the person who has the playground equipment. Okay, thank you.
As I understand it, 84 has been withdrawn. And, okay, 85 and 86. 85, GPA 54247, a request for a general plan amendment from PCD, planned community development, to PF, public facilities. And on 86, ZON 524249, a request for rezoning from C2 general commercial to C-V, which is civic. Applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas on 4.51 acres at 9043 Ackerman Avenue. Planning commission and staff recommend approval on both items. These items are in Ward 6 with Councilman Ross. Public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant present? You are the applicant, you are the, you're going to be the applicant. Okay, thank you.
On behalf of the city of Las Vegas, Flynn Fag. This is a parcel that is currently zoned C2. However, it has been used as a temporary fire station, and I believe it will have metro facilities on it at some point. It really holds no value as a commercial parcel due to its location next to the freeway and residential neighborhoods. And so this is a corrective action to rezone it to civic, which is the intended use of the property. So with that, we would seek your support on these items.
What's the little diamond down on the other side of Grand T?.
That is also a remnant parcel that's left over from US 95 and the overpass.
And what are the plans for that beautiful little piece of property?
Right of way is about all it could be used for.
Okay.
If I may, Mayor, that little diamond-shaped piece there is actually where an access gate is to the wash. There's a channel on the backside there, parallel to US 95, that gives the water district an entrance into that area to keep it cleaned out. And I think, Mr. Fag, I think our new tenant is actually going to be the Nevada State Highway Patrol, is what I'm hoping. So they've shown interest in sticking one of their stations right there in that location. So I'd like to have them in the neighborhood. With that, Mayor, I would like to make a motion.
Okay. Could you, let me just, it is public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to these 85 and 86? So if you will do so, state your name.
Faster, Tony, faster. Faster, come on.
I like you too. Mr. Fag, sir, I come down to say I love you and I'm going to miss you. And that's what I'm, only two items, I just, since it's, it's contained to the city. You know what I'm saying? When I come down to say goodbye to you anyways. Have a good day. Thank you.
We'll call that 85. Okay. All right, I'm going to close public hearing. And Councilman Ross?
I will move to follow planning commission's staff's recommendation for approval of 85.
Thank you. There's a motion on 85. Please cast your votes and post. Motion passes, and let's go on to 86, please.
Move for approval of 86 as well, Mayor.
There's a motion to approve on 86. Would you please vote and please post? And that motion passes as well. Thank you very much. Mr. Gerbick, or the trailed item, are we there?
I'm looking for Mr. Brown, but we are ready.
Okay, we're going to be moving to a trailed item number 58. Sorry, you came up with all your supplies and packages. Sorry. Okay, for the record, this is agenda item 59 that we trailed till after lunch. And this is an abeyance item, discussion for possible action regarding a review of suitability and consider a permanent tavern license, or take other appropriate action for the Crazy Horse 2 Gentlemen's Club LLC, DBA Crazy Horse 2 Gentlemen's Club at 2476 Industrial Road. This is in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Ms. Duddleston, good afternoon.
Thank you. For the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. Your Honor, the request for a permanent license by this applicant has been officially withdrawn. So they are withdrawing their application. So that temporary license will expire on August 23rd of 2014.
Okay.
So we, with the attorney's permission, I don't believe there's any action for you to take since it...
Has been withdrawn.
Since it's the request of the applicant that they have withdrawn their request for a liquor license at this time.
So you don't have to. It's just done. It's a done thing?
For the record, Mr. Brown is here representing the applicants. The applicants, Mr. Victor Gollum and his daughter Jaclyn Barnes are both here, and I believe that we're all in agreement with that.
And so you would confirm what Ms. Duddleston has just reported, please, for the record?
Jay Brown, 20 South 4th Street for the record.
Thank you.
She speaks for the licensees, and that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, what is the timeline on that, Ms. Duddleston? August 23rd?
Yes, the current temporary expires at midnight at August 23rd.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes?
Are there any comments on this matter?
No.
I'm sorry?
Thank you. None? Nope. Do you want to make one? Do you have something?
Well, I mean, I just had questions in regards to the item.
Well, it's withdrawn, so there's no comment. I appreciate it, though. All right, so now, whoever's carrying the load, please come on back. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Gerbick, Ms. Duddleston and team. Okay, here we are at 87, 88, 89. GPA 54270, a request for a general plan amendment from ML Medium Low Density Residential to SC Service Commercial. 88 is ZON 54271, a request for zoning from RE Residence Estates to C1 Limited Commercial. 89, SDR 54272, a request for a site development plan review for two proposed general retail buildings totaling 16,305 square feet and a 2,203 feet square foot restaurant. The applicant, Daniel Tuizur, owner and Aquino family on 2.5 acres at the northwest corner of Smoke Ranch Road, Michael Way. Planning commission and staff recommend denial on all items. These items are in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. Our public hearings, which I declare open, is the applicant or representative present. Please state your names.
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Gene Kramitbauer with VTN Nevada, 2727 South Rainbow Boulevard. And with me is Sue Marshall. She's also with VTN Nevada at 2727 South Rainbow. And we are here on both, on behalf of the applicant. And Sue will give a presentation on this piece of property and let you know where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to address the GPA findings. Staff has recommended denial, stating that the proposed service commercial designation is too intense and intrusive for the surrounding neighborhood. I have an exhibit before me that shows the existing C1 zoning along Smoke Ranch Road. And I'd like to highlight for you some of the existing C1 zoning that's located within existing residential neighborhoods. This is Smoke Ranch Road right here. This is Decatur Avenue, and as you can see, three corners have C1 zoning, and they're surrounded by Clark County RE zoning. Our site is located right here at Smoke Ranch and Michael Way. If you move westerly here at Jones, again, you see C1 zoning on three corners, surrounded by both R1 and RPD zoning, both here and located right here. If you move further west here at Maverick, again, you see a C1 district surrounded by an R1 zoning. We now have Smoke Ranch here. Moving further west, right here is James Bilbury Street, and again, you see a C1 district adjacent to an RCL. Here is Avery Drive, and again, you see a C1 district, again, adjacent to an existing RCL neighborhood. Moving again further west to Rainbow, you see there are C1 zoning on all four corners. This corner right here is immediately adjacent to a residential neighborhood, again, zoned RCL. As we move further west, over here to Buffalo, again, you see a C1 zoning located within an existing residential neighborhood zoned RCL. The staff report further states that the subject site is located within the middle of a residential neighborhood and not along a retail corridor. As I've shown you on this exhibit, there is a lot of C1 zoning located within existing residential neighborhoods. If you look at the exhibit, you can also see that Smoke Ranch does have existing C1, C2, and CPD zoning along both the north and south side of Smoke Ranch Road. So it is a commercial corridor. And based upon these facts that I've outlined, I believe that you can make the findings a fact to support and approve both the GPA and the zone change. I'd now like to draw your attention to our site plan. As you'd stated, we are requesting approval for two retail buildings. Retail building A is 10,322 square feet. Retail B is 7,260 square feet, for a total of 17,582 square feet. As stated in your staff report, the site plan meets all of the city of Las Vegas standards for both lot coverage, setbacks, parking, building placement, and residential adjacency. I'd like to point out that retail A is located 162 feet from the nearest residential home, where your code requires 66 feet. Retail B is located 74 feet from the nearest residential home, and again, your code requires 66 feet. I'd like to draw your attention to our landscaping plan. Again, your staff has stated that we meet or exceed the standards for the landscaping buffers along Michael Way, Smoke Ranch, and adjacent to the existing residential... buffers along Michael Way, Smoke Ranch, and adjacent to the existing residences, along with our perimeter trees and our parking lot trees. I'd like to show you the design of our buildings.
Did I read that one of these is a restaurant? Or was that another? Yeah, 2,200.
What happened, and I was going to address this, but I'll go ahead and address it now. We had neighborhood meetings, and we actually had two neighborhood meetings with the surrounding neighbors. The first meeting was held on June 9th. And as a result of their concerns that they raised at the neighborhood meeting, we revised the site plan, and we held a second neighborhood meeting on August 12th. And in that meeting, we have shown that we have eliminated the drive-through restaurant. And what we did was add additional parking and additional parking lot trees. And so this was in a response to the neighborhood concerns.
So there are no restaurants in these two buildings, then?
That is, no drive-through restaurant.
No drive-through, but restaurants?
Well, what I wanted to do also was indicate that through meeting with the neighbors, we agreed to prohibit specific uses on the land. I've submitted a letter to Councilman Barlow, and I have copies for the entire council here, if I could give it to a staff member.
No, but I mean, it's fine if he has them. Do you want them given to the staff?
And in this letter-
Okay.
And in this letter, we've agreed to prohibit specific uses that the neighborhood found to be not desirable. And I'd like to read those into the record if I might. We would agree to prohibit drive-through restaurants, convenience stores, market, smoke shops, dollar stores, a video game store, a tattoo shop, any type of mobile vendors, taverns, laundromats, a gun shop, and a liquor store. And like I said, we've worked with the neighbors, we've met with them twice, and these were the uses that they found to be unacceptable. And we have agreed to prohibit all of those uses, and would request that you add a condition of approval, which states that those uses would be prohibited. In conclusion, we feel that there are the necessary findings can be made to approve the general plan amendment, the rezoning, and the site development plan. We request your approval, and we accept all the conditions. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Very thorough. Mr. Fag, you're on stage.
Madam Mayor, in response to the recommendation from staff relative to this application, as is indicated in our staff report, we do have concerns about this commercial development, in that there isn't any commercial development surrounding this parcel. And so consequently, our recommendation for denial is based on the fact that it's inappropriate for the surrounding neighborhood. I will give the applicant credit for their buildings. We think they're beautiful buildings, they're very well-designed, but it's just inappropriate for that particular site.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward, state your name. And since I see such a wonderful turnout, could we limit each one's, not duplicate what's being said? And three minutes, is that all right, for each of you?
That should be fine.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Timothy Lawson. I'm one of the residents of Smoke Ranch Villas, which occupies, a small kind of community which occupies the northeast corner, right across from the development on Smoke Ranch and Michael Way. We've submitted petitions to Councilman Barlow. We have over 70 residents who have signed in opposition to this development. We simply feel that there is no need for commercial space. We have so much of it within a mile of us. A half a mile away, on the corner of Smoke Ranch and Jones, is the Jones and Smoke Ranch Center. It has a convenience store, a gas station, it has 19 commercial units, nine of which are occupied. Right across the street on-
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
Our clerk didn't get your name again.
Timothy Lawson.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. That doesn't count in your-
Thank you. As I said, across from the Jones Smoke Ranch Center is an Arco on the northwest corner. It also has a convenience market. The catty corner on the southeast corner of Smoke Ranch and Jones is a strip mall, which houses a liquor store, which has a mini-market, and the tavern. And there are nine units there, seven of which are occupied. A mile southwest on the corner of Lake Mead and Jones is the Albertson's Center. Albertson's is closed, the space is available. There are 17 units, five of those units are occupied. Across the street from the Albertson's Center is the Shadow Hill Center on the northeast corner of Lake Mead and Jones. There are 26 units, 16 of which are occupied. A quarter of a mile away from the development, proposed development site, on the corner of Smoke Ranch and Decatur, is a gas station and another convenience store. A mile east at the North Las Vegas Airport is a strip mall. It is 100% unoccupied, it has never housed a tenant. A mile north on the corner of Cheyenne and Jones is the Vons Center. Vons is now closed. On the northeast corner, there are 12 units, eight of which are occupied. Within a mile radius of the development site, there are six pharmacies, five markets, three taverns or sports bars, 13 fast food restaurants, four casinos. For this reason, we don't feel that more commercial development is necessary. Beyond that, Michael Way at the site, proposed, Michael Way is a two-lane, 25 mile an hour street. The residents are very concerned about the reduction in public safety for the schoolchildren who walk to Reed Elementary. They cross just 100 yards north of the corner. In addition, we are concerned about generally the amount of safety that will be diminished regarding pedestrians, bicyclists, and just people in general who transport along that Well, we have other, more personal reasons. We're concerned about the possible increase in noise, the increase in crime, the devaluation of our property values, and possible criminal activity which could result from the development. So for those reasons, we are opposed. And we know that the owner has had a difficult time selling the property, he's had it for some time. He stated that he's been unable to get a construction company interested in developing it as a residential, as it is currently zoned. However, if you would go approximately a quarter of a mile to the intersection of Jones and Madre Mesa, you would find D.R. Horton, who is now completing a seven-residence, single-family homes. And it is on a parcel that is smaller than the parcel that is in question today. So for all of these reasons, the residents, whose names are listed on petitions, Councilman Barlow, are opposed to this rezoning effort, and we would ask that you follow the staff and planning commission's rulings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, very comprehensive. And please, anyone else that's gonna come up, please don't repeat everything that was so eloquently put forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Nash Torres, and I'm a resident of Smoke Ranch Villas, which is adjacent to the property being proposed, zone change being proposed. And I stand here in front of you, is totally opposed to it. I would like to enter to the record these, this mall's short reading for all the council members to read at this time if possible. And I have a copy for each one of you, and I'll wait till you get a hold of them, take a reading, and if you have any questions, please ask me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we will get these passed out. Anyone has a question, well, please ask. And we'll ask while the council people are reading there, so you might as well have a seat and see if anyone else would like to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate all of you responding. Thank you. And if anyone has questions for Mr. Torres after reading this over, we'll bring him back up. Please, your name, please.
I'm Ron House, H.A.U.S. I live at 5508 Reeter Avenue, which is about three blocks away from this. I'm extremely concerned about this shopping center and am adamantly opposed to it. Across the street from my house, we've got the drug dealers out, they're gone. The Boom Boom people are gone. The police respond in two hours to our problems, if they respond at all. The person that tickets the cars is very good, is excellent, because I got a $100 ticket for a for-sale sign on my car in front of the house. However, my vehicle got all full of graffiti there. We have shopping carts, people who come through and dig through our garbages all the time. The shopping center will only bring people who will be on the corner begging for more money, have garbage blowing around, and the whole works. The person who owns and bought this property knew that the property was zoned residential when they bought it, and so it should be now. We don't need this shopping center. We have plenty of vacant shopping center buildings all the way through. It has been exposed prior to me. I want to assure you that I have a retail business at Charleston and Eastern, which is basically a ghetto area, but I was offered a spot in the shopping center at Lake Mead and Decatur for 50 cents a square foot, which is pretty cheap. I don't know how this place will attract residences as far as a commercial business goes, when there's all kinds of vacancies all the way around.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Incidentally, I visit with my neighbors. This is kind of an inopportune time for them to come, because it's 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Most people who are not retired are working, and so they can't join us. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it. Anyone else?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name is Al Wages. I live at 50, 2420 Bay Meadows, and my property backs right up to this property in question. And the property in question would make a good place for new residents, and make an excellent area for a playground. But it's kinda difficult to see a commercial business there. And the reason I see it would be good for a playground is that there are literally hundreds of kids walk past this every day, going to and from school. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming down, we appreciate it. Anyone else? I'm gonna close the public hearing then, and Councilman Barlow, do you want to go, please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so very much. And I want to thank the applicant for doing their due diligence in regards to meeting with the residents and my staff, and want to really thank my chief deputy, Joe Mitchell, for working this item for me. And as I once again look at the development before us, and as the young lady pointed out, as far as the commercial corners, she was absolutely correct in regards to identifying all of the commercial corners throughout this area. And just to disclose also, this, this item, just as the last item, Mayor and Council, is in the middle of my neighborhood. And so I'm very familiar with all of the corners in the area, as well as the vacancies that the residents have pointed out as well, that we're working on. And everyone knows, for the most part, that I am very pro-development, pro-economic development, pro-business. And with that, understanding the landscape of what we're dealing with, specifically on zoning matters. This one in particular is really a no-brainer, because of all of what has been said, and a number of things that have yet to be said in regards to this particular corner at Smoke Ranch and Michael. Now, as you pointed out previously, the major corners, as far as Decatur and Smoke Ranch, Jones and Smoke Ranch, Cheyenne and Jones, Lake Mead and Decatur, Rainbow, those are all major corners, of course, with residents to the exterior of those parcels. This particular infield is unique within itself, because there's no commercial on either four corners of this particular parcel. They're all residential. And in addition to that, the D.R. Horton, as the gentleman mentioned, at Madre Mesa and Jones, they're building residential housing, a new product. Drive past it today, the homes, the starter homes look great. And it's on a smaller footprint than the footprint that you have currently in the middle of residents, to the north, south, east, and west of you. And so for that, I will be following staff and planning commission's recommendation for denial, because this is not a commercial corner. This is a residential corner. And not to say that things won't change in the future, however, today, everything around this specific area, which is mid-block between Decatur and Jones, on Michael, everything is residential. However, on those major cross streets that you pointed out, the crust of those corners are commercial, but everything layered behind is residential. Which is how this entire city and state, for the most part, is laid out from a planning standpoint. Commercial up front, and then the step-down zoning basically follows to the exterior. So in addition to that, you know, it's not often, Mayor and Council, that we get residents basically binding together to basically say the same thing. And page after page after page after page after page, these are residents that either are here in the audience, or those that have basically said, I can't make it due to work, because this is a working-class community, have basically said, we oppose to, we are opposed to commercial being at this location. And so I being one who support not only my own personal neighborhood, but support neighbors in general in regards to what they would like to see in their community, I, as a council person, I always support the residents on that end, because at the end of the day, when you all build your nice development, which is a very nice development, you all go home. But this is what the neighbors have to come home to each and every night, to the nuances that occur at your development. Now, I will say this, and I'm not saying this to be sarcastic or coy in any way, I would like to speak to you in regards to another site that I do have in mind that I think will fit what you're looking to do at another location. I'd be happy to work with you on that, because once again, I am pro-development. And if you're going to be, looking to be in the neighborhood, I most definitely have a suggestion for you, that we could speak offline, and basically hope to get you set up at a different location to bring your product mix into this neighborhood. Because although there's a lot of vacancies, we do need retail, and there is a need for additional retail and a product mix in this neighborhood. So unfortunately, I am not supporting item number 87, 88, or 89. And so my motion for 87 today would be to follow staff's and planning recommendation for denial. That's my motion, Mayor.
As we all vote, please vote, there's been a motion on 87. Are you, Ms. Marshall?
Yes.
Outstanding report.
Thank you.
I mean, as thorough as I have seen in three years done here, just beautifully done in the fact that, you know, you tried your best to get on, but it certainly makes sense. I mean, you know, we all do go home. And pardon? Who wants one? All right, there's a motion, please vote on 87, and please post.
I just have a question, Mayor, for Councilman Barlow.
Yes.
If you want.
Councilman Barlow, Councilman Ross has a question for you.
Would you prefer to just let him withdraw without prejudice, or just straight to no? I'm just throwing that at you.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with the recommendation, because they'll have an opportunity, should they choose to come back a year and a day from now, should they choose, but with the withdrawal, they'll be able to come back sooner. And so I'll rather see it longer than earlier. So I'll maintain my motion. That's it, Mayor, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. We can share it. Councilman Coffin, I don't think you voted.
Well, I pulled it back.
Oh. Oh. Okay, would you post that one, please, and move on to Agenda Item 88?
And on 88, I'll move to follow Staff and Planning Commission recommendation for denial of this application.
Right. There's a motion on number 88. Please vote, and please post.
And on, I'm sorry.
And that motion carries on Agenda Item 89.
And on Agenda Item 89, I'll move to follow Staff and Planning recommendation for denial.
There's a motion, 89. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. But I do say, you made a great presentation here, and we're somewhere else. We got a lot of vacancy in that area, too. But hopefully, you'll meet with Councilman Barlow.
Thank you. Let's get the contact information.
The new housing project that Horton has done over there, it's a lot of houses. They're 100% sold off. You can't buy houses if you try right now. They're all sold.
Oh, that's good.
100%.
Good.
Councilman Barlow, we'll meet with Joe Mitchell and schedule a meeting.
Thank you all for coming down. We appreciate it. Your voices are heard. Thank you. Have a good weekend. Okay, on to Agenda Item 90. 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, GPA 5-4. 3-2-1, a request for a general plan amendment from D.R. Desert Rural Density Residential to S.E. Service Commercial, 91. ZON 5-4-3-2-2, a request for rezoning from R.U. Residence Estates to C1 Limited Commercial. 92, VAR 5-4-3-2-3, a request for variance to allow no additional off-site improvements where complete street standards require provision of a five-foot wide, a five-foot sidewalk, five-foot amenity zone and other amenities. 93, VAR 5-4-3-2-4, a request for variance to allow parking on an unpaved surface where such is not allowed, to allow outdoor storage within building setbacks where not allowed, and to allow an existing six-foot chain-lit fence and a 6.5-foot block wall where an eight-foot wall or solid structure is required for screening. And finally, on 94, SDR 5-4-3-2-5, a request for site development plan review for an existing food processing facility and restaurant with waivers of perimeter landscape standards to allow zero-foot buffers along the north, south, and east property lines where eight feet's required, and a zero-foot buffer along the west property line where 15 feet's required. Applicant owner John C. Fromer and Debbie A. Fromer on 1.83 acres at 3730 Tom Boulevard. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval on all items. These items are in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow are public hearing items, which I declare open as the applicant or representative present.
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Bob Groenhauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here representing John Mole's Meats, also known as the Roadkill Grill, on these handful of items that's before you today. As I get into the presentation, I've personally represented thousands of land use items over the years. You have a variety of different items of handling, but this item here that are, these items that I have before you tonight are very unique within its nature. If you're a longtime Nevadan, if you're a native Nevadan, you've heard of John Mole's Meats. They've been in existence since 1943. The story goes probably before zoning codes were in existence. In Clark County, about, somewhere around 1963, the Board of County Commissioners approved what is known as a use variance to allow the meat processing on this property. In 1964, it was annexed into the city of Las Vegas, and the use variances for its existing business has been going on for all these years. What's also unique about this is, this has been in the family business forever. Chuck Fromer, who's here, who's now currently running the operation, just recently, within the last year-plus, opened up the restaurant portion on the property here. And the reason is, is because if you still haven't heard of the Roadkill Grill from being here in Nevada for all these years, you probably heard it through the restaurant food network on the reality show that's known as Diners, Drive-Ins, and Dives. And ever since that has been published in, on TV, we've had, or Mr. Fromer has had, visitors across and around from the world that has come to this place to try it out. And I don't know if any of you have personally ever tried it. It's excellent food. It's an outdoor barbecue setting. As a matter of fact, we've had a couple neighborhood meetings, and those have been also unique meetings, where we've only, where we've also had not just elected officials from the city of Las Vegas, but we also had people, elected officials from Clark County, coming in support of this business in this area. I've worked with NARA for many years. They have also been in support of the application that's before you. This is one of these, as I started out my conversation, one of these just unique circumstances, where you have a business that's in the middle of the neighborhood, and this is good old Las Vegas here. And you have a family that's been running these businesses forever. You have residential in the area. And I believe some NARA residents may be here, or some residents to speak and support. I mentioned, we had two neighborhood meetings. From our original application, I need to explain a couple of things here. Our initial application was to allow for commercial general, or general commercial for a land use designation, because by doing so and coming in with C2 zoning, that would allow the use variance to go away to have the meat processing facility itself along with the restaurant. However, some of the neighbors had a concern. They said, "We love Chuck, but we're always worried, what happens if Chuck goes away? If Chuck passes away, who's going to take it over?" Well, he has a son that is in line to take over the business. But in those discussions, we talked about, what can we do to make the neighbors feel a little bit more at ease with respect to what we're trying to do here? So, what we did is, we compromised. We, at the Planning Commission, reduced the land plan to service commercial, reduced the zoning from C2 to C1. By that, though, we still have the use variance in place for the meat processing facility, but it made the neighbors in the area a little bit more comfortable, knowing that it's C1 instead of C2. That was approved at the Planning Commission itself. We also added a couple of conditions on the site development plan review that I could hand back in for Flynn, as he's aware that we had these conditions at the last meeting. At least, we said, "This is what we want to make sure, to ensure that the neighbors are fully informed." One of the conditions, and it's also already in your site development plan review, is that the hours of operation for the restaurant shall be Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. We said that any significant changes to the site plan shall require a new public hearing wherein notice will be provided to the neighbors pursuant to Title 19 notice requirements. And although I know this is not legally enforceable, I believe, through your city attorney has said, but we wanted to make sure, we were stating that no other uses are allowed on the property except the current uses being proposed, because the concern is, is you can do other things in C1, but the fact that the matter is, nothing else is going to survive here, except what's in existence there today. So, this is the best way to keep the restaurant, keep the neighbors happy in the area, and keep this business thriving the way it should be since 1943. That being said, I can answer any other questions you may have, or address any other questions or comments that come up from the neighbors in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Groenhauer. I think I'd like to hear from Mr. Pag first, and then we'll have our public hearing.
Madam Mayor, as Mr. Groenhauer has indicated, this one is a little unique for us. While we do have a request here to rezone property to a commercial designation in the middle of a residential neighborhood, as has been pointed out, this business has been here for a long time. And so, much like Bob Taylor's Ranch House, another example, which was on residential property, but operating as a commercial business, the applications that you have before you today help to legalize this business and allow it to continue, which I think is the intent for all of us here. As Mr. Groenhauer has already indicated, they originally came in with C2 zoning on the property. That has since been downgraded to C1. I think everyone is more comfortable with the C1 zoning here on this site. And again, the conditions that he stated have been added to the SDR application, which is item number 94. And so, we don't need to specifically add those conditions. Those are already in place in the standard conditions of approval. So, with that...
And were all the residences around it after 43? I'm sure there were, or 60, 1963.
I wasn't around, so I have no idea.
Do records show that it was out there in the Wild Woolly West of the desert?
Yes, it was.
Right, all by itself, like RC Hog Farm, right?
Exactly.
Okay. It is a public hearing. I would declare it open. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak, please do so. And be sure to state your name, please. It would help. In fact, it's mandatory.
Thank you. Mayor Goodman, councilmembers, Lexi Anderson, 3709 Waterhole Street, Wild Woolly West, right. I'm the NARA historian. Just want to make a comment that we really appreciate the stellar job that the Planning Commission did with this. They really worked hard on it. Just a couple of comments from the Planning Commission. They commented, "The Roadkill Grill has become an icon in the area. That was basically a no-brainer. Let's not overthink this." And Commissioner Moody was the only one that had a strong opposition to it, and it was a reference that the lines were too long. So, what are you going to do? You know, sometimes things in life are just worth waiting for. So, thank you very much.
Nice comment. Next, please. Thank you. And make sure you say your name, please.
Yeah, Lamar Bryley, 3404 Bond Court, Mayor and Councilman. Had the pleasure of working with two of the Councilmen already. We're thrilled that Chuck is in our neighborhood. We wouldn't change a thing. He's a great guy. He's an asset to the neighborhood, and I hope you don't mess him up, and just allow, he's paying enough attorney fees already. You don't need to make him pay anymore for. But anyway, we'd like to support him. That's what we're here for.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Well, I may not have been here since 1943, but I've been here 45 years.
Good for you. And your name, sir?
Mike Malone. I live at 3660 Tom Boulevard. By the way, Tom Boulevard, I live three doors away from Mole's Meats. And if anybody would have an objection, it would be me. I know Chuck Fromer. I've known him for all these years, the 30 years that I've lived in that same house. And I can guarantee you, if there was an objection to Mole's Meats or the Roadkill Grill, which now exists, we'd hear about it. We got together, we had, I think, three different meetings, and one of them being right at the Roadkill Grill, as a matter of fact, and got our differences settled, which were very, very few. And in the 30 years that I've lived there, Chuck has done, bent backwards to any wishes that the neighbors might have had. And that's why we have no problem today. Therefore, the attorney has given you an excellent outline of what Chuck needs to do, what we desire he do, and we recommend it highly, and hope that you will approve this. Thank you.
He would have done a little better if he brought a sample to each one. Or do you have it?
Your Honor, no. I just, I wanted to say that former Senator Malone, Malone, you, Mike, should have brought a sample, if you like it so much. Deer jerky, deer salami, anything that might be coming out of the grinder over there, and had been cured sufficiently. We'd, you know, it'd be nice to see how it looks, and maybe even taste it. It's good to see you again, Senator. It's been a long time. You look like you just retired yesterday.
Well, I feel like I retired yesterday.
My God.
And now I'm back on the other side of the cliff.
Uh-huh. Well, you don't look bad for 90. It's good to see you, Mike. Okay.
Now, please continue on with the public comment, so we don't have that again.
May I?
Yes, you're still on.
I didn't know where I pulled a runner's stay or what, whatever. Anyway, it sounds like the residents are getting together, and they want to agree to let the business, you know, continue. So, I'm on the resident side. Most of them in favor of the man keeping the business.
You better go eat out at the restaurant.
Whatever y'all do, I hope I'm on your side. Thanks.
Dave Galyon, 8860 West Sunset Road. I'm also in favor of John Mole's and Roadkill Grill. It was my first job 27 years ago. Chuck has always been a great part of the neighborhood, helped out his kids a lot when we were growing up, and hopefully, he gets it approved. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Just you. Go for it.
I just want to say that maybe we need to hold this item for a little more torture on Chuck, until he can bring down samples. Just kidding, Chuck. I'm just glad we finally got this resolved, since it's taken so much time for you. And I apologize, it's been this way for so long, but you finally made it, and you're here today. So, we're thrilled to death.
I'm going to close the public comment on this, then, and you're on. No, it's on with the little red thing. Right. Did you do 4-H, you know, when animals were sold for 4-H? Do you do that dressing?
You know, we used to. We don't anymore. I've done them for your husband a few times.
Yes. I was just thinking, because I remember going out to, I guess, what's now Floyd Lamb Park, and the 4-H club shows that were there. Took me months to eat what was frozen. I couldn't bring myself. All I did remember was this fear, and that soft little face.
Man, we have to be careful as far as what John has cut up for your husband.
Oh, my. Hey, I might have to recuse myself, but that is too good.
I would just like to say, I really appreciate everything you guys have done, and I definitely appreciate my neighbors.
I bet you do.
You know, thanks for having me.
Party tonight, maybe. We have to see what Councilman Barlow is going to do here.
Can you have beers down?
Ah-ha. He's going to have beers with, he wants to have some of your food with the beers. I can tell this is coming.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we discussed earlier today, I recently had this grandchild, and Sarah is up in Medford with my daughter and the baby. So, I had to cook at our house. And so, I stopped by last night on my way home at the Roadkill Cafe, and I picked up the ribs and the pulled pork and the half-chicken dinners for my son, my father and I. I just want to disclose that. I have talked to...
You better accuse yourself. I think you'd be by.
I have talked to the city attorney, and they say that because I paid for my dinner, and I owe no money to Chuck, I do not have a conflict, so I anticipate voting in this decision.
And in celebration, do we have a baby's name yet?
We do. We do.
Oh, we do.
It is Isla Grace Taylor.
Isla Grace Taylor.
Seven and a half pounds, 19 inches.
Congratulations. Yay to the grandpa. Okay, back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Well...
What can you say?
What can I say? I did receive, just so that you know, I did receive a text from my dad, and he knows my dad very well. He says, "Son, if you don't vote for this, come by my house."
You're right.
So, I know what that means. But my dad had five boys and one girl in the house, and as far as I can remember, maybe at the age of one or two, being walked through the meats out, that's when you had the slab of, was it deer and...
It was actually beef, but...
Beef, hanging?
He still comes in to see if there's deer hanging in the back.
Yeah. It used to be hanging from the picks. What was it? Beef?
Oh, that was beef, deer, everything, yeah.
Beef, deer. And it was a joy to actually walk through there as a little boy inside the freezer, and...
And get that slice of cheese and bologna and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm with the neighbors. I mean, this is like a staple in the community, whereas, and it's not often that you really have an opportunity to have one of those hometown heroes, right, that it's like, you can do nothing wrong. Zoning is off. No paved sidewalks, no lights. You're just doing everything wrong, Chuck. But guess what? Everyone's like, "It's okay. It's okay." But I do support the item, and I'm glad that the neighbors have worked with you during the neighborhood meetings. The only thing that, that I didn't care for was Tom Collins showing up to the neighborhood meeting, stirring things up.
He was a little tough on you, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was tough, because he threw me up under the bus a few times. And so, he had a few choice things to say about Councilman Ross, but I didn't share that either. But, you know, but people always say, "Well, Tom is Tom." I'm like, "But why do you guys let Tom get away with that?" But anyway, it was a great neighborhood meeting after all, after he left, and I think everything was worked out, because he was no longer in that meeting. And so, I'm going to move forward with the recommendation from Planning on item number 70, if in fact...
90.
It's mission.
90.
I said 90, right?
70, but it's all right.
I said 70. I apologize. 90. Follow Planning's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post.
And Mayor, as they posted, I just want to mention, too, Frank and Guy Martin's letters sent to probably all of us, and their support of you as well, Chuck.
Thank you, Councilman. 91.
And on 91, I want to thank the NARA Neighborhood Association for their due diligence and working with my staff and working with you and asking very pointed questions during that neighborhood meeting. Gronauer wasn't there. He sent the best attorney in their firm.
In the firm, yes, Jennifer Lazovich. I agree with you.
You know, because he couldn't stand the heat, so we really want to thank Jennifer for standing in his place, and I believe she was even pregnant at the time.
Yes, at the second neighborhood meeting. I was there in the first neighborhood meeting, though.
Wow, okay. And congratulate Jennifer again on her beautiful babies. And so with that, I'm going to move to follow Staff's, Planning, Planning's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions on Item Number 91.
There's a motion, please vote and please post. It didn't go through? There we go. Motion carries. We'll move on to Item 92.
On the variance, this is a, this is an easy one on the variance. I'm going to move to follow Planning's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
There's a motion, please vote and please post. That motion carries. 93, please.
And on 93, this is another no-brainer with the Planning, follow Planning's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
There's a motion, please vote, please post. And your last one of hopeful victory is Agenda Item 94.
Do we post?
We did. So now 94, if you would make that motion.
Okay, now, Item Number 94, the site development plan review. Flynn, you mentioned that we did need to reiterate what was already currently in the Title 19?
That's correct. Actually, the two conditions that Mr. Gronauer read into the record are already there in your backup materials. Those are the ones that will be recorded with the case, so you're good to go on this item.
Okay, then I'll move to follow Planning's recommendation, subject to all conditions, on Item Number 94 for approval.
Correct. There's a motion, please vote, please post.
That's the last one.
That's it.
Good job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Continue on.
Thank you.
We'll all be watching diners, what is it?
Drive-ins.
And dives.
Dives, yeah.
Lady Belle. And also, Councilman Beers. Lolo has been visited by that same show. That's probably why you bought our new restaurant.
It's a very fun show. It's run by Guy Fiero, who's a UNLV graduate, and actually was a former employee at John Moles as well back in the day.
Oh, is that right? Okay, now, I just want everybody to know, it's two minutes after 3:00. I think the Mountain View, Mountain Ridge team is on a 4:30. So I want all the council people, as you make comments, not to short anybody here, but to keep... Where'd Councilman Coffin go? He's the one I'm talking to.
I've already kicked him out.
That's exactly what I'm talking to. Okay.
Your Honor, if brevity is your goal, you don't need Councilman Coffin.
I just wanted him to hear it. Okay, here we go. Okay, now, we're on right now, are these yours? I'm looking for who... No, Councilman Barlow, day of days. 95, 96, 97, right. VAR 53923, a request for variance to allow two parking spaces where a minimum of nine spaces are required, and to allow a parking lot to have a non-paved surface. 96 is VAR 53924, a request for variance to allow no sidewalks, curb, or gutters, and half-street improvements where such is required for a 60-foot minor collector street. And Number 97, SDR 53925, a request for a site development plan review to convert an existing 2,450-square-foot residential use to commercial use with waivers. All landscape buffers required. Applicant owner, ESMI Properties LLC, on .85 acres. At 5252 Ricky Road, Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends denial on all items. These items are in Ward 5. Councilman Barlow, public hearing items which I declare open, and the applicant or representative present, please say your name and what you do.
Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman and City Council members. Arnold Stock, 2701 Alta Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89107. On behalf of the owners, we're here today to, I don't know how I quite followed that last item, that was making me so hungry, and I was really glad to see that done off the record, but thank you for doing that. This is a case where a small business general construction firm bought a going business that was a general construction firm for 18 years, and found out through business licensing that the site had some significant challenges in conforming to the codes. And so I came into this after this application was filed. The owners had met several times with Planning staff. I have also, they've met, we've met and talked with Councilman Barlow's staff, who's been very, very helpful to us in this. The existing business, if you will, also is in one of those rural transitional contexts, where I have here some photos of the site. Immediately east of the site, there's a Midas Muffler shop and a collision repair shop, and then it transitions to this particular building, which has been in business for 18 years, and then it goes to residential. And so we have several letters of support from adjoining neighbors. We are asking for the two variances, one for parking, the other one for offsites, which would have cost a lot of money, several hundreds of thousands of dollars, to bring it up into conformance. And so we're also asking for this, in the site development review, to convert the existing 2,400-square-foot business, which is there now, from residential use to a commercial use with waivers of the landscape buffer requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Fag, would you make the comments on denial, please?
Certainly. This is, again, another unique case. We seem to have a lot of these today. As the representative for the applicant has indicated, there was a former construction company located here on the property. One of the unique things about this is it was a residential house to begin with, however, the zoning was C-2, so it already has commercial zoning in place. The prior owner of the property had been operating under a home occupational license, and so the property had never been formally converted to a commercial use. Hence, when the new property owners bought the property, they thought that they were getting a commercial property, as most people would, only to find out that it hadn't been brought up to commercial standards. The applications that you have before you today will help to basically legalize that business. As has been indicated, there is a condition that defers the requirements for the sidewalk and the curb and gutter on there. And so we believe with the conditions that we have in place on this item, this will help the property owners to meet their goals and to continue their business here.
So, the conditions you've put on?
The if-approved conditions will be the ones that, to help them continue to function.
To which you've agreed, or your ownership has. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward on this item, please come forward, state your name.
Yeah, Lamar Bryley, 3404 Bond Court, 89130. I'm also, I live around the corner from these people. I'd like to point out again, this property has been sitting there previous to them buying it for 18 years. There was a business there. We don't object. In fact, we encourage, we're very pleased that they moved in and they took over another construction business. I certainly don't believe that they should have to put in sidewalks. That was voted down at the Planning Commission. Also, it was mentioned sewer, or it wasn't mentioned about a sewer, and they shouldn't have to put one in. Half of NARA is on septic tanks, so that should not be a requirement if they're trying to push that. We're satisfied with the way it sits right now. It's not, it's not an eyesore to the neighborhood. It is part of NARA, Northwest Area Residents Association. We're very pleased to have them there. So hopefully, we can get this passed, so they're allowed to continue their business.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward, state your name.
Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Council members, Lex Anderson, again, 3709 Water Hole Street. I'm the NARA historian. I reviewed the Planning Commission tape again this morning. Just a couple of comments from the Planning Commission. They said, "Common sense needs to prevail. This is a no-brainer. Leave it alone. Keep the rural appearance. Avoid the commercial appearance." And they said, they were in concurrence with everything that we said. We really appreciate your support with this. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? I'll close the public hearing then, and Councilman Barlow.
Thank you. And I want to thank the applicant for working with the neighbors in this, in this area. Very active neighbors, and we support that as a city. Specifically, when developments, developments come into neighborhoods, we highly encourage that you go out and you meet with the residents and get their fill and take. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad, sometimes it feels good, sometimes it feels not so good. But that's what this process is about, when we're talking about building communities and making sure that the fabric and the integrity of the communities in which we live are protected. And so you all have done that. And so, having done so, I would like to move for approval of Item Number 95, subject to all conditions.
There's a motion, Agenda Item 95 for approval. Please vote and please post. Motion passes on Agenda Item Number 96, please.
On Number 96, I would like to move for approval, subject to all conditions. However, speaking with the Public Works Director in regards to this particular variance as it relates to the sidewalk curbs and gutters, I would like Flynn, if you will, or someone representing Public Works, in regards to the request by Public Works Director and/or designate to discuss the flood event in the future, as far as should things start to turn in the neighborhood from a residential to more commercial in the future.
If I may, Bart Anderson, representing Public Works. Mayor, through you. The variance is asking for relief from putting in those offsite improvements that would address flood control type of issues if such a thing occurred. But there is a condition. If it is approved, a covenant running with land would be required, and that covenant says that if the city determines in the future that there is a problem related to flood or what have you, at that time, we could require that those improvements be put in place. So if there is a flood event that causes a problem in the opinion of the Public Works city engineer or director, we could require those improvements to be put in place.
Okay, and do we place that as a condition, or is that already in place?
It is already a condition, as recommended.
Okay. Then I will move for approval, subject to all conditions, to what the manager of Public Works has shared. Thank you.
There's a motion. Please vote on 96, and please post. Motion carries, and now on to Agenda Item 97.
Yes, Bart, your manager. The site development plan review on Item Number 97, I would like to move for approval, subject to all conditions. And Flynn, do you have anything that you need to add under the SDR? Okay, with that, Mayor, I hopefully have abided to your time limit and...
I'm watching, believing.
Moved these items forward as swiftly as possible.
You did very well.
Thank you.
There's a motion, please vote and please post. And thank you, Mr. Stock, for being brief as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 98 has been obeyed till September 17th. Agenda Item 99. SUP 53504, abeyance item. Public hearing. Applicant Cecil Walker, owner Philadelphia Trust, for possible action on a request for special use permit for a facility for transitional living for released offenders with waivers to a location not within 1,500 feet of an existing bus stop and distance separation of 505 feet from a city park, 690 feet from an individual care center where 1,500 feet is the minimum distance required, at 240 West Philadelphia Avenue, R4, high-density zone, and this is in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Planning and staff recommend denial. This is a public hearing, which is, I declare open as the applicant or representative present. Okay, is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Fag, would you comment on Planning and Staff, please?
Madam Mayor, our recommendation for denial is based on the waivers that are requested as part of this application. As has been noted in the header for this item, there are waivers required from the distance to public transportation from a public park and also from a daycare facility. I believe it's the intent of the applicant to reconsider the site, however, would like to keep the application in process. And so consequently, there might be an action to request this item be held in abeyance for a period of time for the applicant to continue working on it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coffin?
That's quite right. Thank you very much, Director of Planning. It is true, Your Honor, that, in fact, I'm sorry, Ms. Walker's not here today. I'm sympathy with her, because she is trying to develop a residence for people who are attempting to become sober, and it's not an easy thing to find neighborhoods where you can do that. At the same time, there are federal rules that govern about, you know, how a local government treats these, so they have to have a place somewhere sometime. But in this particular case, there were three failures, and that had to do with the distance to public transit, the distance to a park, all of them within, and also the daycare, which would be the Stupac Center. So, really, although the neighborhood might not be a bad place for this, there are these problems, and I'd like to see Ms. Walker continue to try to help people like this. So I don't want to have to, I mean, I don't want her to have to spend a lot more money on this, because she knows, or she should know, that anything we do, in any event, entitles the land, not her. So she may be doing a lot of work to help somebody out in the future. So, Your Honor, I think Flynn's hint that an item to be held in abeyance is probably the best way to handle it. I would say we should do that for six months, and that way, she can bring it back. Flynn, is there any difference here between tabling it, though, and obeying it, because something's still going to have to be refiled, right?
Correct. Either if we table the item, we'll still have to renotice it. If we hold the item in abeyance, we don't need to renotice it, but if she does select another property, she will have to file a new application. I think the preference would be that we hold the item in abeyance to a date certain, and at that point in time, we can reconsider the options and assist her.
Okay, Your Honor. Six months from now is February, and I think that might as well be our schedule, and we'll go for the first meeting in February, if I may, if the council would support a motion to obey to that time. And so perhaps that'll give her time to focus on something else, if she can't do this. Remember that it's not being denied because of objections from the neighborhood. There were none that I know of, or along the lines of the technical problems.
Clerk has said February 4th would be that date.
February 4th?
Yes.
I still move.
Okay, there's a motion to obey this item to February 4th. Please vote and please post.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to Agenda Item 100, SUP 53863, abeyance item, public hearing. Applicant dollar loan setter, owner, Lamanza LLC, for possible action on a request for special use permit for proposed 2,649-square-foot auto title loan used with waivers to allow 100-foot distance separation from residential use where 200 feet is required and to allow 130-foot distance separation from similar use where 1,000 feet is required at 4,700 Meadows Lane, Suite 110. C1 limited commercial zone, this is in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission with a 6-0 vote recommends approval. It's a public hearing. I declare it open as the applicant or representative present.
Dave Gallion, 8860 West Sunset Road. Since our last meeting, we have been in communication with Councilwoman Tarkanian and her staff, trying to come up with a resolution to the concerns of our current SUP... trying to come up with a resolution to the concerns of our current SUP remaining active for a year. After a conversation I had last week, I put a short letter together that we got over to staff yesterday, showing our concerns with staying in our current location for that period of year for the SUP. Unfortunately, I was unable to get it to everyone for review. In short, what it showed is, at our current location at 280 South Decatur, during the same period last year, with the Target now shutting down, our new customer base for walk-ins is down 38 percent. To remain in our current location or to keep that rental spot for a year, plus move into the new location, would run approximately $86,000 on top of a tenant improvement. That becomes very cost prohibitive as a company. When we met with planning and went through our concerns and our current property, we showed that the, you know, parking lot had emptied, some of the concerns with the landlord that was at the Target Shopping Center, getting a few of us to renew our leases under what we felt were false terms. We're hoping that the matter can be reconsidered. I do completely understand Councilwoman Tarkanian's position, and I would be willing to work in any way we possibly can.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Fag, do you want to make comment on this, please?
Madam Mayor, the staff's recommendation for denial on this item is basically two waivers. The first is a waiver from residential properties. It doesn't meet the distance separation that we have in our code. And then secondly, the issue is basically a waiver from their previous location next to the Target that is now defunct. So that was the basis for our recommendation of denial on this.
That is not, this property's not on the backside of Cardenas, then, correct?
The new location will be on the backside of Cardenas Market.
Okay. I see. Oh, I see. Yep, got it. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
If we just may leave this overhead up, because this is perfect, I have a couple questions for Flynn. Flynn, the, for point of clarification, the distance separation is 300 feet?
Let's see. The distance separation requirement is 200 feet from residential. And then it is 1,000 feet from a similar use.
And 1,000 feet, oh, that's what I was getting, 1,000 feet from a similar use. So in the code, and I'm speaking more so now towards the liquor requirement, I know that there's 100-foot right-of-way that we can take into consideration as it relates to the distance separation, correct?
That is correct for liquor uses. But that, that waiver does not exist for the auto title loan uses, unfortunately.
Okay, but, but in essence, we, we could use that as an example, being that Decatur is 100-foot plus right-of-way, correct? From residential?
Yes, you could use that, well, from the other location. They're across Meadows Lane from residential. You have residential properties there on the south side of Meadows Lane. The property where the proposed location is, is on the north side of Meadows Lane. And it's only approximately 100 feet from property line to property line, which is how our code.
Right. But the distance separation also has residential on the west side that it also touches on the west side, right? And so that's why I'm looking at the west side first before I get to Meadows Lane. And so if we were to take the 100-foot right-of-way into consideration, I know it does not apply to the loan company, but keeping in the same framework of, of this application, if we were to take that into consideration with the cater being more than 100-foot right-of-way, then if it were a liquor application, we could accept the application, correct?
Correct. You are allowed to waive that distance separation requirements upon making a finding. And what you have stated is that there is 100-foot right-of-way, and that provides adequate separation.
Okay. So with that, my next question then becomes, if we were to look at the development of the commercial site and take into consideration that there's no entry into the property to the south, if we were to look at entry point to enter the neighborhood, it would be outside of the 200-foot radius, correct? Okay. So that, those two areas right there makes me feel comfortable. Now let's get to the 1,000-foot separation from similar uses. If you'll point out on the screen, if you will, as far as where this application is moving from, is it the blue star? Or the red triangle?
It's the red triangle on the left-hand side of the map.
Mm-hmm. And they're moving to the red triangle to the right side of the map?
Correct.
Okay. Once again, crossing 100-foot right-of-way. Is there an opportunity, and I understand that in this framework of planning, it's property line to property line, okay? So just follow me on this. If in fact, this applicant were to move into this new location, would there be an opportunity for another similar use to backfill the location in which this applicant is moving out of?
Within a 12-month period, yes. A new applicant could backfill the location next to the Target without having to apply for a special use permit.
Based on?
Based on code requirements. A special use permit expires if the use has not been conducted for a period of 12 months or more. And so by vacating that spot next to the Target, someone else
It leaves the window open for 12 months.
It leaves the window open for 12 months.
Okay. All right. Then you answered my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment? I will close public hearing. Councilwoman?
Show's yours.
My concern is that 12-month window. I think Mr. Barlow has introduced some good information here. When you look at the whole thing, this is not anywhere closer to residential, basically, than it was in the other spot. And when you look at the, the major road of Decatur, you, you see the right-of-way adds quite a bit. Because Flynn is so good at everything he's done, he's convinced a non-gambbling person to gamble. Just by, and you didn't tell me to gamble. It was just by my interpretations. So I'm going to gamble on this. But, but I may rip apart your building if the gamble fails.
You'd believe it. She would.
I doubt.
I might, really. But I know that you've operated your business well. I know that misinformation, or I should say, information was kept from you that hurt you as far as Target leaving that area, as it hurt the other businesses in that area. This is no fault of yours. And you've been a good person. You've added to our community. And so I'm going to move for approval on this, and I'm going to pray very hard that that 12-month window stays closed.
Okay, and that's your motion?
That's my motion. Should I move for approval?
Thank you. There's a motion to prove agenda item 100. Please vote and please post.
We start praying. It's not a good spot, by the way. It's way far back.
And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Councilwoman Tarkanian, thank you very much for all your help. Councilmembers, Mayor Goodman, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're at 3:27. All right, coming up.
4:30.
4:30 is the start of the Mountain Red. Right, so you weren't listening when you were walking out there. That's okay. All right, here we go. 101, SUP 54334, request for special use permit to allow a mixed-use development. And 102, SDR 54335, a request for site development plan review for 110,798 square-foot mixed-use development consisting of 8,000 square feet, commercial retail space, and 306 residential units. The applicant owner Trinity Peak 123 LLC on 10.25 acres southeast corner of Peak Drive and Buffalo Drive. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on both items. These items are in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Public hearing items, which I now declare open as the applicant present or representative.
Yes.
Okay, do you want to announce yourself and make your statements?
Yes. Good afternoon, Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset.
The famous, the famous.
Mother of twins.
8345 West Sunset Road.
Here today on behalf of Ovation, which is a company owned by Alan Molaski. I'd also like to introduce his son, Jess Molaski, is in the audience here from, for the summer from UCLA, as well as Peter Thomas, yeah, I know, way back there, of the Thomas family. This is a joint partnership between the Thomas family and the Molaski family on the project to, before you today. As mentioned, this project would be in the Las Vegas Technology Park. It is a use permit for a mixed-use project. Alan Molaski, through his company, Ovation Development, has for years, over 25 years, developed, in my opinion, very high-end, well-run, nice multifamily apartment projects. This is proposed to be a multifamily apartment project. If you look at the overhead, thank you, right here is Buffalo Drive. This would be the main entrance. The mixed-use components are light retail. By that, we probably mean either a yoga studio or a dog-washing grooming place. And then as well as office. By office, in this building, we will have the leasing offices for the apartment project as well as a model unit. And then above those, commercial uses would be two floors of residential units. Then the larger buildings contain all residential units. The height of the buildings closest to Buffalo would be three stories for approximate height of 48 feet. And then the height of the four-story buildings would be an approximate height of about 54 feet. The unique thing about this project is that while it is a multifamily project, and traditionally you will see, if you drive around apartment communities, you can see the doors to the units from the outside. This has all internal walkways and stairwells. So all of the doors to the inside of all of the units are accessed through internal hallways. The project is gated, and the project also needs a card key to enter into the building. So it's very secure. It is meant to be, I would say, an upscale apartment project. Similar apartment project is going to be built in the county on Tropicana and the 215 near the Spanish Hills and Spanish Trails Development. Our rents for this project range for a one-bedroom, around the $950 per month rent, and the two bedrooms are between 1,100 and 1,200. The interiors of the project, just to give you an idea, while they may not look exactly like that, that is an interior from one of Ovation's other apartment projects in town. As you can see, it's very nice, high-end finishes. And these two pictures give you an idea of the quality development that Ovation builds. And in particular, Alan Molaski is very, very involved in the landscaping and believes that landscaping enhances the look and feel of buildings. So he always exceeds any code requirements as it relates to landscaping, and he is doing so on this particular project as well. As I mentioned, it is a joint partnership between the Thomas family and Ovation. It is a $35 million investment. It will have, in terms of amenities, there's a pool and a spa, game room, a great room, a computer room, as well as conference rooms. Those, again, would be for the amenities for the residents who live there, but they do believe in amenitizing their apartment projects significantly. In terms of across the street, we are in an area where it's office, but this has a large medical technology component out in this area. And we believe that our likely tenants will be in and coming from into the medical profession that's out there. We are across the street from Desert Shores, wonderfully nice community. And as we've gone through this process leading us up to today, we did do a voluntary neighborhood meeting back in June, if I believe correctly. And we reached out to the radius that the city would nail out to, and we had some people there who expressed legitimate concerns, and I would like to think that we answered them as best that we could. Some of those concerns included whether or not we'd be putting fast food on the site. No, we are not. As I mentioned, the uses are low intense commercial as well as office. And also, they wanted to understand a little bit more about the nature of our apartment project, and we explained that it is market rate. That is why I went through what the proposed rental rates for the units would be, so that that could alleviate some of their concerns there. In working with, actually, Councilman Anthony's office, because that portion of the radius is in his ward, we were asked to reach out to the Desert Shores Master Homeowner Association, which we did. And we made a presentation to them towards the end of July at one of their regularly-scheduled homeowner association meetings. I would say there was about 30 or so people there. And again, between Alan and myself, I think we addressed a number of their concerns. One thing that they did want me to say for the record today, Alan committed to do it during the homeowners' association meeting, and I want to state it for the record today, and Flynn can tell me if he thinks it should be a condition or not, but even if it's not, we will put a disclosure into our leases that for our residents, we are going to acknowledge that there are private facilities within Desert Shores that our residents do not have access to. Obviously, anybody can drive on the public streets, but the private facilities within Desert Shores, our residents cannot use those facilities as they are private and specific for the Desert Shores homeowners who live in there. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. We do appreciate staff and planning commission recommending approval.
Thank you very much. I do have cards here, and alphabetically, it's Tracy Beasley, Dee Britton, Lonnie Clay, Judith Kohler, and Jacqueline Lester, and Ellen Shunk. So what I'm going to do is ask, if you would, not be repetitive of each other, but it is public hearing, and invite you all to come up and make your comments. And we would limit the comments, please, to three minutes individually. But again, please make sure your comments don't repeat someone else's, and thank you.
There's a lady behind you.
Okay, so whoever's first, first up, just come right on up, and I don't care that, I just put them in alphabetical order because I'm organized. And do repeat your name, please, if you would, for our clerk.
My name is Lonnie Clay, 7600 Delaware Bay Drive, Las Vegas. And I want to thank the commission for allowing us to speak here and address this issue. This special use permit addressing items number 101 and 102 is really about the Las Vegas Technical Center, Technological Center, and its future. About 25 years ago, the city acquired 620 acres, more or less, almost a full section, and dedicated it to diversified economic development. Every thoughtful person in Southern Nevada recognizes the necessity of diversifying our economy. And this tech center is Southern Nevada's most outstanding example of what can be accomplished thanks to this city council and previous councils who have enforced rigorous standards of development. This special use permit before you today entails several variances to the technical center. For the first time, residential units will be built in the tech center. For the first time, commercial retail centers, sales will be permitted in the tech center. Also, the building height that previously existed on this property is being waived. Since there remain numerous undeveloped parcels in the tech center, and this special use plan gives precedence to other variances in the technical center and threatens the character and integrity of the entire tech center. I've been a owner and resident of Desert Shores for over 20 years. I and 3,300 other owners genuinely appreciate the tech center and what it adds to our community. Therefore, I will respectively request that you preserve the community and the tech center. If there was, if there's a weight of scale of justice on this issue, you'll place on one balance the integrity of the tech center and the character of the adjacent community. On the other side of the scale, you'll consider the apartment compound. I think the scale favors the protection of the existing community and the tech center. I want to thank the city council for your past and present contributions to our city and community. And may I address one question to the clerk, please? Okay, in your mailer In your mailer, okay, in your mailer, how many responses approving of this special use permit did you receive? Because I believe you received over two-hundred-and-fifty responses disapproving of this thing.
We have a hundred and sixty.
And if we'd had a reasonable amount of time, we would have presented more than a thousand. How many?
We currently have a hundred and sixty, but we have not recorded the ones that were received after the time that we posted the agenda, so there could be more.
Okay. Now, you do realize that that mailer went out on the ninth.
Mr. Clay, I don't think this is in order.
For this meeting on the twentieth.
Excuse me?
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Scott?
I think the gentleman can probably find that information online, probably after this agenda's over, but I don't think she has the ability to count them at this time, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, and that's your time limit, so let's go on to another applicant. Another public speaker. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. And do set the time limited three, please.
My name is Dee Britton, and just a few concerns that we have. And I was at the HOA meeting when the developer was there, and that was the first time many of us heard of this development. So, that was like, two weeks prior, I think they had notices out in the neighborhood. So, when a lot of us went home that night, the phone wires lit up, emails were going all through Desert Shores that nobody heard of this. So, that is our main concern. I know there's a handful of us here today, but we represent, I mean, over three thousand that are still concerned that their voices weren't heard. Some of the concerns are, there's already retail on Smoke Ranch, right there, that's been, some of it's been vacant for years. So, that is one concern that some people have had. When Beckers wanted to build, we were all notified. And so, like I said, the main concern is, we were not notified, and many of us want our voices heard. So, our main concern is if this can be tabled at a later date, so all of the residents have a chance to voice their concerns.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate you, Councilwoman Tarkanian, for taking all the signatures we turned in. I know we had over two hundred in just a matter of a couple of days.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And as we move forward, please make sure you bring up new information. And stay your name.
Jackie Lester. I think I spoke to someone, I think I spoke to you, Mr. Anthony. I told him, "Welcome to the Bronx." I come from New York, but I lived in LA, and now I moved here when I retired. And I've been in Desert Shores Rocket Club for seventeen years, and I loved it. The big problem you have is with three-hundred-and-six rental apartments. That means about seven-hundred-and-so-mort people. Also, there means about seven-hundred-and-fifty cards. I'm breaking it down as I can. They claim that they're going to have the parking or cards going off on Peace Avenue, East Smith. They have to go to Buffalo, Buffalo Down, which is right near us. In fact, our houses in Desert Shores face this whole property while it's going to be built. Also, it affects the police, the police in the west part of town. They're going to have to get an awful lot of security people out because of the cards. We have a lot of traffic coming now on Buffalo. Since I've been here, it's almost like a hundred percent. The commercial parking with some of the units that they're going to have to sell various items, I guess, they're going to have to go in and out as well. So, it's multiplying traffic, security. It's going to have an impact on our whole community. We have had a good standing with the police department. We have very few break-ins there. I live in, I happen to live in the section that's gated, but people could get over the gates, there's no problem. There's no way of keeping all these transients, as I call them, because they're in apartments. Apartments change hands a lot. If it was a building like the other one down that was all, what do you call that? The apartments are, what do you call, the, I can't think of the word.
Condos?
But it's going to crowd up the place. I know it. And we're going to have a lot more security and stuff around. Also, there's a school around, a large high school, and that's going to be an impact too, because all the kids come down on the one street. That's about it.
Thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate it. Appreciate it, thank you.
I've lived in cities all my life, and it's going to have a big crowding. In fact, the buildings that
Thank you. Thank you.
Took a dive, we're waiting for that to come up again. It's going to destroy that.
Thank you.
So.
Next, please.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Tracy Beasley, and I'm the president of Harbor Cove HOA. And thank you for your time on this matter, we really appreciate it. I wanted to just add a few things regarding the comments that the very nice lady made about the presentation of the development and what they planned to do. She said that they, in good faith, they reached out to Desert Shores to hold a meeting with us. And I had spoken to the manager, management company of Desert Shores, and was told that that reach-out happened on Friday before the meeting. That was Friday, the eighteenth, and the meeting was the twenty-third, which was just approximately three working days, give or take, in that, you know, from time of notification in the meeting. So, therefore, they were not able to notify as many people as they had hoped. There wasn't a time to do a mailer to the rest of Desert Shores residents, and there wasn't time to put out very many signs of that nature. So, for that reason, I myself, as president of Harbor Cove, which is a sub HOA inside Desert Shores, I was not even aware of it. So, you know, while she said it sounded like thirty people showed up for that meeting, I believe is what she'd said, I guarantee you, if there was more notification, it would be twice as many people. So, what we had done, as soon as we found out that this was occurring, we took the mailer that was mailed out to people, from what I understand, within a thousand feet of the proposed development. We made photocopies of it, and I personally went around to half of one-hundred-and-twenty-one homes in my neighborhood, knocked on doors all weekend long. And out of all the people that we were able to contact and reach, only two out of one-hundred-and-twenty-one homes were for the project. Everybody else seemed rather alarmed and concerned about what was being proposed. Amongst those things that you've already heard is increased traffic, specifically people trying to cut through to circumnavigate the very busy long lights, both on Cheyenne and Lake Mead, trying to get to Buffalo. There was that. The height of the project being four stories high, nothing else around there is four stories high. It's capped off at two. I stood on the corner myself today and looked around, nothing is that tall. So, being able to see it from Desert Shores. And then, the other concerns are just increased foot traffic through our community. So, we would like to perhaps table this, if we could, and meet with the developers to come up with maybe a happy medium. We're not against development, we're just against something so aggressive and so high-density, and we're against twenty-nine-point-six units per acre. So, that's all.
Thank you very much for coming down, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please come.
Yes, my name is Lisa Hogset. I've lived in Desert Shores since it was built, nineteen-ninety-one. And I, again, walked around to my neighborhood and got notices signed, because we didn't receive any notices. So, here's what I got just yesterday, because I just heard about it the day before. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. And your name, please.
I'm a little nervous. Anyways, I just wanted to say good afternoon, America.
And your name, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's Tammy Fernandez, and I live at eighty-three thirteen Sealand Drive.
The address, okay. We just needed your name for the record, thank you.
And I just wanted to say good afternoon, America. And I had the opportunity to work with your husband, but I have not had an opportunity to work with you. And as far as you, Councilwoman Tarkanian, I also love, you know, Tarkanian with the towel and all that stuff. He's a huge supporter, he brought a lot of stuff in. So, you know what, that's memorable to me, I've been here for fifty-one years. Kind of like what everyone here is saying with the Desert Shores community, we weren't really notified. I mean, I guess that what I'm hearing from the community is that there was a sign that was posted. Not that I'm opposed to what is being offered, because I'm all about, like Councilman Barlow said, about bringing jobs into Las Vegas, because, you know, we've been suffering. So, I'm not about that, but it's also about securing the Desert Shores community, because the zoning back in the day wasn't allocated for apartments. We did have one apartment complex that was built on Soaring Falls in Cheyenne, but a developer came in and changed it to kind of, to conform the condominiums. And it was put out to the community as a vote, so a yes or no. The community was for the condos, because it helped bring the equity up in the housing, which we were game for that. So, I was, I was okay with that. It went, and it was great. But now, we're going back to apartments where there's a lot of traffic that's going to be created. I'm glad that Councilwoman Tarkanian, you're supporting the schools, because we need that. We're growing, we are out there. So, as far as the schooling part of it, I'm game for that. You know, we need the schools there, because the schools are overloaded anyways. I used to be a schoolteacher, so I know how desperate they are for that. But as far as, you know, bringing on the three-hundred-and-six units in that area, the thing is this, is that she, and I don't really remember her name, but whoever was there that spoke up here, I don't remember her name. But whenever she had gone to the Desert Shores community in June, and then again in July, what she said was, is that she asked a little small majority of the community. I'm okay with that. But at least put the public notice out there to say, "Hey, can we, do you really want this project to go in there?" And if that's the case, kind of like Councilman Barlow said, Spanish Trails and the Spanish Hills are all gated communities, so maybe the developer would be interested in maybe gating our entire community on Buffalo to Lake Mead, to Rampart, to Cheyenne, okay? And having like, maybe a key entry to where, I've actually asked a lot of the businesses at the Lakeside City Center, they weren't able to be here today, but I asked them if they were opposed to having a keyless entry, and they said, "No, we want people that we want in. We want to be able to keep our, our area secured as well." So, that's what I'm actually asking for, is that maybe the council of men and women
I may be incorrect, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I live in a community that's not gated or fenced. And I was advised by the city at that time that then we assume ownership, we have to repair all our own streets, we own everything in the interior, and the city will no longer maintain the shrubs, maintain the asphalt, anything. So, knowing your, Desert Shores, I believe, being not gated, except for the smaller units inside, that's
Okay, that's a good point. I didn't know, and I'm kind of new, so.
That's why it's great to be alive, you learn something every day. I didn't know it either, but I was pushing for it.
I like that, thank you.
But thank you so much for your comments.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. And you guys have a great, awesome day, have fun at the baseball game.
Thank you. Thanks so much. You should stay in teaching. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please state your name.
Are they still going to accept these?
Excuse me, what were those?
The opposed.
Oh, you can give them to the city clerk, sure.
Yes, I'm Judith Kohler, eighty-one thirty-three Sunset Cove Drive. Also, a member of the Harbor Cove Desert Board. And my main thing is that we would like more time for everyone in Desert Shores to be notified. I think this is our first
Wait one second. Excuse me one second, I'm going to ask for Councilwoman to be sure to hear you. So, we'll just wait a minute.
Sorry.
Sorry. No, it's okay. Would you repeat what you were saying, please?
Actually, what my main thing is, is we would like more time for all the members of Desert Shores to be notified. This is exactly what everyone has said. We didn't get noticed, and between Tracy, Ellen, and I, we covered Harbor Cove, and we had eighty-seven votes in two days out of one-hundred-and-twenty-one homes. And most of the others that we didn't get were renters. So, if we could get a delay on this vote until for a few months, we would all appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else, public comments? I'm going to close the public comments, and Mr. Pag, would you, any comments that you wanted to weigh on this?
Actually, no, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman.
Is that the only meeting that you had? You are not in the ward I represent. So, I am not aware exactly of when you had your meeting. I did have someone go to it, and they reported back to me. But is that the only meeting you had then? And you're telling me it was only three days?
We had a regular board meeting that they showed up to. Nobody even knew it was a special meeting.
It was, it was just your regular board
It was just a regular board meeting. There might have been fifteen, twenty people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I can't take too much time here. She keeps a clock on me.
Whoops, here we go.
Councilwoman, and in return, I just ground her telephone.
It's okay, keep going on.
Mayor, Councilwoman, could I just address the neighborhood, because there's been some comments raised about the neighborhood meeting, so that I can provide some clarification on it? This is just a special use permit and a site plan review. There was not a neighborhood meeting required, like you would have on a general plan amendment. However, we felt, and Alan has always worked with his neighbors, that it was a good idea to have one. So, our office bought labels from the city of Las Vegas in the notification radius and did the first meeting in June. That's what I was referring to.
And I knew about that meeting, I was just trying to see if there was another meeting, anything called by anybody else.
And then there was, then we were asked, after the planning commission meeting, to meet with the Desert Shores Homeowners Association's master board, so we could try to, even though the notice radius for our mailing only went a thousand feet, perhaps by meeting with the master association board, we would be able to disseminate more information about this project. That is the, that, when I reached out, they happened to have a board meeting, and they invited us to make a presentation at that board meeting.
And I appreciate that information. It seems to me the bone of contention here, the major bone, is that they don't feel that they were notified early enough. And that's not your fault, because I know that you did that, we always do that, and you, you try to do it the best way you can. I, I always believe that a community should have enough time to get involved. I want to say, make some statements, however, because I had some, some people who signed the petition, called me and asked me some questions. They had been given misinformation, and I just want to clarify some of that. First of all, way back, you know, and we're talking about, it doesn't fit into the technology rules and regulations. On our backup, it said that it fits the master plan of Technology Center. Is that correct? It says that on those yellow pages?
Yes, that's correct. It is a permitted use by special use permit in the tech park. And as you'll recall
So, if anybody says that this is a violation of the technology plan, that's not true?
Correct.
Okay. I want to make that clear, because this information's been passed out, it's not true. And then, the other thing was, I wanted to point out that way back in two-thousand-and-five, a mixed-use approval was approved. It was approved by the city, way back then. It expired in two-thousand-and-seven, because nobody used it, it followed through. However, then again, planning and staff approved a mixed-use in August twenty-first of 'oh-nine. And now, again, in July eighth of fourteen, we approved it again. I don't think anybody can say that there was never any thought of having mixed-use there, because maybe somebody didn't finally do the building, but it was approved consistently through these years. So, to question the use of mixed-use, or to say that it's going against the master plan of the Technology Center, is not accurate, I believe. I also wanted to point out that my understanding is that the applicant is willing to put in each lease, the condition on a chapter eight. No.
Section.
I meant section eight, I'm sorry. I said chapter, but I meant section, section eight.
Two things on that. First of all, the thing that I did say we would put into the lease is the comment that our residents couldn't use any private facilities.
And you stated that here today, yes.
Correct. I, as, with respect to, we did get questions about whether or not this project would participate in the section-eight program. The answer to that question is no. Ovation is choosing not to participate in the section-eight program. I don't think you could put that legally into a lease, but none of Alan's projects are in a, none of Alan's market-rate projects participate in a section-eight lease. I just want to note for the record, he does do separate senior housing, that is not what this is. This is a market-rate This is a market rate, non-Section 8 participatory project.
Has he had Section 8 before in other housing?
No, but he does do senior housing. I just want to make that clear.
I understand senior. I understand senior. I'm talking about quote "Section 8" unquote.
No.
Okay. So that's another thing where we're saying that this is going to be Section 8. This applicant has never done Section 8 before.
Describe Section 8 to your people.
Would you describe Section 8 so it's done correctly? I want to make sure it's very correct.
Essentially, Section 8 is a subsidized housing program.
Mm-hmm. Okay. No, but what you're saying is you can't put that into a lease. She said you can't.
Yeah, Councilwoman, I advise the planning commission at the planning commission meeting that that's probably illegal against the Fair Housing Act.
I'm understanding that. I'm not saying the, you just said you couldn't put that into a lease. She said she couldn't put it into a lease. All I'm saying is the precedent has been set by the applicant. First of all, they do really great-looking buildings. Secondly, that they have not ever in the past done Section 8, and they don't intend to do Section 8, and they're putting that down on the record for us.
Correct. I just want to state for the record, Alan just came up, the senior housing projects do accept Section 8. That is not what this is. And we have to apply differently.
I understand. The senior housing projects are something separate, so that's why I'm not concentrating on that.
Okay, excuse me, there's no more public comment. I've closed public comment. Thank you.
And the other thing was, there might be a way that the developer could look at an additional crash gate. I don't know about that. Would have to take more time. He also said, I just want to bring these things out to you, because the calls that I got had so much information, I couldn't believe it. And I just want to set the information straight. We also have as a condition that we have the highest level of landscaping possible. That's my understanding, and it's my understanding the applicant has said, that they would, the number of trees they're putting up there, the size of what they're planting is far greater than what we usually have in projects. So I wanted to say that. But there's one caveat, and that is, I believe so strongly in citizens knowing well enough to question. So I'm going to ask to obey this. But I wanted to bring out those points, because I don't want you to go back and say, oh, they're going to have Section 8 for sure. Oh, this is going to bring transients. Transients in a $900 to $1200 to $1400 apartment? I don't think that would last very long. But I want you to understand that, but I do believe citizens have the right to have plenty of time. So I'm going to ask to obey, I'm going to move to obey this. But understand, all those things I told you are in my mind, and those are, that's accurate information, and if it's not, then someone correct me, please, right now.
And two of your council peers would like to make comments. So Mayor Protem, all right, Councilman Ross first.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. I appreciate that. And Councilman, I absolutely feel comfortable moving forward with this today, and I'll tell you for many reasons why. Number one, I have had the opportunity to visit Mr. Malaski's products. He builds a Class A product. Everything he touches is absolutely fabulous. I can't, and you made some comments, Ms. Lazovich, about the residents there using the facilities over at Desert Shores. Why would they want to? I mean, my goodness. I mean, the quality of product that he builds is phenomenal. I think this is a great location. And actually, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Malaski, I'd love to see something like this out in Centennial Hills. There's, you know, we've got all those freeways out there, and this is where a good, you know, a product like this should go. So I'm actually very impressed with the product. I firmly believe there's a definite need in this community for this type of unit, especially around the medical district and the technology district, Councilwoman, that you're so passionate about. I think we all share your passion in regards to that. But I feel perfectly comfortable moving forward with this. I've addressed, I've had many projects in Centennial Hills that we've had a lot of misinformation about. People have just thrown this thing over the top of the edge, and that's what I see here. I see an absolutely quality product that this city desperately needs in a great location, and I fully support moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward, but most of the opposition is coming from my ward and Ward 4, and I wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, we did have two meetings in Desert Shores. We followed the, our regulations as far as neighborhood notifications. The first meeting, six people showed up. They were concerned about the project. Mr. Malaski offered to meet with all six of those folks. He either met with two or four that wanted, two of them not wanting to meet, and I didn't hear anything after that. We decided to have another meeting in Desert Shores with the board of directors. Thirty people showed up, and it's my understanding that once the presentation was made on this particular project, people weren't really concerned about it any longer. And I know, I didn't hear from the board of directors for Desert Shores that they had a problem with it. I think what's happening is there are certain people in Desert Shores that are portraying this as a Section 8 low-income apartment complex that's going to have devastation on Desert Shores. That's really what the conversation's about, and I don't see this project having any impact on Desert Shores. It's a mile and, either a half a mile or three-quarters a mile from the entrance. It's across the street from Desert Shores, but there's a block wall next to Desert Shores. There's landscaping. There's a sidewalk. There's six lanes of roadway. There's another sidewalk. There's another landscaping, and then you have the apartments. So I don't see these folks having any reason to take the time to go up to Desert Shores because it's not really convenient for them to go up there. It's too far away. And this actually fits real well in the tech medical center, because this, that area's starting to explode as a medical tech industry with employees that have to live somewhere. And this is a high-end, very nice complex that doctors and nurses and high-tech individuals are going to live in that are not going to be causing problems in that neighborhood. They're going to live there, they're going to work there, they're going to shop there, just like they're doing in downtown Las Vegas that needs housing and anyplace else. So I really don't, I haven't, I haven't heard a lot of opposition to this project, and I think a lot of it is based on scare tactics. I think this is a great project for that particular area, so I'm ready, I'm ready to move forward with it today also.
Thank you, Your Honor, for that recognition. I served in the legislature during about 2006 timeframe, which is when Section 8 started going in and heard from a number of Desert Shores residents, because I represented that neighborhood at that time, concerned about the degradation of their neighborhood. And kind of as an aside from this project, which I agree with my two colleagues who just spoke, it does not represent the threats that the Desert Shores residents here today are concerned with. Kind of separate from that, Your Honor, we may want to instruct our city staff to make some inquiries at the Southern Nevada Housing Authority, because the whole point of the Section 8 housing was to not have recipients of this particular form of federal welfare all in the same place. The theory behind vouchers was to disperse throughout the community in hopes that the community would bring these people up. And there's no doubt in my mind that there's been a concentration that's taken place over the years in the Desert Shores neighborhood, and we may just want to make some inquiries of the housing authority as what procedures they have in place to ensure that we don't end up with that kind of concentration of voucher locations.
Anywhere.
Anywhere. Not just in Desert Shores, but anywhere. This is kind of a side note, bigger problem than what we're dealing with right here, right now.
Certainly, planning should be involved in that. Thank you very much. And Mayor Protem again.
And just one other comment. I mean, I drive up and down that road all the time. I'm in Desert Shores all the time. That is, that's a great community. It's a great place to live. There's great housing in there. And if I thought a project was going to cause damage in Desert Shores, I'd be the one jumping up and down screaming and hollering that we're not going to have it. I just do not see this impacting Desert Shores one bit. And I just want to remind you that staff is recommending approval on this, and the planning commission is recommending approval. So staff has vetted it. They're fine with it. The planning commission has vetted it unanimously. They're fine with it. It's, I think it's a great project that, once it's up and running, you folks will have no problems with it. You're not even going to know it's there unless you drive by it. And the traffic that you mentioned, like I said, I drive up and down Buffalo all the time. There are not that many cars on Buffalo. That's a six-lane highway with a left turn in the middle. There's plenty of capacity for more driving, and it can handle the complete build-out of the tech medical center. So I'm in support of this project.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
I agree with a lot of what the councilman has just stated, and I wanted to point out that was why I brought forth the facts on how many times it had been approved for multi-use and Section 8 and all that other stuff. My concern was, did they have enough timing to meet? Now, in what you said, you said they did have the amount of time that's usually given. So if that's the case, I have to tell you then, I would move for approval. That was my one caveat. I believe strongly in that type of input, but if you've had it already, then everything else I've said to you, of course, shows that, and I think it's, I think it's a very fine project. The tech board is in my area, and I will tell you, when he says it's exploding, it's exploding. We will have, it's turning into more of a medical center as part of our Las Vegas Medical District Northwest. And that center is adding more doctors, and they need, we need rooms and places for nurses and for, you know, people who are assistants to doctors and things like that. From my point of view, from Ward 1, it's a need, and it's a good thing for us. I can tell you, as long as I'm a councilperson, we're not going to have a mess there, and I think as long as Malaski's involved, he would hit hard on it, too. I just want you to know that. And so if you want to ask a question, and there's the one in charge...
Well, no, I'm going to, I've closed them. I think, you know, I really think we're all very sensitive, and we know your community so well. I remember when it was developed, unfortunately, I'm that long here, and know the people that developed it and why, but I, too, would just want to, the public comments closed. I really think everybody understands, and with the notification that you've heard about...
That's the...
I entertain moving your motion then, please.
Okay, and I would like to say I had a son who lived there. I have many friends who live there. I think it's a great community, and I wouldn't purposely hurt it in any way. So I, my motion was to approve.
Okay, there's a motion.
101.
Okay, we'll start with 101, please. Your motion is to approve. Agenda item 101.
Yes, that's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post.
Your Honor?
Yes.
My screen says obey two.
Your screen says what?
Wait, we have to undo the technology. Okay, so we'll re-vote. Here we are. And then please post. Where'd you catch that? I didn't see it.
It was just below the current motion in blue.
You don't have bifocals, you have trifocals. God, I couldn't even see that.
I have, I have a young one I have to keep my eye on now.
Right. Councilwoman, you have to vote.
I was waiting.
And post. Motion carries. Agenda item 102, please. Motion.
I move to approve.
On agenda item number 102, there's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post.
And Jennifer? Good luck.
Thank you. Did I miss it?
No, it's...
There it is. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much. I can't believe how thin you are with twins and how you do your work.
It's because I have twins.
And have a file like that, represent these clients, and then be a good mommy to the twins.
Thank you.
Best of everything.
Thank you.
Move forward. Godspeed, please.
Thank you.
We would like to see the development go. Thank you very much. Agenda item 103. Is that right? Yep. SDR 53435, abeyance, item, public hearing. Applicant Ernest Patton, owner, prayer, center, revival ministries, possible action or request for a site development plan review for proposed 7,378 square-foot church house of worship with waivers to allow reductions in all portions of all landscape buffering requirements on .68 acres at 1316 1352 Miller Avenue, 1329 West Carey Avenue, C-V Civic Zone, and this is in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. Both the staff and our planning commission recommend approval. It's a public hearing. I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? Okay. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Councilman Barlow?
Yes, I'm actually surprised that there's no one here to represent this item. Flynn, do we have any update in regards to the request for the reduction in landscape?
They, as we indicated in our staff report, they don't meet the width requirements for the landscape buffer areas. However, they do exceed the amount of landscape materials required by our code in terms of the number of trees and also the shrubs that are required in those areas. And so for that reason, staff has recommended approval of those waivers. So they have done a good job in trying to address those concerns.
Okay. And looking at the site now, I just recognize that I have family members that attend this church, but I haven't communicated to them in regards to anything related to this. Mr. Scott?
Okay, Councilman.
Okay. So anything moving forward looks better than what's currently there. And so I'm going to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions on this item.
Thank you. There's a motion, agenda item 103, to approve. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item 104. SDR 53752, public hearing. Applicant Dottis 108, owner, Hughes Family LLC, number 3 at L for possible action, request for a major amendment to an approved plot plan review Z0090-63 for a proposed 982-square-foot expansion of a 3,890-square-foot legal non-conforming liquor establishment tavern use and minor material changes to the elevations on .67 acres at 1690 North Decatur Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone. This is in Ward 5. Councilman Barlow, both planning commission and staff recommend approval. It's a public hearing. Is the applicant or representative present?
Mayor, members of the council, George Garcia, 1055, Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite 210. Pleasure to be before you. I'll be brief, but I'd love to show you all the pretty pictures, because it's great to have a project where we're going to totally redevelop the site, private reinvestment without city assistance in an area that's been deteriorated and older. So it's a great opportunity to bring the project closer into conformance with the city codes. Staff and planning commission, as you have indicated, are recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions, and with that, we'd request your approval.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the councilman's office for all the assistance and help we've been given in looking at and working on this project. So, Councilman Barlow, thank you.
Mr. Pag, anything on this?
Madam Mayor, in the interest of the ballgame, no. Staff has recommended approval.
Public hearings open. Anybody wants to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing and hearing no one, Mr. Councilman Barlow, yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to thank the applicant for a job well done with upgrading and really beautifying the old Alibaba Hotel and Casino, and look forward to the new decorative look for Decatur. So with that, I'll follow staff and planning commission's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. We say hi back.
Hi.
Oh, hi.
Oh, hi. Okay. And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, well done. And Agenda Item 105. Was that 105? Right, 105. SDR 54327, public hearing. Applicant, owner, weight, Montecito Real Estate LLC, for possible action, or request for a site development plan review, proposed four-level parking garage with waivers of the Town Center Commercial Development Standards to allow a building height of 50 feet where 35 feet is the maximum height allowed, to allow the build-to-line be 80% where 60% is the maximum allowed, to allow a zero-foot side yard setback on the north and a portion of the south perimeter where a minimum of 10 feet is required to allow an 11-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the east property line where 15 feet is required, a waiver of Title 19.08 to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer on the north and a portion of the south perimeters where a minimum of eight feet is required, and a waiver, boy, oh, boy, and a waiver of the Montecito Town Center Timberlake Buffer Area to allow a multi-story building where only single-story buildings are permitted on .85 acres northwest corner of Grand Montecito Parkway and Clark County, 215 TC Town Center Zone, MS-TC Main Street Mixed Use Town Center Special Land Use Designation, Ward 6. Councilman Ross. The staff recommends denial, and the planning commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor. Members of the City Council, Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, 300 South 4th Street, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I will be brief. This is, we're seeking approval for a four-story parking garage adjacent to an existing office building, which has already been approved and is ready to be occupied since it was constructed in 2009. They're looking at a tenant that will bring about 500 to 600 jobs to the area, and the parking garage will help support that tenancy. And we ask for your approval. I can go through the waivers, but in the interest of time and the ballgame, those are in front of you, and planning commission did recommend approval, and we ask that you do the same.
Okay, we're on one, okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this item? Is somebody behind you? Okay. Come on up and state your name.
My name's Doty Miller, resident of Timberlake Community, board member. And I'm here representing a portion of our community and our board. Same issue, we don't all get notices. Only about a third got it. And anyway, we're here to, I'm here to oppose this project because of several issues. First of all, our Timberlake Buffer is being compromised with this project. Why do we have Town Center standards if we're not going to adhere to them? And we were told that all of us would be notified, any project that would concern Timberlake and the Town Center, which hasn't been done for quite some time. The homeowner meeting, we were told that we do not have to give you a meeting. We do not have to have a traffic study. And it's basically a take-it-or-leave-it attitude that we were told. And there's a school across the street from this project. This is a 24/7 customer service, from what I understand, call center. And there's a school across the street. Our project, I don't know how we're going to get out of our community with the traffic that it should probably bring. It's a safety concern for us. It's, there's so much traffic right now with this school, that we worked with the city to have our Dogbrook Trail made one way because of all the parking and people coming in to pick up their children. This is also, 50% of this building is going to be occupied with this company. What happens to the other 50% when they come? We're going to have a lot more traffic and noise, people leaving, entering buses. We just don't understand why we have Town Center standards when you can't adhere to them. And I asked for all these waivers. The waivers that we were given, or I was given on this, is different than the one given on your agenda. They added quite a few things more.
You can take over.
Let's see. The Town Center standards are constantly being changed, but we're never told about that. The thousand-foot notice issue is a real problem for us. I mean, only a portion of our community gets noticed. The man at the end of my block got a notice, but I certainly didn't. This building has been empty for many, many years, and with no aggressive rental action. Anyway, my suggestion, and some of our residents and board members' suggestion, was to relocate. If you'll see on that other rendition. May I? We asked for this structure to be moved in the back, where they have overhead parking canopies. And then, it wouldn't be so bad back, if it was back in the back. And also, this is zoned for a single-story, our Timberlake Buffer is single-story requirements at this time. The other thing is, if we have to go forward with this, maybe would be a good idea to have a traffic light out our, by our back gate on Montecito Parkway. I know there's one planned eventually for Centennial, but I don't know. This is going to be a real problem for us.
Thank you for your comments.
Traffic-wise.
I appreciate it. Thank you for waiting and for your comments. We appreciate them.
Thank you for hearing me. It's so late. I want to see the game, too.
I know.
Those kids are doing a great job.
Yes, they are. But thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this particular item? Hearing now, and I'll close, public hearing. Want to hear from Mr. Fag?
Madam Mayor, I just need to point out that there were some minor revisions to the plans to the project in between the hearing at planning commission and what you have before you today at City Council. You have a revised staff report, which was posted to the city website in addition to the agenda for this meeting. And so, that is posted there, and all of the conditions of approval are in place. So, if you choose to approve that, you do have the if-approved conditions there.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilman Ross?
Thank you. Mrs. Miller, thank you for staying as long as you have and for your comments. I understand exactly where you're coming from and exactly your thoughts, as I have in years past with other projects, and we're not done. You know that. The other development will come back one day as well. Ms. Roberts, you will probably have to do some explaining, especially the encroachment into the Timberlake Buffer Zone. Would you please explain that to my colleagues and the public, so we have a firm understanding of that, please?
Of course. So, a lot of the waivers that we're asking for are actually mitigating factors here. And I would like to add that the traffic concerns, the exit to the nearby residential does not intersect with the traffic from the parking garage, because there's only one way to get out. There's an island in between that separates that. So, I would like to emphasize that as far as traffic purposes. I would also like to emphasize that, again, the building is built, it's already approved, and it's open for tenancy, and the traffic will be impacted aside from this parking garage being approved. So, I do, I did pass along the issues that were raised at the neighborhood meeting. You know, as the neighbor said, that it was a voluntary meeting. We did offer to meet with the neighbors, and we did so to address these issues. As far as the waiver of the Timberlake Buffer Area, they do have a single-story requirement. This is a four-story parking garage. However, the building height of the garage is at 35 feet aside, let me get that rendering. We asked for a waiver to allow 50 feet merely because of this firewall protection for the stairwell. It's in the back of the parking garage. It's, that's the only height of 50 feet, 35-foot garage. So, because it's four-story garage, that's the requirement for the waiver. But it's also next to a much larger building.
It is. I appreciate your explanation. I want you to point out specifically the line of sight there from that, the bottom figure there, that line of sight. How many feet is that away from the, from the structure?
That is.
Where it hits the ground.
It is with, this line of sight does comply with the standards. So, we have adjusted it. That does comply with the requirements. It looks to be.
Does it give a distance on the background?
Looking for that.
Do you know it, Barrett?
But that's, that's significant, because I looked at this very closely, and Mrs. Miller, for your benefit, and this structure basically is adjacent to three homes in Timberlake or across the street. And the vegetation and trees that those homes already have, this thing, this building's not going to be seen. In regards to the traffic, I need to, Ms. Roberts, to point out that, that, that traffic pattern for you, so you had a better understanding of how the employees are going to be getting in and out of the, out of the, out of the built, out of the parking garage. They're not going to impact your exit. Employees or customers using the front parking lot. Well, can you take that drawing down, Ms. Roberts, for me, please?
And sir, if you could mention your name and what your role is here.
I'm Barrett Powley, 241 West Charleston, and the architect involved with.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, through, through the mayor, if you see the front parking lot there for customers to use, then your neighborhood and your exit is still not impacted, Mrs. Miller. So, I want to point that out to you. Also, there is a signal being constructed right now on Centennial and Grand Montecito Parkway. The base has been poured, it looks like, or at least the base has been drilled. I think it got poured. So, that signal should be up within, within the next month. That is going to mitigate a lot of those traffic issues in there as well. Just for your information, there is discussion on the other parcel off of Centennial and Grand Montecito Parkway for some other type of development, perhaps another car dealer. So, that's going to clean up some of the traffic issues I'm having right there on that Grand Montecito Parkway. And I hope you did notice that I had the bushes cut down a couple of weeks ago. So, just shoot me an email. We'll get it done. That being said, I think, and Mayor and Council, Mr. Roberts did not mention the company. You want to fill us in on the company? This is very good news for the city of Las Vegas, very good news for the governor's economic efforts as well. So, would, could you please fill us in?
You know, I would love to announce the name of the company, but I think they're still in final, final discussion of getting all of these issues resolved, and I've not been authorized to announce. But I think it's been in local papers and everything. It's a good company, quality company, 24-hour operation, but not for customer access. And we did, again, pass along the, you know, possibility of accommodating shift or, you know, shift work to, so that it doesn't affect the traffic with the school.
And, and without saying the company name, these are not minimum wage-paying jobs. They're actually offering a pretty fair wage to, to their employees, which is significant. This is a, this is going to be their corporate headquarters in the city of Las Vegas in Centennial Hills. So, we're very excited about that. And I think, Mrs. Miller, the way they've had to do this, and I've asked the same questions, why did you put the parking garage back there? They need those parking spaces, too. This is going to be right up against the 215. It's right on the, right on the edge, if you will, on that empty lot that you, that I think you guys picked up. So, I think it fits. I think it's going to be a low impact on, on Timberlake, and you still have my commitment to continuing to protect the, your quality of life as well, as well as your neighbors in Timberlake. Because like I said, we're not done. We're going to see more development coming down the road and having bigger discussions than this. So, with that, Mayor, I would move to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions. And you accept all the conditions?
Yes, we've reviewed the conditions, and they are acceptable.
That's my motion, there.
Okay, there's a motion. I want to just make sure that Mr. Fag, there's nothing to add. He moved, that's quite all right. He moved to go ahead and approve, subject to all conditions. Was there anything that's been omitted, left out, that they need to? We're good. Okay, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. Good job.
Thank you. Play ball.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Flynn, thank you for.
Thank you for coming.
Just a, just a note, I believe the tenant improvements are in, for permit for that, for those three floors, for the tenants. So, they are moving forward to get permits to build, as well as will be ready to submit as well. So, it's moving forward, which is exciting.
Wonderful. Very exciting. Can't wait to hear who it is. All right. Two agenda items, Mr. Fag. This is Agenda Item 106 and 59 coupling in. So, on 106, DIR 54267, public hearing, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, discussion for possible action regarding a request to adopt the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Shall I read the other one as well?
Yes, please.
Okay. And on Agenda Item 59, the resolutions, R30-2014, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution adopting the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community, which focuses on neighborhood generally located within a half-mile radius of the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Sunrise Avenue and Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. And so, this is a public hearing, but I'm first going to ask Mr. Fag to speak. I'm not going to ask Mr. Fag first. I'm going to ask Mr. Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say that we, this is a very important item, and I, we don't want to obey it. It definitely needs to be adopted, Your Honor, with your approval. But at the same time, it deserves to have a more full explanation. It's only, I think, our second walkability plan produced by staff, if I'm not mistaken. And it's a wonderful piece of work, and they've worked very hard, culmination of a lot of work. And I hope that you would accept a very abbreviated presentation from Mr. Fag today, and that perhaps we can bookmark some, five or six minutes at a future meeting, maybe next month or the month after, to go into what it really means.
Only if Mr. Fag comes back.
Will that be all right?
Only if Mr. Fag comes back.
All right. Well, Flynn, you just have to do it today, and then we'll have a proxy, or bring back some palm trees.
And I'd like to ask the green shack, how come the sign, the wood part of the trim is no longer green? Did it fade?
I think that's the quality of the photo.
Oh, quality. Okay. So, what's your pleasure, Councilman?
Your Honor, it is to hear Flynn present briefly, the, I think, 106 first, and then 59.
Thank you.
And then, we would hope that we can find agenda time at a near meeting.
In the interest of time, I'll tell you where it is. I'll tell you who worked on it. I'll give some thanks to the people who contributed to it, and we'll move on such as there.
Thank you.
The Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan is essentially incorporates the area near the Five Points, or where Eastern and Charleston and Fremont intersect. And it takes in basically a half-mile from that area. I need to recognize the staff who worked on it, because, again, we do these in-house. We don't have a consultant do these for, for us. And the staff is out there in the field, actually taking photos and identifying the areas where we don't have sidewalks or inadequate crosswalks and things like that. So, I would just like to recognize Andy Reed, who is our long-range supervisor, Dave Cornoyer, Mike Howe, Rich Wasmuth, Robert Summerfield, and Mark House, who did all the graphic works on that. Again, we have a terrific staff, and even though I may be leaving, we still have all of those staff members who will continue to work on these wonderful plans. So, I want to assure you that the work will continue. I also want to thank all of the residents who came out to the meetings that we held. We had, I think, about four community meetings to kick off the project, and then we held another series of meetings at the end, once we had the draft plan available. I particularly remember residents of Cervantes Street, which is just south of Stewart Avenue, who came out and said, you know, we really want sidewalks on our street. And so, I appreciate neighbors who come out and tell us those types of things, of improvements that they want to their neighborhood. So, with that, I will conclude my comments. That takes care of Item Number 106. If you are to approve Item 106, then we have the resolution, which makes this an adopted plan, and also assists us as we look for grants to implement these types of improvements. And I also need to mention that our former Public Works Director, Mr. Cervantes, has been very good at including walkable community plans as part of the annual capital improvement budget, and make sure that funding is available to complete those improvements. So, with that, I'll conclude my comments, and away we go.
Thank you. And what, what is the circumference? What is the mileage?
A half-mile.
One-half mile. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Councilman?
Thank you, Your Honor. And again, appreciate very much your, you know, allowing us to have a very short presentation today.
Oh, no, timeout.
Well, I'll tell you, it's really worth the time.
I didn't do the public hearing. Sorry.
Oh.
Public hearing. Does anybody wish to come up and speak to this? All right, hearing done, we will close.
We had some people who were going to appear, and they just realized that they couldn't come back.
Hopefully, they'll come back as you go.
Martin Dean DePaulo, and there were some other citizens who really wanted to thank our staff and appreciate what we've done here, because particularly, Mr. DePaulo's been a real advocate for sidewalks in areas that didn't have them. So, again, let me move for adoption of Item 106.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve 106. Please vote and please post. And from this morning's agenda, we will move on for 59.
Thank you, Your Honor. Do you want to make any further comments, or I'll be okay? Thank you, Flynn. Then, Your Honor, I move for approval of Resolution Number 59R-30-2014. And I do want to emphasize what Mr. Fag said about inclusion in the budget. We really need to. We really need to have this included in the next capital improvement project budget, Your Honor.
Okay.
And so I hope that that will be inserted in as part of the motion, because without putting our money where our mouth is, it's just a lot of nice-looking paper.
And again, I failed to make any requests. People who would like to speak publicly on this agenda item 59, please come forward. So I will close that now. Please vote on the motion. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 59. And please post. And that motion carries. What a lovely way to close down on planning, Mr. Fag. That's a lovely gesture.
One more?
Okay. Agenda item 107, DIR 54568, public hearing, applicant owner, Ward Five, Chamber of Commerce, Las Vegas. Discussion for possible action regarding a request to designate the Harrison House as a historic building in the city of Las Vegas. Historic property registry is approved by Historic Preservation Commission, HPC dash 53611, on point 1.5 acres at 1001 F Street, R dash three, medium-density residential zone, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Both the Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open as any, wow, that was fast. I looked it up, everybody's here. Okay. So who will start?
Lady source.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just Courtney Mooney, Historic Preservation Officer for the city of Las Vegas with the Planning Department. I just wanted to note that the Historic Preservation Commission recommended approval of designation of the Harrison House because it meets the criteria outlined in the city of Las Vegas Unified Development Code, namely because it has been determined to be of exceptional local significance and expresses a distinctive character, because a significant portion of it is at least 40 years old, and it reflects the city's cultural, social, political, or economic past, and is associated with a person or event significant in local, state, or national history. On June 27, 2014, the Harrison Boarding House was designated on the Nevada State Register of Historic Places, and an application for designation on the National Register of Historic Places is pending.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Stanton Wilkerson, 1001 F Street at Harrison House. And Courtney just pretty much gave my entire presentation, because I wanted to kind of give the council a little bit of background on what Harrison House is and what is, what we're trying to do there. We're really trying to add a destination point for tourism and local education through Harrison House. And right now, we have some electricians doing some emergency work on the house to get us the electricity back up to code. And, and I would also like to, if I could, thank some people that helped make this whole thing possible, and that includes City Council of Las Vegas, the Historic Preservation Commission of the city of Las Vegas. The city of Las Vegas is the Historical Legacy Preservation Council, which gave us a nice grant, which is helping us do the financial work. The Ward Five Chamber of Commerce, of course, Home Depot Foundation, Caesar's Entertainment, Helix Electric, Love Engineering, Energy Conservation Group, Rick Van Deepman, G&amp;J Enterprises, and Mimi Morse, and all the members of the Ward Five Chamber of Commerce and members of Harrison House. We all thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
And thank you so much. My name is Kathryn Duncan. I'm president of the Ward Five Chamber of Commerce. We're the property owner. And we would just like to let you know that we have been trying to figure out what the future would hold for this property. You know, it's great that it's historic, but how is it going to sustain itself into the future? And we've looked at all sorts of plans, from being a boarding house for the homeless to being a veteran service center. And I believe now that we are engaging in talks to turn it into a coffee shop, it's gotten a lot more interest. People are excited about it. And so we'll be moving forward to, to investigate having it be a nice coffee shop for the public to enjoy. So I thank you.
What was the year it was built?
1942.
And the first owners?
The first owners was Ms. Geneva Harris, and she built it in 1942.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone from the public wishing to make comment? Else? Well, we'll close the public hearing, and Councilman Barlow, how nice.
Yes.
I brought something. I brought a gift for each member of the council. It's the Harrison House Report.
Oh, fabulous. We would love that.
This is our first edition, and I want everyone to have one. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.
Mayor and Council, I would like to congratulate Ms. Duncan, Mr. Wilkerson, and the Ward Five Chamber on a job well done with the, not only the rededication, but the historical preservation of the Harrison House. It's been a long time coming. I know they put a lot of time, effort, and sweat equity into this house and the historical West Las Vegas community. And so my hat is off to you for a job well done. And so I look forward to what you all continue, what your continued plans are for the historical site. And I know that it's going to be something very beautiful, that the entire community will be able to stand and applaud and be very proud of as you move forward. So with that, I would move forward for approval of this item, subject to all conditions, and, and thank you once again for all the work that you've done to the preservation of a historical site in our community.
Thank you. There's a motion, and next to you, Councilman, is one for you and one for Councilman Coffin. And since this is your ward here, if you would give one to Councilwoman Tarkanian, there's a motion. Please vote.
Your Honor, while we're voting, could I ask a question?
And please post.
Is this, is the story online somewhere? Is the history online?
Yes, it is. The Las Vegas Review-Journal posted the story and the 33-page nomination report to the National Register. It's all online.
Okay.
And, and I'm sorry, the Las Vegas Sun newspaper, Mr. Brian Greenspan did that, and we failed to thank him. My God.
So is it on the Sun's website?
Las Vegas Sun newspaper, Brian Greenspan, yes.
Is, is it on the Sun's website? If somebody who's not here and doesn't get one of these magazines would like to read about the history, where would they go do that?
It's also, wouldn't it be included in the city's website?
It is. It's on the city of Las Vegas website.
And under Cultural Affairs?
Under, the Planning Department, under Historic Preservation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the motion passed. Very excited. Can't wait. If you're going to do a ribbon cutting or a something, something, we'll be there.
Yes, we will be doing a ribbon cutting.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, we're having a watermelon social immediately after this meeting. So you're all invited.
Thank you. We have to watch the Mountain Ridge baseball, Little League. So keep it going. Turn your TVs on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Wonderful. Okay, agenda item 108, unstructured city clerk, pardon? We're okay. Set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city Planning Commissions and dangerous buildings, nuisance, litter, abatements. Done. So done. We will move on to 109. Citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker will be allowed, will be limited to one minute. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Please state your name.
Hi, yes. My name is David Schwinn. I'm representing Simon Property Group. And on number 76, it was tabled, but I would, did want to submit two exhibits that I think are pertinent to that. One is a final notice of lease negotiations had ceased with that particular entity that's requesting a permit for alcohol. And the second is a copy of emails that they replied to us that they would be withdrawing that permanently. So there's six copies of each.
Wonderful. If you give it to the clerk, she will be sure to disseminate those appropriately.
And I appreciate your time. I just want to make sure you get those, so you're fully informed. We would respectfully ask that you not approve it, because there's no lease negotiations. We keep telling them they're over. There's a copy of their final notice.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for staying.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate it. Anyone else? We'll move on to agenda item 110. And this is, I believe, before we do this, I understand that Jane Ann Morrison, who's been glued to that chair in the back, is moving on to different things, rather than covering the city and city council meetings, which, what a lovely way to end this day, with our Flynn Fag moving on, and our Mountain Ridge, and the wonderful soccer winners, and...
We just scored second batter up.
We just scored Oscars, really slow. For heaven's sakes, he didn't do anything. Okay. Anyway, Jane Ann, good luck to you as you move forward and do whatever. Happy Labor Day to you, and we appreciate all that you've done for us. Thank you. Very fair reporting, very honest, truthful, right there. Thank you. Okay, we're on to council recognition. How many of us are left? Where did Councilman Coffin go? He better not have escaped. All right, your turn, Grandpa.
Thank you, Your Honor. We will have beers with beers next, the Thursday 28th of August. That is not tomorrow, but tomorrow plus one week. Thursday, August 28th, we will be out at Ember's Grill and Spirits, which is in Boca Park. And I would love to see you there, 5:30 to 7:30. The World Heritage Student Exchange Program is looking for local host families. That's kind of an interesting, interesting prospect. Thirty different countries involved, couples, single parents, and families with or without children are encouraged to apply to host a student for a semester or for the truly brave an entire school year. Each exchange student is fully insured, has personal spending money, and expects to contribute to household responsibilities. If you'd like more information, give us a call here at the Ward Two office, and we will share the pertinent info. Downtown Summerlin having a big job fair on August 27th, two Saturdays from now, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Summerlin Ballroom at Red Rock Resort. And that job fair is going to focus on full-time and part-time positions in management, sales, food service, and administration, all surrounding the very large shopping mall that is scheduled to be open for the end of the year season. Ah, thank you. Participating retailers are to be announced shortly. If you'd like more information, downtownsummerlin.com. And it was on this day in music history, in 1882, that Tchaikovsky's 1812 Overture debuted in Mexico, 70 years into the future, commemorating the, the repelling of Napoleon's forces from Russia. It's known for the famous climatic volley of cannon fire, ringing chimes, and brass fanfare finale. I'm told, similar to how you can start Dark Side of the Moon at the beginning of Wizard of Oz, and have a whole new perspective on both works, if you start the 1812 Overture at the seventh inning stretch of this evening's game for the Mountain Ridge baseball team.
They only go seven innings.
Go six.
They're going to be finished in two.
All right, never mind, I'm done.
It's okay. You got a nice picture there. Okay, your turn.
And yes, my wife just said Mountain Ridge scored the first run. Second batter's already up, so that's probably old news.
No, Oscar finally came through.
He comes through, good. We're all monitoring this. We want to get to this game. So if you're, folks, if you're not watching, ESPN2, Mountain Ridge is on fire. Ten run, the last two teams they play, and they're playing that, that Monet, that little girl that's got, that really can pitch well, so it's going to be a great game. As in our continued relationship with Nevada child seekers, we do have a missing young lady. Her name is Kiara Mayo. She's 15 years old, five foot seven, 143 pounds, hazel eyes, brown hair. She is African-American Caucasian descent. She was last seen in the area of Smoke Ranch Road and Rainbow. So please, if anybody says seen her, she may be carrying a backpack with personal belongings. We'd love to get this young lady back to where she can get help and care and love. If you've seen her, please contact the Las Vegas Mountain Palm Police Department, 702-828-3111, or Nevada Child Seekers at 702-458-7009. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Go Mountain Ridge. Go, Council. Ren Anthony.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. It's back to school in Ward Four. We're going to have our back-to-school fair and movie on Friday, August 20th. Oh. Okay, let's try that again. And flyers up there, too. So, all right, it's back to school in Ward Four. We're going to have our back-to-school fair and movie this Friday, August 22nd, at 6:30 p.m. It's going to be at the Durango Hills YMCA, which is on Durango between Cheyenne and Gowon. We're going to show the movie Monster University. We're going to have, the movies free, the popcorn is free, the water is free. We're going to be handing out some back sacks with some school supplies while supplies last. So we're also going to have some vendors there to help you get back, back to school. So bring your kids out. It's going to be a fun night to watch a movie and get some school supplies. So the date is Friday, August 22nd, 6:30, the Durango Hills YMCA. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take this, because I don't want to waste time going all the way down. I'm going to say, first of all, we want to welcome Jimmy Johns to City Hall, where they have been doing nothing but feeding us, and we're paying. So we wish them nothing but the best. Of course, you heard about Mountain Ridge, so we're all trying to get there. Welcome to all the students that are returning to the classroom throughout Nevada. We encourage you to take your classes, do your best, because you will be getting something that is so special that no one can take from you. It's your opportunity for a lifetime. Thursday, August 22nd, we'll celebrate the grand opening. I won't finish that one. It belongs to Councilman Coffin. And we have coffee with the mayor this Thursday, August 21st, 8:00 a.m. to 9:30, at Waffles Cafe, for the waffles with chocolate ice cream. Councilman Ross up there on Durango Drive, Centennial Parkway in the northwest. It's from 8:00 to 9:30. And our next council meeting is September 3rd, Wednesday, September 3rd, at 9:00 a.m. Think of that, waffles and chocolate ice cream. So I can't wait. Big celebration, we hope. Councilman Barlow, and then...
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the folks know that the month of September, I will not have my coffee with the councilmen, due to me being out of state. But we will reconvene in October, the first Thursday in October, at Starbucks, located at Bonanza and Rancho. On August 26th, Tuesday, August 26th, El Pollo Loco grand opening will take place at the Corner of Lake Meeting, Martin Luther King. This is a redevelopment project that we are very excited about, bringing a nutritional alternative food item to the Enterprise Park. So residents and businesses are welcome to join me as we celebrate the newest addition to Ward Five Enterprise Park, the grand opening of El Pollo Loco. And the ribbon-cutting ceremony will take place at 10:00 a.m. The address is 1985 North Martin Luther King Boulevard. I am excited to add a wonderful, healthy option to the ward. On September 7th, the Bluegrass in the Park will take place at Lorenzi Park on Sunday, and it's the first Sunday of every month, July 6th, I'm sorry, September 7th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, so please come out and enjoy the local bluegrass bands, playing, of course, the most exciting traditional American music with banjos, fiddles, guitars, and mandolin. And this is a free opportunity for families to get together, to enjoy themselves out in the newly renovated Lorenzi Park. And I'm not sure if you have the slide for the event that's taking place out at the, yes, you do have it, the Performing Arts Visual Camp. Thank you so very much. The summer camp taking place at the West Las Vegas Library Theater. This will take place August, where are we at? August...
Second.
Second. What is it, seventh?
Seven. Well, it says the fourth, from 10:00 to 11:30 Mandalay.
What year? What year?
What year?
Yeah, I know. This is, it looks like this is past. The dates, the dates are, needs to be adjusted, but just contact 229-4800 if you would like to participate in the Performing and Visual Arts Summer Camp, taking place at the West Las Vegas Arts Center and the West Las Vegas Library. So this is going to be an exciting event to participate in as well. And of course, you can also find all of this great information on my social media sites and my website at the city of Las Vegas, at lasveganenevada.gov. rbarlow@lasveganenevada.gov is my email, or you may follow me on Facebook and Twitter. So thank you also very much, and look forward to the next city council meeting, Mayor.
Look forward, he won't be here.
I won't be here, that is true.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
And, all right, smiles. Go for it.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are welcoming a newest addition to the population of Nevada this week. About 20, 21 years ago, my son, Walter, had a crush on a girl. They would have been five or six. Her name was Lindsay Beers, and Lindsay and he went to school together, not only at that time, around the age of five or six, but later on, as freshmen together in Carson City during a legislative session, where Lindsay and Walter both attended Carson High as freshmen. At that time, Walter also had a lookout for Lindsay, and we used to confide in me, I'm worried about these guys that she dates. And of course, he was looking out for her interests, and at any time, who would have known that 26 years later, instead of marrying Walter, to her good fortune, she married somebody else? And I must say that while we regret not having Lindsay in our family, someone else has become a winner. So Grandpa Bob Beers now has little Isla, or Isla, however you want to pronounce it, in Spanish, it's a beautiful island, and so it means something to all of us. And for that reason, I thought that this was an important day to say congratulations to Lindsay, and there's, you're going to go up Councilman Beers and be with her tonight or tomorrow morning, and we've sent something for her with you, and at the same time, we wanted to send you off on this trip for your first grandchild. I don't know if I'll ever be blessed like that, but I do want to say that I envy you, and you be sure to give Lindsay a kiss from the Coffin family, and truly carry our love and the love of all the people that know you. And so I brought out some grape juice, Your Honor, and of course, I think it's appropriate